To the October twenty sixth meeting of the Select Board. Uh, this evening we have a relatively aggressive agenda, but uh, to begin, we will be going from here directly into executive session for about thirty minutes. And returning to this meeting uh, in about a half hour or so. So at this point, I will welcome a motion from my colleagues for uh, um, entry into executive session to discuss.
Contract negotiations, correct?
Non-union contract.
Non-union contract negotiations.
I have a little still move.
Have a motion by Mr. Sperrle, do I have a second?
Second.
And by hand, Holliston, favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Sperrle, aye.
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
So we are going to go into executive session at this time and we'll return in about a half an hour. Thank you. Good evening, Holliston, uh, thank you very much for waiting for us. We have concluded our executive session for this evening and are back. Um, as we proceed with our agenda tonight, we wanted to let folks know the purpose of our agenda. Uh, relative to executive session was to uh, deal with a contract matter involving Chief Matt Stone. We're pleased to announce that uh, the town and the chief have come to terms on a new contract. Uh, some folks may not be aware that the chief's contract expired in April. Uh, over the last several months, we've been engaged with him through the town administrator to come to terms on a new three-year contract. We're pleased to announce tonight, the chief will be with us for a while longer. Uh, so we're gonna sign this evening, if the chief would like to come on up, we'll uh, we'll execute the agreement righting and wish him the very best as he keeps us all safe at night. You wanna sign that one and we'll sign, start signing here, okay?
Yeah.
Grab the blue. Blue is acceptable. A little fog, I gotta sign this off. Give it a chance to make any remarks you might wanna make about after we sign, it's okay? Give one of those, and I'll take the other one.
With pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Chief, would you like to make any comments to the uh, Town Hall for this evening?
Sure, I think you can expect exactly what you've been getting from me and from the rest of the department. Appreciate you uh, working out the agreement in a uh, difficult time like this, but please know that you are uh, secure in having one of the best police agencies in the Commonwealth. And uh, we will continue to work hard and keep our community safe, I'm happy to lead that charge going forward, so thank you.
Well, we thank you and uh, as we said in executive session, we think very highly of you and for forty years of uh, your continued leadership. Any final remarks, Ben, Tina, anything to share?
Only what I shared earlier, thank you.
Just yeah, really, thank you very much, we really appreciate having you and we're glad that we can uh, have you for years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All the best, thanks so much, Chief.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thanks, I'm sure, Bill, thank you.
Chief Cassidy, if you wouldn't mind, I'm gonna take uh, something out of order for the benefit of uh, Mr. Mark Capeline. Um, Mark, if you wanna come up and join us, um, Mark is our new um, building inspector. Um, this evening, we wanted to bring Mark before us and have a conversation about your new role, first of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, the board um, has uh, invested a lot of energy over the last several years in that office. We're sad to see Chris Canny go, who's obviously put himself quite well and um, Travis speaks very highly of you. So tonight, I just wanted to give you a chance to meet us, say hello and maybe answer a couple of brief questions before we move on. But um, before we do, would you like to give us a little bit of a update, this is Holliston, an update of who you are? Where have you come from and um, what can we expect from you going forward?
Well, I come from the neighboring town in Hopkinton.
Okay.
Born and raised, uh, been in construction for, since I graduated, twenty-six years. Uh, had my own business fourteen years now. Um, well, three years ago, I applied to the state to become, stop my, my licensing and taking the tests and I, I took uh, took them all. I took a job at, in Douglas part-time and um, while, while that was going on, I joined the zoning board in Uxbridge where I'm from. I'm also on the rec committee in, in Uxbridge, uh, to start to get my feet wet in zoning. It's a complicated animal, as you know, um, and here I am now.
Well, thank you for coming before us, Ben, do you have any uh, comments or questions for Mark?
Um, I think the only question I really had is, uh, and it seems like you've kinda answered it, but I just wanna confirm, is like, why, um, what made you decide to leave Douglas?
Well, 'cause I was looking for a full-time position.
Yeah, okay.
And there's been a lot of full-time positions that come up with Holliston, seemed to, it was close, it's a community that I know from my childhood and.
Okay.
And not that lived here in town at one point.
Great. No, I'm, uh, look forward to working with you and uh, welcome and uh, thank you very much.
You too.
Well, so my first question is, did you play football for Hopkinton?
I sure did, I'm a Hella.
Are you, alright, well.
We got Coaches, Coaches' hundredth win against Holliston, my CBA.
Say that again?
Went to the Super Bowl.
Oh, what year did you gra- well, I won't ask you what year, no, I don't think I'll ask you that, but uh, sign me something, well, I'm eighty-something, so I graduated before you from Holliston, I. And I, I don't remember Hopkinton football, but anyway, I'm sure you guys were a good team.
Yeah.
Um, my question for you, I have two, um, in your experiences in Douglas, well, more so, uh, you were on the zoning board, hold on one second, let me show.
In Uxbridge.
Excuse me, um, did you have any role in bringing zoning bylaw changes or additions, new, new bylaws to town meeting in Uxbridge?
We are currently, right now, working on a letter to Jay Talman to help us with a few changes on definitions, um. But we are going back and forth with the planning board right now, 'cause the planning board wants to take special permitting away from the CBA in certain areas that, that I disagree with, but.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's an ongoing thing, it's, it's a slow process.
Okay, um, and what role should zoning enforcement take in Holliston with changes, challenges rather, that we face in the future? Have you had a chance to get your feet wet with any of the issues that you're gonna be looking at when you start?
I have not yet, I mean, I, I plan on diving in headfirst from November ninth. I just uh, I'm trying to give Douglas its uh, my due diligence up there, just 'cause they're dealing with some stuff too. They ma- they made a few zoning changes to bring in business up there, so, um.
I think, I think you'll find that Holliston is a town that is looking in the future to develop a master plan.
Yeah.
Uh, and heading in that direction, I would envision that zoning bylaw changes or, or additions or edits, it's something that's gonna be a part of that master plan. Um, so I would just put that on your, on your radar and then my.
Oh, definitely.
My last question is, can you support the cancers fully?
Alright, well anyways, we will have uh, we will have Mr. Canny uh, make sure that we overlap a little bit um, with Mr. Capeline, so that he can read him in on some of the larger issues. Um, I think, I think that will happen, uh, that will hope, happen hopefully soon, um, and, and uh, Mr. Canny has, has agreed to, to give us, you know, uh, some degree of help into the future to, to allow for that transition.
Mark, just a couple of comments, um, uh, from, from this side of the table to that side of the table, you, you have a tough job, um.
Oh, definitely.
Building inspector, you know, you've gotta, you've gotta defend the interests of the code and uh, obviously the uh, the interest of the town. So, one of the things I, however, I think, one of the things that Chris was very good at was understanding the fine balance between handling those obligations and um, assisting the building community at the same time. Um, there's a service component to what you do.
Oh, yeah.
And I hope that, you know, if, if the word has to be no, that the, the person hearing that understands why it's no and how they can get to yes. It's, it's quite simple, if you think about it, but um, I, if I think back on some of the uh, building inspectors over the years, some have been successful with that, others haven't. You know, it's important that the building, uh, the building trades that come in and try to work within our, our code and with our, within the community on behalf of the residents and people that wanna get work done. But they understand where you stand on things and that um, you know, you're true, um, but you're also service-oriented. I need to make that impression on you, it's a very important part of the job. Um, I think it's uh, something that um, would really fare you well in the years to come. The ability to help people at the same time as, as you uphold what you have to do to uh, be a successful building inspector. You've got a good staff, um, and good, good running start with Chris Canny. Um, Travis has indicated that uh, you seem to have all the solid skills to be successful. We understand you have some growth uh, to go on this job and we're gonna be patient with that, we hope you reach out to Travis, uh, Chris as needed, to uh, understand that um, you know, progress is part of this game. Um, but if you leave here tonight and just hear one word of service, just make sure you're there to provide service to uh, to folks and uh, we really wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Are you good, Travis, anything to add on?
I would just mention, just mention the one thing, I think Mark actually did mention it. We, these positions were posted quite a bit at the time that we posted on MMA for this uh, vacancy. Dartmouth, Foxborough, Lester, Marblehead, Mashpee, Newburyport and Westford all posted similar positions. Um, and so it, it, there is quite a market out there for this position and we, I, I feel like we're lucky to have Mark, um, having done this in Douglas and, and obviously growing into this position. I think he's gonna be great.
Thank you.
Mark, thanks for coming in tonight, I appreciate you taking uh, taking the time to come in a little early and on our agenda, so we'll, we'll move on to our next item. Have a great night, we'll look forward to work with you. Alright, sounds good, have a great night. Chief Cassidy, next on the agenda. Now, before you get going, if you don't mind, Chief, I'm gonna uh, read the first of a couple of public notices. Give me a second so you get comfortable and align your chair in the way that you like the most, there you go. Make sure the mic lines up too, though. Alright, folks, this evening, we expect a fair amount of uh, uh, participants on our Zoom call, um, and so therefore, I'll make this announcement at least one more time. But uh, the town will be asking those who wanna speak during a specific agenda item this evening to raise, use the raise the hand feature. Um, if you're using a tablet or a smartphone and wanna speak, touch the screen and depending on your device, either on the bottom or top right of the screen, there are three dots next to participants. Press the three dots and then press raise hand. If you're using a laptop or desktop computer and wanna speak, click on participants at the bottom of the screen. This will open a participants window to the right. In the bottom right-hand corner of the participants window, click on the raise hand feature. Finally, if you're dialing in by phone, you can press star nine to indicate you wanna speak. When it's your turn to speak, you will be asked to unmute. For those on a computer, tablet, phone, you will receive a message to unmute. If you're calling in by phone, when you're announced by the Select Board, you will need to press star six to unmute the phone. If you're unable to find the raise the hand feature, you can send a chat to Town Hall's requesting you speak and the Select Board will be notified. We have technology staff on, on hand this evening to help us navigate the calls, I'm sure they'll be able to help you, so be patient, but most of all, we look forward to your participation. Uh, so we're gonna begin the next item on our agenda with Chief Cassidy, our weekly coronavirus community update.
Chief? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a busy week since I saw the board last. We are up to a hundred and thirty-four confirmed cases in Holliston since we started tracking diagnoses back in March. A hundred and eleven of those have recovered, there have been unfortunately two COVID-related deaths, and we currently have twenty-one active cases. Now, those twenty-one active cases are located at fourteen unique addresses in Holliston. They are all single-family homes. Four homes have two cases and one home has four kids. So what we're experiencing right now is truly community spread. Uh, and the calls from the Department of Public Health and what we're seeing, uh, not only in the Commonwealth, but throughout the country, is that a lot of the spread that is happening in this wave is what's referred to as family spread. So one person gets it, either brings it in from work or brings it in from sports team and then others in their family ends up getting it as well. Uh, locally, we have had more than four dozen cases in the fourteen-day period which ended Saturday, October twenty-fourth, which unless there is a major change in the way the DPH does their metrics, uh, it is my expectation that we will remain red on this Thursday. And I will note that the Department of Public Health, which had previously been issuing their weekly reports on their website, uh, previously on Wednesdays by six PM, have moved their reporting to Thursdays at four PM. So last week, I had pledged to the board that I would start doing my weekly summary for the community, public facing on our website, that I would publish that on Thursday in anticipation of getting DPH weekly report next night. Uh, I will continue to try and publish by Thursday night, but I will commit to Friday morning by the latest, depending on what Thursday evening's information holds. Uh, at this point, I will continue to beat the same drum that I have been saying for months, uh, the importance of hand washing, face covering, distancing and avoiding crowds. On the town administrator and my call with the CDIT representative last week from the Department of Public Health, uh, we discussed how we can uh, utilize messaging to our community. And there may have been seen in some uh, Boston news outlets, that a few red communities last week on the nineteenth got SMS messages and there are additional twelve communities that will be getting that message tonight from Mima. Uh, and the message uh, that I am proposing that I send out to our community this week would be, COVID nineteen is a serious threat in Holliston. Wear a mask, wash your hands, keep your distance, do not share food, drinks or pencils, stay home if sick, get a free COVID test, stop gatherings with family and friends, protect yourself and your loved ones. More info, visit mass.gov backslash stop COVID nineteen. So, it is my expectation that I will use our Blackboard messaging system to send that message to our community this week. Uh, that was specifically designed to be an SMS message by text message. Since we control the, the Blackboard system, we can also send that as a email to the registered users as well as to uh, phones, so a voice message. So, uh, we really need to get the message out to the community that it is in their hands right now to do their part to stop the spread of this virus. And the numbers that we have seen are disheartening and they're very um, frustrating and they're causing a lot of ripple effect here.
Mr. Sperrle? Um, the question I have is just that, uh, so if we're red for a period of time, what does that mean for us?
So, uh, on its surface, if we are red for, um, going forward, we have been red four out of five weeks. We were red for two, we went back together, we've been red for another two, and I'm anticipating at least another week of red. Um, because we never went to the next step in the current phase of the governor's reopening plan, none of the businesses that might have had expanded options need to scale back. We were never able to implement those larger numbers, so there's no automatic implication for businesses that have been doing one thing now to scale back.
That is to say, we are in phase three, current?
Uh, step one of phase three, yes. Um, a lot of other communities that were lower risk had transitioned to um, step two of phase three. Um, (sigh) DESI uses the community risk designation as one of the markers by which a community determines its instructional model. The guidance from DESI encourages school districts to work with local officials and look at at least three consecutive weeks worth of data, which consists of honestly four weeks of data because the, the metric is based on the fourteen day average. Just because we are red for three consecutive weeks does not automate a mandate that we change our instructional model. It's just one thing that we need to look at and understand our local experience and the spread of the disease in the community. Obviously, one of the things that we'll look at is how is the number of cases that we are seeing in the growth impacting the schools? How many cases are there in the schools? We have a very good working relationship with the schools, public safety, public health, uh, the schools, we all share information. And that information sharing sometimes is frustrating to the public, uh, there are people who want more information. When someone gets a, an email from the interim superintendent indicating, we just want you to know that there was a case at X school, we're doing everything we can, we're contact tracing, if you were, uh, if your child was believed to have been in contact with the individual, you would have been contacted individually. Well, if people haven't been contacted individually, the expectation is that they want to close contact. The absence of information is frustrating for a lot of people and they want to know more and they ask questions and social media, it is a flutter. People start speculating as to, uh, was it a staff member, was it a student, and they're trying to be very vague in their messaging because we need to protect everyone's confidentiality at the same time that we are alerting folks. So there's this balance that's being struck between providing enough actionable information without violating anyone's confidentiality at times, um, that's frustrating. I would just implore everyone to please trust the system, trust the people who are working day and night and weekends and holidays to make the best decisions as quickly as possible, let me get that out. So if you don't get contacted until your student was determined to be in close contact, rest assured, then your child does not need to go and get tested unless they have symptoms. Uh, at the same time, if anyone has symptoms, if anyone gets a diagnosis, please communicate that quickly to the school so that they can make informed decisions as well. But our goal right now is to um, be able to, to maintain the in-person hybrid model as, as long as possible.
So it's up to the, it's so, what you're saying is the red, is the red designation is part of a series of metrics that could, that informs us on how to do a couple different things?
Correct.
And it's important that the community rec- (cough) recognize that we're all in this together and that we all have a part to play in trying to keep the, the virus at bay.
Which includes activities such as Halloween this weekend.
Yep.
And we continue to emphasize, and I probably will add this to my uh, email with Blackboard, that my phone message, 'cause it'll have more characters, so to speak, um, that we really need to do low-risk activities for Halloween. Uh, it is dire conditions right now and we do not want to see an even more significant spread of disease for a couple minutes of treatment. Uh, and second, secondarily to that, uh, there are also other activities that are taking place in our community that we wanna remind folks that they need to be safe. Uh, that includes the standouts that are occurring out on the roadways, as people are advocating for one policeman candidate or, um, question on the ballot and we need to make sure that people distance themselves from where the appropriate face covering is spread, do not crowd together. So, we all together as a community collectively contribute to address this.
Absolutely, okay.
Good luck, thank you.
So I fully support using email, text message and um, phone calls, and by that, do you mean the reverse nine-one-one system?
Blackboard connect messaging system, yes.
So I fully support using that to get this message out and I agree that this week is, is the time to do it, so you're thinking by Friday or sooner?
Well, I'm thinking probably either Monday or Tuesday, I guess.
Okay, you lost me there for a minute, like today is Monday, right? Okay, understood, so urgently, quickly, this message is gonna go out, I, I fully support that. You, you mentioned the schools and their decision-making processes, you've asked residents to trust those in charge, the administrators, in making these decisions wisely with the assistance of Board of Health and yourself as emergency management director, with the state resources that are applied to this. Can you just speak uh, for us uh, at the Select Board in terms of town meeting and the town election? What we need to be considering or aware of, if anything at all, at this point in time?
So, we are a well-oiled machine when it comes to voting. Uh, there is in-person voting taking place in the Town Hall and that is going very smoothly. Uh, it's a great opportunity for people to go in, not with large crowds, to be able to, to come in through nonexistent or short lines, uh, to cast their ballots successfully and to leave. Uh, again, many people wish to do the actual casting of the ballot on November third and that is well within their, their rights in our republic and we would encourage people to uh, be prepared to distance themselves if there are lines. They, uh, the line would probably stretch farther out of the building than it would in previous years and that could give a misleading uh, perception of how long it will be until they can get in. If people are properly distancing, uh, it's not necessarily because there are as many as would be in the line in the pre-COVID era. Uh, but uh, the town clerk has worked very closely with uh, Public Health, with myself, with the Police Department, with the schools, to ensure that our polling location uh, is in a, a safe option for anyone who wishes to vote in person.
Okay.
Once we get through that, we will continue to monitor our community spread, our numbers.
Okay.
Uh, trends and uh, make any adjustments to our plans for our December fifth town meeting as appropriate. But right now, let's, let's get through Halloween.
Fair enough.
And uh, the, the federal election on, on Tuesday and then we'll uh, we'll regroup and evaluate for, for W.
Thank you.
Is it Friday that the Blackboard's coming out tomorrow?
Uh, Tuesday or Wednesday, that's, that's my schedule, I guess.
Uh, Chief, thanks for that update, uh, just a couple of items. Um, first, if you wouldn't mind memorizing everything you just said about the election, bring it back next Monday because it'll be a little bit close to the election. I'd like to let people know what they can expect when they get there and I think the fact that they can expect a long line doesn't mean they'll be there for hours. It'll move quickly, it's a walking pace, essentially. Um, I thought that the um, um, the primary election was a good example of what we can expect and it went very, very well, I thought, uh, overall. Uh, having said that, I, I, I wanna take part of what you said. And, and every week, you dutifully come before us, you give us a thorough update, you give us some customizable ideas of what's going on in the community with regards to the virus. Um, you and I shared a couple of exchanges this past weekend about the numbers in Holliston and, and more broadly in the state and how the virus is now (cough) again, getting a foothold in the Commonwealth. Um, what can we do to, um, to ensure the, the citizens of the town take um, safe steps to push back these numbers and um, monitor our, our behaviors in such a way that possibly brings us back to behaviors we saw in April or May when we were more cautious, less likely to engage in social activities or uh, lower our guard as it is, the, the virus doesn't understand those things, it will find its way into your life. Um, I have two questions for you. Number one, as you talked about the cases in Holliston, have any of these cases resulted in, um, additional lost school days for schools as a result of closing down or anything like that? We saw that about a month ago and I wasn't sure if there's any repeat of that.
So, uh, prior to today, there was the one uh, school that was impacted. Um, we had some additional school-related cases reported today and the school is making adjustments to a couple of classrooms. Uh, to ensure that contact tracing can be completed and that all of the appropriate deep cleaning is conducted as well and that everyone feels safe.
And right now, the Holliston Public Schools are in a modified or um, hybrid model of remote plus um, in-person learning, correct?
Correct.
Uh, which I think under the circumstances is the most optimal we can imagine right now, given our, our statistics and so forth. I guess I wanna direct folks listening at home, uh, to understand the seriousness of this, of this condition Holliston as it stands today. Um, numbers that trend like this will have a direct impact on our children's education. Um, we don't wanna envision a time when these numbers reach families or children or educators and we have to go completely uh, virtual. It's not desirable, but it's avoidable if folks understand taking the steps today and tomorrow that they took in April and May to be cautious and monitor their own behavior in a way that um, doesn't take any risks, it's just not worth it. I completely echo your comments about Halloween. I think um, folks need to understand that uh, something that, as you said, should be scaled back and completely understood to be an optional, if not uh, risky behavior at this time. Um, we've talked as a board a couple of times in the weeks leading up to this about what the Board of Health thinks and, and I understand how they wanna manage this. But I think through our message tonight, we need to let citizens know, uh, scale it back, uh, find yourself um, celebrating Halloween in a very singular way if you can. Uh, the risk's far away the reward here and I'd really like to think that as we head into um, the holiday season, that Holliston finds itself in a place with respect to statistics that it can find a path towards a healthier outcome. Uh, there's just too, too much at risk, we're in a very, very tenuous position right now and I don't wanna see things get worse, um, and things have to shut down again. It would be, um, it's all avoidable. So folks at home, I hope you hear our chief, uh, I hope you hear the message, take it seriously. Uh, we're in a very tenuous position, we wanna make sure going forward that we stay healthy and we practice all the things you know so well in six months and during this pandemic. Uh, are there any comments or questions from those on the Zoom call regarding the coronavirus update by Chief Doe? Uh, excuse me, Chief Cassidy, I'm getting a thumbs up and the first is Peggy Payne. Peggy, if you would, uh, please identify yourself and your address and your question.
Yes, Peggy Payne, thirty-two Irving Place. And I just.
Go ahead.
I just wanna thank the chief and the Select Board for everything that you're doing during this pandemic to keep people informed and work on our behalf. I had a couple of questions of Chief Cassidy, so you said. So you said that the school committee or the schools do not, they're only using the being-read designation three weeks in a row as one metric of, or one piece of information on when to close schools. So I'm curious about a couple of things. First of all, who makes the decision on when to move from a hybrid to a fully remote model? What other metrics would be used to make that decision? And what sort of lead time would families be given before a decision like that were to be made?
Chief, you comfortable addressing it?
I can address most of it. Thank you for the question. So the decision would be made by the school administration along with the school committee. The DESI guidance statewide indicates that districts should consult with their local public health and that the decision to change the instructional model would also be done in a conversation with DESI, the Department of Homeland Secondary Education. With regards to the lead time, this is a very fluid situation. And just as we saw in March, when the decision was made on a Thursday to shut things down for a couple of weeks, and families had a very, very brief amount of lead time, the decision could be made by the school district and could be communicated out effective the very next morning. So just like living here in New England, and we're always prepared for a, what used to be referred to as a snow day. We've already had an electrical power loss day during this school year. Families need to be prepared that as early as tomorrow morning, a decision could be made that they need to alter their plans for their children being able to access the curriculum and possibly not be going in person.
Ms. Payne, does that address your question?
Thank you very much. Yep.
Any other questions on the Zoom for Chief on the coronavirus update? Hearing none. We will move on to the next phase, which is the CARES Act programmatic update, including rent mortgage relief.
I have three requests for consideration of the board this evening. The first one comes from the police department. With the extended drop-off and pickup that's necessitated by children needing to be spaced out, parents needing to queue, having their child's name called, having that child come down, the crossing guards are working longer hours. And so this is an unbudgeted extra hours. And the chief has estimated that the total cost for the overage between the beginning of in-person learning to December thirtieth would be one thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars. And that would come in the temporary staffing category under attachment A of the administration finance document from the spring, which would be a twenty-five, seventy-five percent CARES amount split.
Any questions on that, Mr. Sparrow?
Nope.
Ms. Payne?
No, I would only add that this is in addition to the request that was made for a third crossing guard down at the Woodland Street.
Correct. This is independent of the Woodland Street. That's correct.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the value of one thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars for the purposes described by the chief relative to the police department.
So moved.
Does that, second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Carrie. Chief's next one.
The second one comes from technology, with whom we could not be doing our meeting as we are here this evening. The request is for twelve hundred and fifty dollars. And that would be for ten headphones with microphones. As we have been replacing equipment in departments and specifically for some department heads over the previous years, that equipment that's sat on our desktops was not prepared and equipped with the technology to be able to participate in accelerated telework or Zoom or WebEx or Microsoft Team meetings. The technology director has requested that he be able to acquire ten headphones with mics, which would allow individuals to be able to access those platforms from their desks. And then the second part of the
Before you go to second, can you team back? What was the value on that?
So the total ask is twelve fifty. But the request specifically for the headphones with microphones is only one hundred and fifty total.
Thanks. Go on. Sorry about that.
No, no, that's fine. So the second part of the request, which in total would give us twelve fifty, is two laptops for Zoom moderation. Currently, the laptops that are being used to moderate the meetings, such as the see things and zoning and planning and finance, are very old machines. They are, one of them is personally owned, one of them is not town property. And so for eleven hundred dollars, the technology director would like to replace two devices. And that would come under the category of accelerated telework capacity, which would be a one hundred slash zero split CARES amount.
Sparrow, any questions?
Nope.
Ms. Payne?
No.
Chief, the only question is, I thought we had appropriated some funds for laptops already.
We had, but those were for department heads to allow them to go off-site and to be, or other employees to be able to work remotely. This would be for what's being used on the table behind us, as well as in the hallway. Again, one of us has personally owned the device.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for the mics and headphones, as well as the two laptops for the technology department.
We'll make that motion.
I will second it.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A total of twelve fifty, Chief.
Excellent. Thank you. And the last and final was something that we teed up last week and wanted to make sure that the board had time to consider. And this would be what we would refer to as rent mortgage relief round two. This would be an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. And this would come within the category of short-term rental or mortgage support under the A and F attachment A, which is a one hundred slash zero CARES versus Fuma split. We found that it was a very well-subscribed program. We were able to help, as we discussed last week, nine families. The Youth and Family Services Director had a couple of programmatic tweaks that she would recommend in terms of the number of months, one at a time versus being able to do several, in the hopes that we might be able to help smaller families between now and September.
Jackie Weiner expresses her apologies for not being able to be here tonight. Sparrow, any questions on that?
The only question I've had, and I apologize if this was something that was sent over to me, is just the timing of the, of the second round. Is it going to be like, when is the application period? And when is it going to
If it were authorized tonight, they could hit the ground running and be able to do November and December.
Because it's still like funds run out? Or are you going to like have like a cutoff date, like a
They'd have another application at all.
They'll have to have another. So the difference between last time, obviously, we had a lot of legwork to do. We put the contracts in place between the town and CAF as the fiduciary. All that's already in place now. So it's sort of, it's the tweaks to how the program runs. But yeah, she'll have to put in place a deadline, just as she did before. They'll advertise it as they did before.
Yep.
Make sure, you know, all of that. The majority of the collection of information that they need to make their decision is sort of off-hall still in place, which is a matter of how they'll be awarding.
And as I understand it, too, we're going to only be doing one month at a time as opposed to multiple months as well. Okay. Would that mean that somebody could apply multiple times if they, if the timing permitted it? Or would it be just like the one
And if there were still funds available.
Right. I mean, yes. Yeah. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. Good luck.
So just two things. I found it really interesting that when a survey went out to see what other communities are doing to provide rent and mortgage relief, Holliston is not alone. Among those communities that responded, we are one of five of the seventy or so that responded as a community that's offering its rent and mortgage relief through the CARES Act. So I'm proud of the fact that we are innovative in pursuing this, and I recognize that we are not alone as well. So Ms. Weiner had requested that some information be shared with the public. She probably made this request to you, so I don't think this will be the first time you're hearing it, that the additional support offered through the state. She references, I'm just going to read the names here, the Emergency Rental and Mortgage Assistant Program, as well as the Residential Assistance for Families in Transition. Both state programs, it sounds like, we posted on the town website. They will be up on the Youth and Family Services website, but I think she had a request that they go up on the COVID page on the town website. And I would just say thank you to Jackie Weiner and thank you to you, Chief Cassidy, for all the work you're doing to bring this to the residents of Holliston who are in need of it. I think it's a wonderful program.
Absolutely. And we could easily add those links to the coronavirus page on the town's website.
Okay.
And as we mentioned last week, the state has been very active and has been pushing multiple ways of assisting families. So if a resident of town isn't eligible under the restrictions of our rent or mortgage relief program, they may be eligible under a state program. And so the goal would be that we as a community point them to where they can get the most help. And just as with the last round, on the report that was provided to the board, there was sort of a notation off to the left about the fact that there was some utilities assistance that CAF had provided. Those weren't CARES Act funds. That was CAF's funds. But again, we're trying to put people in touch with wherever they can get the assistance. So if they're not eligible through this CARES Act-funded program, then we'll try and push them to another program and be resourced in it.
Yeah. No, I think that's a wonderful thing to provide. So thank you.
Chief, just a couple of questions. I don't mean to put you in the middle, but hopefully you can answer in lieu of Jackie. We distributed twenty-five thousand dollars in the first round, and it appears as though we made, oh, somewhere around a dozen or so awards against that funding. We have twenty-seven hundred dollars and some change left over. I presume any amount that we appropriate tonight will be in addition to that balance. Question is, do you happen to know, or does Youth and Family Services know of any awaiting demand for these services?
There were
Are people in the queue?
Yes, there were people in the queue. I know there was one for whom we needed some translation assistance, just to make sure that we knew exactly what the family needed. But there are absolutely additional families that they know of that if another round of funding were available, would be ready to apply.
Okay. And Jackie wanted, I understand, Travis, maybe this will go to you, some consideration for, or pivot towards a more, a different model for dispersing the funds than we did in the first round. Is that correct?
So by not doing the three months and focusing on the one month, it allows for wider disbursement?
Right. So would we need to make a recommendation this evening that any remaining funds from the first round be subjected to this new rule?
I think you can make that part of the motion. That'd be helpful.
Yes. And if we were announcing a new application deadline for additional round of funding, I would think that the expectation would be that any of those applications would be subject to the new rules. So I guess that would be
When did we first put out the first twenty-five thousand? When did that roll out?
September. Did that vote September?
So the expectation here is that if we rolled this out again tonight, the end of October, we have roughly two months remaining of this funding. Would this take us through the end of December? Do we know? Or is that unknown? We know it's in the queue.
I think to the chief's point, we are also sort of monitoring the effectiveness of what the state has just announced and rolled out. So I think this would allow us to continue on, continue helping people while we gather the effectiveness of the state's program. And if there is overlap, that obviously if somebody's taking from one program, you know, Jackie's going to have to make sure that she understands, and that's part of the application process, what these people, what applicants are eligible for. So I think this allows us to continue the program when, if we can see that the need is still there and then, you know, see the effectiveness of what the state is doing.
So the change that Jackie's looking for from the original program was just the flexibility to allow payment for one month rather than three. That's definitely a major programmatic change.
Yeah. And it would, again, this goes back to the thing that I said earlier. You know, we want to trust the officials that are making the decisions. And just as we're not going to try and legislate for the technology director to make or model a laptop, he sees fit. I think if, based on lessons learned from the first round, based on the experience with the other communities that are doing it, I think she had some really good tweaks to make this go even further. So she says one month at a time and capping the amount in lieu of one month at a time, I think those are all good programmatic changes to be able to help more families.
I'll entertain a motion to approve fifty, excuse me, twenty-five thousand dollars for the purposes of rent, mortgage, and rent-mortgage relief round two and to, in addition, enable an unspent balance of two thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars be applied to this new program that enables set payments to go out on a monthly basis rather than every three months. Does the motion on that?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you so much. It is very gratifying that in the midst of the time that we're talking about, we need everybody to work together, we need to try and minimize the disease spread to know that we are really helping families and doing a good job.
Before I let you go, we have a few people on the Zoom. I don't know if anybody's got any CARES Act questions for Chief before he leaves. Anybody with their hands up, Chris, so we're good to go. Chief, thanks so much again. People need to remember, we're in a tough position. Let's keep it where it is. Thank you.
Chief Cassidy, are you staying through the end of the, okay.
Very well. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which are warrants.
We have one.
We have one.
So we have one warrant. So I'll make a motion to approve a warrant for an amount of one million four hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Of that, one million two hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents is town's pay.
Second one?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Carrie. Next item on the agenda, a comments and warrant article discussion through the town administrator.
Okay. So just looking at the agenda, we have the ATM. I think we can make some progress in the next fifteen minutes here, if that's what the chair would like. Okay. So let me start out just with comments then, and then I'll get into warrant article discussion. I would just mention that at this point, especially now as the police chief's contract was put in place earlier this evening, all department head contracts have been updated. At the time that I started, they were all out of date. And that was a request that the select board had to get all of those in good standing. I would say that through the progress, the process of getting department head contracts up to date, I was impressed by some of the boards and committees out there who are performing the performance management and evaluation process on behalf of the town as appropriate. And I have discussed with each of those chairs, chairs of those boards and committees, the idea of collaborating to make sure that we're doing those on the same timetable and that they're being done consistently across the board. I think once I get through one cycle of the process, but I'll probably be bringing it back to the select board, moving forward is the idea that these contracts for department heads can be three-year contracts as they've been done historically, but it's the performance management and metrics that on an annual basis will be probably the annual, what I'd be bringing to you, bringing forward to the select board on an annual basis. Again, that's thinking out into the future. But I would just say through the process of getting all these updated, I've been very impressed with the department heads that the town has in place and the boards and committees that, as appropriate, oftentimes oversee the department heads and work with them on the goals that they have for the year.
You know, Travis, thanks for getting that done. Two things. You should check with council to make sure you have the ability to go to three-year contracts for department heads. I think you should. But the law was recently changed that gave us the act of to have those contracts in the first place. I can't remember if it was an annual process or three years or not. But absent that, going back to the department head salary increases that this board helped initiate over the last couple of years, a big component of it was the accountability for the department heads to understand every year their goals and objectives would change according to their boards and their various bosses' direction. And this board has seen, I believe we've all seen the spreadsheet Travis sent us that included those qualities. Everybody's contract is different. No one has the same exact goal for a given year, and they'll be measuring their progress against it by the end of the year. This board, through you and in the case of department heads that report to us, will evaluate whether or not the department heads are living up to that and their obligation to the citizens and whether or not they continue their employment with us, frankly. It's that kind of tool and accountability that I think makes everything work. We hadn't had that in the past year, so thankfully through your work, and now We hadn't had that in the past year, so thankfully through your work, and now with some competitive salaries, we're getting great applicants like Mark Cateline again tonight, who want to work here, who want to be here. And thank you very much for getting that done, I appreciate it. Anything else?
So under comments specifically, I would just mention that we did, because of tonight's robust agenda, to quote the fire chief, the facilities manager will be coming to you next week with an update. I think we have quite a bit of, he has some experience under his belt here to give you an update that would be helpful. And then also, we did ask the community forum to bring their update next week instead, and I appreciate their flexibility. So with that, I will move now to the warrant article discussion, we'll try to move through some, and Chris, if you could put up that one pager, this is a little bit updated from last week, just so we can sort of set expectations on how quickly we'd like to move this evening. I would just say that the ones in yellow are the ones that you approved last week to be sent to the finance committee. They did not take any action last week, but I did send them all the information that you had had previously to approving those. So this evening, if we could sort of come to a conclusion or if we need more information on Article nine, 10, 15, and a new one is Article 16, and then Articles one, two, three, four, five, and six would be, I would say, next week's, they're the ones that sort of tie the entire warrant together. And so once we have clarity on the rest, I think it would be excellent for next week to that be the time to sort of look at the warrant holistically, whereas we've been doing these on project by project basis. And so I would just say.
Travis, quick question. I saw some activity this afternoon where a newer article might be emerging, is that still in construction or is that reflected in here?
Well, I have right here Article 16, the grant writer for primary prevention of substance use, that's for the youth and family services. That is a request, and so, and again, you know, I think Jackie was planning on being here if the conversation came up. I would just, I'll just tip it off tonight, I think we can, unless everybody's sort of on board, we can just have that conversation next week.
That's great. Just, I understand what you're showing the folks at home is contemporary, the one is in our packet, has a different Article 16?
Okay, so the, I believe the governance committee has a meeting this week that's going to decide what they would like, if they would like to put anything on the fall town meeting.
Okay.
So I have no clarity on that at the moment, but my understanding is that a vote should be taken this week and then I will have clarity. So just for everybody at home who's not aware, see, Warren is open through this Friday at 12 o'clock. And so at that point, you know, we will stop taking warrant articles from the public and from boards and committees, and at that point I'll have more clarity.
Thank you.
Sure. And I apologize, I probably shouldn't have just used the same number, that was an oversight on my, sorry. And so the grant writer is the new one this week. So I'll just go through nine, 10, 15, and 16, if you don't mind. And then I would say for Article five, the one thing I wanted to mention is that, as I, I think I got the information out to the board and I've already brought it to the attention of the finance committee, and we'll probably be having that discussion. DLS sent out some information that, you know, there was sort of thoughts on, would it be necessary if, you know, we were unable to have a special town meeting, would there be any real impact? DLS sent out some, the Division of Local Services, excuse me, within the Department of Revenue, sent out some information that essentially means that we do have some housekeeping, that we need to have a special town meeting before we set our tax rate ideally. If we are unable to because of COVID, we'll deal, but it would be, it would be much better for finalizing the FY '21 budget if we were able to have an article. So that's what I've highlighted here in blue. And I would just say, based on the timeline, that's what I'd like to talk about tonight, and then next week, I think we can get into the nitty gritty of it. But we have a town, the town meeting for December 5th. At this point, I sat down with the town accountant, the treasurer collector, and the assessor today to go over timeline. We generally would set our tax rate in early December, late November. I think at this point, if we were to open the hearing on Monday, November 30th, keep that hearing open, that would be going over values. Keep that meeting open until the next Monday. We would then have the town meeting on December 5th, allow us to essentially do some of the housekeeping that I was referring to, and we can discuss next week. And then have the meeting of the select board on 12/7. That would then allow Mary Sharon and I and Kathy to get the tax rate setting process into DLS by that next Tuesday, and that keeps us on to have bills out to the printer the week of December 14th. It's a tight turnaround time, and I won't tell you that I'm not nervous about it, but I think it can be done. I think if we had had town meeting tonight, as we had originally intended, we would be in a very tight bind. And the fact that we have December 5th, we, you know, we have some leeway here. I think one of the things is essentially recognizing the fact that we built a budget based on state aid that was lower because we were concerned about what the state was going to do. We now have clarity from the state, and the news that we got from DLS essentially is that we need to recognize the state aid that we're going to receive, which originally we thought maybe they would give us some leeway because it's such a difficult year. They've decided that we will not have that leeway, and that's why a special town meeting will be necessary to sort of clean up our budget. Again, I'll bring all of that back, and that will be under Article five. It may require another article, that's going to unfortunately bump all these numbers down and make me do a lot of work changing article numbers.
Have you had any conversations with the assessors about the readiness for the tax rate during the timeframe you're returning?
Yes, it is, because it's a triennial research, it does not make it easier. But we talked about the timeline that I just highlighted, and I think that it is doable.
Okay.
So with that, and again, because we do have the meeting at eight, so I will just say on Article nine, Ben wanted to make sure that he was bringing back information, so I put the notes over here. On Article 10, I was researching some questions from the board. And then on Article 15, I believe that I have the data necessary to answer some of the questions that the select board wanted to hear on that one. And on the final one, I think we can take it up next week, but essentially, Youth and Family Services had a request of $10,000 for a grant writer to get them into a very competitive grant program. They feel like it's really going to help them programmatically. At the same time, they would need this funding, so what I asked them to do, because, you know, this board has sort of said, please bring us votes from your board, they did re-vote their approval of this request, and so I have it currently as a separate warrant article, although it could potentially fit under Article five when we discuss that next week. I'm not sure which would be best if the select board obviously is in favor. So starting first, if you'd like to get into these, or if you think that they're all better for next week?
I'd like to try to take as many votes as I can.
So Ben, would you like to start? You had, you were bringing back info on the modernization one.
Yeah, so I, we got some language back from Erica at Santa. She's made some edits to the, the proposal that we previously had to include some different pieces, particularly wanted to make sure that there was some language about valves and using the data that we have to put together a program for including valve replacements or potentially adding new valves in strategic locations. And then looking at strategic improvements, whether it's changing the size of a pipe, and so it's not just simply, you know, we're not just necessarily just talking about like simple replacement, but maybe there might be, I'm making it up, but maybe it's better being an eight-inch pipe than a six-inch pipe in a particular location. Or potential looping was another piece of, that's a particular part of the conversation. So we wanted to make sure that there was some language to address that particular aspect. And then the.
So Ben, this is the water supply planning?
Yes.
Is it currently still $15,000?
No, the water supply planning that we're talking about, that's, I haven't gotten to that part yet, actually. So that was, what I was describing was the water main replacement study. You've got to keep in mind that's Winter Street, that's Article nine. So Article nine is what we're talking about.
Okay.
So water modernization has within it sort of.
Three studies.
Yeah, some components, right?
Right, so there's a water main replacement strategy, including valve replacement, looping, and potential, you know, if there's any other potential opportunities to upgrade or change the system.
That's 40,000, right?
Correct. And then the second part is a water supply study, which is 15,000, which is basically just going to look at what does our supply look like, long-term, what is our long-term plan in terms of growth and things like that. And then if necessary, then what that, there's a third study, if the water supply study suggests it to do any well drilling, to do some particular, if we need to find new locations for wells, that's what that third part is. So I talked to Sean today, and he felt comfortable with the language that Erica sent over, and I felt comfortable with it as well. It addressed the issues that we had talked about. I had talked to her with Sean a couple weeks ago, we talked around the phone, so we had asked her some of these questions, we asked her to change some language, and she did. And this article would be $75,000 for a three.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have two. So who holds the trigger from moving from the water planning, water supply planning to water supply investigation? Is that a trigger that the select board holds to spend that additional $20,000?
Well, it's, so basically, we're allocating the $20,000 within this article, but basically it would be, as I understand it, it would basically, if the study, the first study says that we need to do it, it would trigger it. If the first, basically the study, I don't think it's necessarily something that we would have to approve because we would have already been approved by town meeting.
We could bring that information back to the select board.
I mean, we certainly could look at it if we wanted to.
Yeah, okay.
But I mean, yeah, if we feel as opposed as possible, we could do that.
Okay, and then the second question I have here is under the water supply investigation. It says, once viable locations have been identified, contract with a well driller to complete a test well program at two sites in town, maybe coordination with local landowners may be necessary. The anticipated time for completion is three to six months. Does that include, within that three to six months, does that include these test well programs, the two different sites?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I, yeah, I do like the idea of a stopgap between moving from the water supply planning to the water.
Yeah, we may not need it. I mean, the idea is that we may not need the test wells, but we wanted to make sure that we included, we included it in this particular program rather than if we needed it, then we'd have to go wait two more years.
Fair enough, yeah, okay.
So Ben, just a couple, two questions for me. With these three elements combined into one article, are we thinking that this particular item could be funded from water retained earnings?
That's what we, that's the intention, that is the intention.
That's your intention, okay. And the second is, as Tina pointed out, the water supply and water investigation pieces appear to be relatively quick turnarounds of three to six months before we see a report. However, the water main replacement item is expected to take a little longer, six to nine months. With some flexibility built into this process for town meeting this year happening in December, would it be your expectation that we would have the compilation of all three pieces in front of this board in time for next special town meeting in 2021?
That would be the hope. I mean, hopefully we would have enough runway to be able to, if we had to make any adjustments or add any additional action items, we would have a little bit of runway there. I mean, I think that if, yes, I mean, it should be, the expectation would be, we would be looking at something next summer.
May would be, may would be too tight of a turnaround.
Yes, but October, next October, I think is very reasonable.
Yeah.
So John, you're looking at six months to complete the wa, up to six months to complete the water supply planning, and then up to six months to complete the water supply investigation. That's 12 months, that's beyond October town meeting, is that where you're going with your?
No, they're happening contemporaneously, I think, I think, Ben.
Well, I think the expectation is, is that, I don't know if I can finish this up.
I understand, okay, I understood water supply planning and water investigation to be happening simultaneously.
No, because you need to have the water supply planning, and you need, the results of the water supply planning would trigger the water supply investigation. Basically, we wouldn't be drilling wells unless we looked at first supply.
Your point is correct. This could be up to 12 months, theoretically.
It's possible. I think that's, I mean, that's a pretty long timeline, I don't necessarily know that it would be 12 months.
Yeah.
I think Travis said something we're going to have to be mindful of, we're going to hopefully plan a special town meeting for October next year with the new warrant returns. It would seem that 10 months would be adequate, or actually it'd be closer to 11 months, to achieve some kind of a turnaround on these reports, so that we could be prepared to discuss them. So I guess that's one thing we have to keep an eye on, if these things go through on the timeline we hold.
I mean, 12 months would be, you know, that's obviously the extreme on both sides of that, and I think they're giving it a little bit of runway.
And one of the things that we tried to do with these articles is to embrace liaisons with the finance committee and explain or allow them access to reports and information to freely engage the details. Do they have that opportunity in these?
Certainly, I've had many, I've had numerous discussions with the DCB, the ZB, and Shad Davis, and, um, Shad Davis.
Great.
And the feedback I'm getting that they're fairly comfortable, they're comfortable with what we're doing going forward, I mean, I'm certainly going to follow up with them again, to make sure that if they have any further questions that I can address them, but as far as, as far as I've heard, they're good.
That's great. All right, well, I'll take a motion to approve Article nine, this, totally $75,000, as described in these state tech report presentations, dated October 22nd, 2020.
I'll make that motion.
A second, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Number 10, Mr. Hearn.
Right, so the board has asked a couple of questions last week. I think the concern here, again, is that this was a design that happened before our completed street policy was in place, and the design was actually approved back in the fall of 2017 for water main replacements on Winter Street. I think two of the questions were, are the water mains on Winter Street bad enough that they need to be done without sort of waiting? And I do, I think I provided sort of Sean's response on that, I think the answer is, it has been getting progressively worse, and I can get into that. But then the other question essentially was, if we, if we put down asphalt, we do not want to put ourselves in a position where if we pursue sidewalks, that we would then end up cutting up the work that we've done. So to answer the question on, is it really that bad, it has gotten progressively worse, and it is costing us money to deal with breaks and service leaks on Winter Street. One of the components that would happen if we were to open this up is that, you know, that that street would have access now to other utilities such as gas, would probably most definitely go in there, electric would be questioned potentially to go underground, although I've not seen that to be the case with EverSource, who would have to want to do that on our timeline. Then when it comes to cutting up, I think we can definitively say, because of how narrow the actual streetway is, if sidewalks were pursued in the future, and I can get into some of the things that I can start to begin to do to pursue that if that's the role of the board, in the future, if sidewalks were to go on the streets, they would not cut into any part of the actual street because of how narrow it is, so we would be looking entirely off the street. So I don't think we would be in a position where we would lay down asphalt and then have to cut it up. Because of that, I think the one, one of the things that Sean did identify, if we were to do this project and then in the future pursue sidewalks, we would at this point want to make sure that we were contemplating where fire hydrants went. So if we indicated to Sean, yes, the select board is in favor of this article at this moment, but please consider the fact that sidewalks may be pursued in the future, that within the planning and sort of beginning of layout of this work, that he would then consider, you know, making sure that sidewalks were, excuse me, that fire hydrants were placed in a way consistent with future sidewalks. So I think that answers the two questions, and just to sort of give, in the last 10 years, you've seen a significant uptick in meaning to maintain, the past six years has gotten consistently worse, the asbestos cement is in a condition of failure, and the worst parts right now are in the portion of Maple Street to Ashland Street, was sort of the update as it came for the questions from the board. And I don't know, Ben, I know that you also spoke with Sean, if there's anything I can-
Yeah, he gave me some numbers, like he basically mentioned that since 2015, we've had 90 water main breaks in Austin, or some leakage that's onto the roadway from the water mains, and five of them have been on Winter Street, including three in the past 18 years. So this road is, it's failing, and we need to address this water main issue on Winter Street sooner, better, and better. And to that point, the, what Travis made about the fire hydrant, that is a concern, but that would be the, that would be, not, obviously not the only thing that you have to worry about, but it would be certainly something, probably the main piece that would have to be considered, as we put the, did the water mains work, the sidewalks were priorities. Um. Um, I did also look at the, uh, the two thousand ten study and that study also did mention, um, the flags of about nine, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five meters feet of Winter Street that needing immediate attention. So this plant that it's failing, it needs to be addressed. Um, so I think it is important that we look at, um, replacing the mains soon and think, you know, and consider, essentially consider sidewalks that are on the road. I mean, we still have some on the road if we do wanna put in sidewalks because the road work wouldn't take place until twenty twenty-two. Cause you need to, the work for the water mains would take place probably between May and September. And then the, uh, the trench would, would remain and then the road work would be done in twenty twenty-two. So we have some on the road if we wanted to pursue that down the road.
Yeah. It's very compelling to hear that the water breaks and the need for service on Winter Street is, uh, progressing and that your numbers are very compelling. I'm not gonna hold this article hostage over what you just said though earlier about the number of water main breaks that we've had. Can you just say that again?
For the whole town?
Yes.
Ninety.
Ninety over half.
Since two thousand fifteen.
Uh, and again, I'm not gonna hold this article hostage, but what's next after Winter Street? Ninety is, is a huge number and we're looking at, uh, quite a large article there for, uh-
Yeah, two twenty million dollars.
Right, for one street that has had five breaks.
Yep.
So we have eighty-five other.
I think the, I think the intention should be, um, uh, Sean mentioned to me that Tom and Sean are working on putting together a list, but also we're doing these studies. If we're gonna be doing these studies that we just approved, that's gonna give us a lot of, um, clarity, um, in the immediate, um, that we can do with the water main.
Okay. So it's certainly compelling that, uh, you know, the, the information that you brought back to the Board, um, the idea of gas going underground and exploring the opportunity of electric to go underground, those are both strong arguments in favor of getting this work done because that brings benefits to the residents who live along that street. Um, I, I hear what you're saying about sidewalks not being impacted, or rather the asphalt going down not being impacted by the addition of, um, sidewalks at a later date. I don't like the word "if" in this conversation though, and I'd like to have that removed, but I understand that that "if" is dependent upon our sidewalk study. Uh, and so for me, these two go hand in hand. Um, and so that's my, my take on it. So thanks for doing all the work, um.
So, uh, to that point, if, if we think that it's the, this Board's, would, would like me to pursue specifically that, which it sounds like we, we do, um, I think there's quite a bit of work that can be starting now when it comes to dealing with the challenges that we, I know we've already discussed this. I'm just sort of recapping. The scenic road component, right? There's going to be some issues where we, there's gonna require quite a bit of public hearings anytime we move a wall or a tree on a scenic road. So, I mean, identifying those now and, and starting to sort of lay those out and how we could do that, especially timeline wise, it's gonna take some time. Um, and then additionally, uh, I sort of lost my train of thought here, but there, there's quite a few things that I can start to do. I'm sorry, uh, Bennett asked me the process. In, in some of these instances, because the road is narrow and the property is, in some, in some instances goes up to that road, well, we would be potentially taking, I know one individual reached out to us about giving property so that sidewalks could be added there. That does not get us sort of the whole length, right? So looking at potentially, um, if there are other people who are interested in pursuing that as well, um, beginning to, to have that outreach through my office.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then in instances where we may need a, a taking or, or a mental name or anything of that nature, um, I know, uh, Mr. Sparrow had asked me the process there. Um, and so that again is, is quite a lengthy process that we could also start to sort of highlight where we think that may come into play and start to time out because that, that brings in, you could tell meetings, that brings in both of the Select Board, all of which I can begin now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it sounds like, you know, there's at least, uh, some, some substantial interest from the Board.
So I'll be back on this line to remarks. The, uh, the, the reason why we paused was to get our Public Works leaders to understand the Board's interest in sidewalks with respect to these annual type replacement projects. We'd heard, I, I hadn't heard a word from them about programming sidewalks on this street. I understand the project was programmed a while ago, but we've been talking about this for two years. Um, and I would just say going forward that you direct, Public Works Director, understand it's a high priority to this Board to look at sidewalks on such projects going forward. Um, I'm compelled by the information that Mr. Sparrow shares regarding the amount of repairs Winter Street's been enduring over the last couple of years and it's a reason enough to go forward with it. Um, but I wanna make it very clear, tonight we're gonna engage a discussion with quite a few ci- citizens of this town to talk about traffic and the impact it's having on their quality of life. Back in August, we had a similar large gathering of folks on the other side of town for the same thing. Traffic has become a major, major issue in our town. It's not going away. We have to be smart about how we handle things. And if we just think of it as a vehicle movement solution, we're being very short sighted. Our town has had minimal, if any, pedestrian infrastructure. I've always hoped since I joined the Board, and I know the signs are the same, and you've been as well, that, you know, we've got a great investment with our rail trail. And if we're not doing all we can as leaders to help connect that rail trail to the town for the benefit of everyone's, uh, public enjoyment, we're not doing our jobs. Uh, we're hoping that, um, our partners, I think government and, and a town meeting are gonna see these articles and say, yes, we want to invest in our infrastructure. It's critical. Uh, that goes to our Public Works people too. They have to be in front of these things, Travis. And I think going forward, I wanna hear from them about ways to improve, uh, sidewalks, uh, for the benefit of our town. And I think, you know, when that study comes in, it's gonna be very clear, we don't have any intention of putting sixty miles of sidewalks on streets in Houston. That's not the goal. The goal is to strategically put sidewalks in environments where, on streets where they have connected with benefit. Um, and that's why we need to study. Pretty simple. I'm sure they can do an overlay and then use our smart planning going forward as we replace the water main pipes, um, to get it done properly. I think there was an opportunity here missed by the Public Works folks to, um, come in and talk to us about that. I know it's a scenic road, uh, but I'm quite certain that if the, if the, if we have the right engineering and the right thinking, we can put a sidewalk down that road. Um, and would have an immediate improvement on all their qualities, qualities of life. I don't wanna miss those opportunities going forward. So please convey to them the need to stay in front of these issues and keep us informed. It's a priority.
Understood.
So, uh, I will entertain a motion at this point, cause I think there's consensus to move on Article Ten, which is the water main replacement for Winter Street, to have a motion. I will, you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I think you got a message to deliver, Travis.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I appreciate, uh, your being there.
Next item is fifteen?
Yes. I appreciate, uh, your willingness to have me come back with that information and, um, yes, message received. So I would say Article Fifteen, um, I gave you some new information today, uh, if you're not, if you need time on that. Um, we can certainly take it up next week in the interest of time tonight. Essentially what I have here, um, and what I think this Board has discussed is pursuing heavy commercial vehicle exclusions, um, pursuing some of the things that we discussed in the Lowland Industrial Park Traffic Forum. Um, and then looking at that townwide and potentially, uh, giving this Board, um, the opportunity to, uh, address some resident concerns when it comes to traffic. Uh, it would be helpful to be able to do traffic engineering, um, studies, uh, as needed and not necessarily waiting until a developer comes through and, and needs to do it for us, which has been sort of the practice. Um, the, the information I've added here is essentially the, the study that was done that has led us to the point where we are pursuing a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on Woodland Street at the direction of this Board, that study was done in two thousand seventeen. Those counts are still good, so that's how I'm pursuing that, uh, as you all voted. That study cost, um, around, just over six thousand dollars at the time of two thousand seventeen. I've, I've put in some escalators here to get me to current dollars. Um, and I've highlighted what that gets us, um, which includes, uh, the data collection, uh, which is the counts, the document review, regulatory and site plan review, a technical memorandum, which then we have obviously at our disposal and, and can be used to provide to MAF D O T. And then expert testimony as needed, and that was based on a not to exceed amount, um, with the contractor who put that together for Woodland. So I've used that to essentially say, um, based on that number, this, this provides the Select Board with the opportunity to look at a few streets that have come to your attention, whether it be, um, South Street or other streets, anywhere all over town, um, to, to listen to resident concerns and, and be able to act. I think this is, um, also leaves, um, and I'm, I'm waiting for one last sort of dollar amount on, on the sound engineering conversation that we also had as it pertained to Lowland. Um, but I think that the forty thousand dollar number that we have in here would allow, um, for multiple instances, um, in multiple areas throughout town that, that have, um, been troubling. So if there's any questions or any more information I can bring to you?
Questions, Ben?
Um, no, I feel pretty good about that. So we talked about that, so you said, this, uh, particular article before, so just a reminder.
Yeah, two things. Can you just go back to the data collection piece? Did you specify or do you feel like the article needs to specify the types of data? Cause what I didn't hear was noise or speed, but that doesn't mean that it needs to be in there if it's broad enough to allow that to come into the discussion when we move to actually pull the trigger on a study?
I like broader articles.
Okay.
Um, but-
You're not excluding speed or noise?
No.
Called a technical product.
All right. Then my second comment would be that some information was shared. I believe we have the, the person who sent us this information on the call tonight, a, a little bit of, uh, some homegrown volunteer, um, surveying of some traffic counts. I think this is fantastic. I, some communities actually use volunteers to do their traffic counts. You do not necessarily have to pay for an engineer. That is not my point. Um, my point is that the information shared is coming from a resident. Um, and we need to have something. And so I, I fully support this article is where I'm going. Um, and when I see a resident doing this type of, of traffic study on their own, it absolutely speaks to the need for me. What's here, what was presented to us today is, is so compelling as to the need to do something about, in this particular case, South Street. Uh, and the volume of trucks that they are seeing on that road and the conflict between people living out their daily lives, we need that kinda data. There's no, um, developer in town that we're aware of or that has set forward to date that is doing a traffic study on South Street. You could say the same for Portland, you could say the same for Marshall, you could say the same for Adams, you could say the same for Underwood, all manner of different streets, Chamberlain, where there's an impact from the traffic flow that no, no developer is studying. So I fully support the article. I think we need to be doing this work on our own, um, to get the answers that we need to address the quality of life issues that our residents are seeing and feeling.
I concur. It's part of the plan here to, uh, kinda capture for the first time our own traffic engineering data. Uh, we need to develop, um, something that we can use as a tool. Um, and I think the cost is kind of in the area that I was thinking. Um, and I'm quite happy with the broad language that you drafted. So if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve Article Fifteen, traffic engineering studies as described, to, to a cost of forty thousand dollars.
I will make that motion.
I will second it with a, with a question. I do have a question.
Go ahead.
So, um, probably putting a little bit of the cart before the horse with, uh, with us, including, uh, one of our later agenda items. But that traffic study that was in, uh, for Hopping Brook, it had some sort of, like, it had some speculative, like, you know, predictions on, based on, you know, a, a number of different factors and things like that. Would these, any of these studies be, um, able to sort of be a little bit more predictive as opposed to necessarily simply, um, just collecting data? Cause the, the reason I'm asking is pertaining to something like Hopping Brook, would we be able to sort of use any of these tools to be able to see what that impact would be if something, excuse me, something like that went in? What would impact, say, if we set Portland Street? Like, could we, you know, with that, with this, uh, engage something like that?
So the study that led to our ability to pursue a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on Woodland, which I'm basing this off of, um, is a pretty narrow scope when it comes to that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so being able to provide, uh, the checklist that MAF D O T requires for you to pursue a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion is, was sort of why I based this off of.
Okay.
Um, studies that get to, um, uh, long-term impact are, are generally speaking are going to be more costly and, and is not necessarily the scope here.
Okay.
This is written in a way that, if, if, if that was the will of the Board, it probably could be done, but you would be, rather than being able to potentially do counts on multiple streets that, that pursue, uh, MAF D O T's, um, approval, you know, we, that would be a different approach to a study.
Okay.
Um-
And it might be beyond the purview of what we need to be doing. I just think that, one of my concerns that I'll bring up later is just, uh, thinking about, sort of thinking about long return impact and just necessarily collecting the data of what's happening today. Because if we, as we develop and as we look towards additional projects, we kind of wanna understand what are the long return impacts in the near, in our waters.
And so when I, with a previous article, and, and for anybody watching now, wasn't watching last week, because our agenda is, is fuller this week, the, the tack equipment that is going to allow us to begin to track data through the police department, um, and, and deploy that sort of, um, information gathering equipment, um, with ourselves, not with the intention of pursuing a specific heavy commercial vehicle exclusion through MAF D O T, but simply because we wanna understand our own traffic patterns.
Mm-hmm.
And as they evolve over time, um, I think this, this gets to some specific issues that we, we, that were brought up through the Lowland Traffic Forum that we understand are outside of just the Lowland area.
Sure.
And I think that the tack request specifically also gives us another mechanism where we internally can start to make some decisions , um, based on data that we collect ourselves.
We can see that data and then we could say, okay, maybe, maybe we do wanna do a future, some more stuff. It'll give us sort of the basis, that sort of the ground we have to do if we wanted to do some additional and do that.
I would say, I would say this warrant, as it's sort of shaping up at the moment, is a multi-faceted approach to addressing what we, um, what we heard from the forum and, and know exists outside of the Lowland area.
You good with that, Ben?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, before I go to the final vote, I just wanna recognize the citizen that, uh, Tina mentioned, uh, Mr. David Castillo, who I know is on our call. David, I, I, in the interest of time, because we have a long agenda ahead of us, please accept our Board's recognition for the product that you sent us. It was very impressive, well received, and, uh, I hope to have you contribute to, um, uh, traffic study matters going forward. Uh, if you'll accept that as sort of a, a one-way thank you and, and maybe we'll hear from you under the five fifty-five piece. Is that satisfactory? Do you wanna mute him, Dave?
Excuse me. A thumbs up would work, if that's okay. Or a thumbs, yeah.
All right, good enough, good enough. Uh, all those in favor on the Article Fifteen, traffic engineering study, uh, forty thousand dollars, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries.
Okay. I would say that I bring Article Sixteen back for next week, if that's all right.
That's satisfactory.
That'll work.
That's great. So we're making way on the, uh, overall sense of, um, the agenda, excuse me, the, um, warrant article, so that's great news. Uh, let's move on to our agenda. Of our friends from Three Sixty Motorsports coming on in. So you recall that we left the hearing open last week and we are continuing on now. Gentlemen.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, Derek.
Good evening. Thanks for coming back. Uh, if you would kindly introduce yourselves to the folks at home, your name and address, thank you.
Uh, Jack Garvey. I own Three Sixty Motorsports, uh, moving to hopefully seventy-two Jeffrey Avenue.
And, um, Marty Garvey, um, I work with Jack and I own the building at seventy-two Jeffrey Avenue.
Excellent. Well, thanks for coming back. We had a couple of follow-up questions you may recall from our meeting last week. Uh, is there anything you would like to share with us or you wanna receive our questions for us? Any one to go by it?
Um, I have a thing here about our business model and traffic. I know that the town is very concerned with traffic. I just heard you more about that.
Yes, you did.
Um, so that's really what I have to send to you, whether you wanna do that.
Send somebody you wanna share or speak to.
Uh, I can share.
I'd also just let you know that, um, that the, these gentlemen did receive the occupancy permit from Chris Canny, I believe on Friday or today.
Thank you.
So the building permit they had, they had just received the last time you saw them and now they've received their occupancy permit as well.
Yep. Do you wanna copy that?
Uh, no, I got that. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Any, uh, follow-up questions, Mr. Sparrow?
Um, am I gonna understand, um, that, you know, so you got your occupancy permit, but you were already occupied and using the building, is that correct? Or what was going on?
We, we were, we were in there partially, we still have our regular licensed premises.
Okay.
Um, because we can't get rid of them until you say it's okay.
Right.
Um, but yeah, we've, we've been, uh, using the building and working on the building.
Okay.
Um, trying to make it so that we can move in.
Okay. So, but you're not necessarily doing, you're, you're not, you're not using it for business yet. You're just kinda getting it ready to?
Pretty much.
Okay. All right, all right.
Yeah. So you've got some information here about what you anticipate with the volume of, of traffic. That's not the right word. Customers through your site. What, so just for the audience listening, what we're seeing here is that you anticipate, uh, about two point six to three cars per day of additional traffic on Jeffrey Avenue?
That would be if both of us were operating at, you know, the highest intensity that we have previously operated.
Okay. And also that you're, you're, uh, based on dealers in- Okay. And also that you're, you're uh based on dealers in the area, you are feeling like eight, uh, seven thirty AM to eight PM or nine PM is what's typical for a used car dealership?
Correct. Most people need to drop their car off either before, after work, or by before, after work.
Okay.
Um, we're not the big, you know, dealership on the main road that has people driving by to keep stuff inside. We're pretty much online.
People buy, sell on the internet. Uh, the reason we're able to operate on Jeffrey Ave where there's basically no, no drive-by traffic, um, is that we sell the cars on the internet.
Okay.
Um, the internet has completely changed our business model. We really don't rely on walking traffic at all.
Okay.
Um, people see them on the internet, they pre-purchase them sometimes, not always, but most of the time they pre-purchase. Um, customers don't even come in the building.
Okay. Uh, and so then that brings me to, so they're not driving by to, to explore, they're finding you on the internet and then they're coming if they have a.
With an appointment.
Okay. So then can you just explain how the test drive works?
Um, it would be the same as if you just walked in on the street.
Okay.
People call, um, everybody wants to drive around all day looking for cars anyway. They go online, they see how good the deal is, they check the car fact, they get a, a really short list of cars, a couple of us, sure you want to come down at two thirty, no problem. They come down, car's ready.
Some people do a test drive. Some people, like if we sell it on eBay, there is no test drive.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have pretty good online reviews and so people tend to trust us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and if they want a test drive, they get a test drive. But often they don't.
Okay. Okay. And then can you just tell uh those listening and myself as well, I'm, I'm interested to know how the cars are arriving and the kind of volume of cars coming in? So we, we did talk about, you, you mentioned last week that there, you're not bringing in large car carriers. So what is the largest vehicle that's going to be bringing cars onto the site? What do you anticipate?
We drive them on. There are no.
Buy them locally.
Yeah, we buy them locally.
Pick them up.
Yep.
And the two of us go and get them one at a time. And we sell about eighteen cars a month, so I would anticipate about eighteen cars coming.
Okay. Uh, and then, you know, this, this board has heard from businesses in town, not, not you, related, nor related to you. But we have heard from businesses in town that are asking for fair treatment of all businesses. So uh, you know, seeking the necessary permits and waiting for approval of those permits is something that I, I would speak for my board, I certainly speak for myself, that is, is really important for us to see happening. Not only does it allow um us to look out for the best interest of the town, but it also treats all businesses fairly. Um, so I'm, I'm glad to hear that you have your occupancy permit. Um, I think that's critically important. Um, do you or the, you or the Car Vault have additional permits that are needed in order to operate out of seventy-two Jeffrey? Are you waiting for any additional permits?
Well, yes, the dealer's license to be moved from, from Hopping Brook to Jeffrey.
And that's for Three Sixty Motorsports?
That's for Three Sixty.
Is there any part of this that affects Car Vault or?
Um, I would like to move Car Vault as well.
Okay.
And I have questions about how to do that, but because of COVID, it's hard to get to you guys.
Okay.
Um, do I have to operate as TBA under Three Sixty or can I move Car Vault as well? I, that's a question I kind of have for you. I, I don't know.
Well, we, you, you alluded to that last week. Uh, we're here to talk about the Three Sixty Motorsports.
Right.
I think you know our town administrator, you know how to get ahold of him, just ping him on the website. You can put your question into him and we'll get you an answer on.
Okay.
Your specific issue.
Donna, must he reach out to you?
I have an email.
Okay.
Issues, I mean.
Okay. So we can answer those questions.
Okay. Just that you're aware your license is up for renewal in?
Under the calendar year.
December thirty-first, twenty twenty? Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're just annualizing.
Would this be the, now, some towns renew them this early. Would this be the renewal or?
No.
No, so we have to.
Transrats.
Okay.
So to your point earlier about hearing about traffic concerns, we hear about them all the time.
Sure.
Uh, the Lowland Industrial Park has a, a known set of issues. We had a hearing back in August where we heard from residents loud and clear about what their issues are. Um, I, I, I don't think this would be the, the likelihood of what would happen, but were we to hear about, if there were to be issues, let me just put it right out there. If there were to be issues with your business, we would, we would certainly hear from residents. And I think that would come to play with the hearing that we would have for the decision about renewing the permit. I don't anticipate any problems, but I think that just in full disclosure, there's a very active audience. And we are hearing from residents at a pretty high level on concerns around multiple industrial parks and businesses and how they are operating, which is why I'll come back to my point I made earlier about how important it is for businesses to seek necessary approvals and wait, uh, necessary permits, excuse me, and wait for approval of those permits and operate um with, you know, sort of in partnership with the town. Uh, and so that's all I have to say.
Alright. I don't have any questions at this point. I will entertain a motion to approve the transfer of the license for Three Sixty Motorsports from, um, excuse me, to Jeffrey Ave from, what's your current address?
It was uh two seventy-five Hopping Brook Road.
Hopping Brook Road. That's a motion.
Okay.
Second?
Uh, second.
All is in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? That carries. Gentlemen, thank you for your time. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Mr. Sparrow, would you uh take a motion to close the hearing?
I will make a motion to close the hearing for the uh Three Sixty Motorsports, for Three Sixty Motorsports, moving of the, the transfer.
Second?
Second.
All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That closes the hearing.
And it sure, it sounds like we may be seeing you again for the Car Vault perhaps.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe you will.
Please reach out and let me know if you have any issues. Get in contact.
Okay.
Okay.
Good luck.
Sounds good. Thank you. Quick question about timeline on this?
Yep.
Is this like a, is this effective?
We'll get you a letter tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Okay. We, we're signing it tonight, though. Donna, neither.
Yes.
Alright. The next item on our agenda is the Indian Ridge Road South parking issue discussion. I'm going to ask our town administrator to introduce the issue to the board for consideration.
Sure. Uh, and our IT director will put up some images, I believe, that were sent to us from a resident? No?
Uh, Donna had parents on me. Yeah. Yep, here we go.
Okay. So um, I, I'll just give a little bit of history and then I, I think we have a resident who would like to speak to the issue. Um, so there was a warrant article. Uh, just give me one second.
Mm-hmm.
I've got to flip over in my package here. So the warrant article was Article nineteen of the July twenty, twenty twenty town meeting. Um, for acceptance of public roadways included in that, um, there was a vote to, a further vote to authorize bike lanes to acquire by donation, purchase or eminent donation rights sufficient to use, among other roads, Indian Ridge Road South. So my only update before we sort of go into public comment is that that process, uh, including Indian Ridge Road South, Hopping Brook Road, Boynton Road and Deer Run, um, is currently with um Jay Talman. Uh, Karen Sherman and myself have been in contact with him about next steps. Um, and so I think at this point, it's, it's sort of uh pursuing what, what's uh the town meeting has authorized us to do. And, and that is going to take a little bit of time, but I think just so that you have that background of where we are in that process, um, I think that's all I wanted to make sure you had before we begin the discussion.
Did we expect to hear from the um, uh, individual that lives on Indian Ridge Road South, that she planned on joining us this evening?
I believe so.
And I believe she's on the call.
Chris, could you uh see if this?
Her last name was Cohen.
Tracy Cohen is available to speak?
She's waiting in the top right corner. I believe she's on her Dave Cohen.
Yep, that's my husband. Hi.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you? Thank you. Thank you for ta, giving me the time today. Um, I appreciate it. I tried to submit things in advance, um, cause I know that I was just squeezed in and I know how busy everybody is, but, so I don't want to repeat myself of what I've already submitted. Um, kind of summarizing the issue going on. So I don't know, can you confirm on your end what you have? I saw a couple pictures, but, um.
Tracy, you sent an email on October thirteenth. If that's your last email, we have that for this evening's discussion.
Okay, no. Um, okay, I guess there was just another one, but it, it might be overlapping a bit. I guess I could just try to summarize a little bit. Um, so I live on Indian Ridge Road South. Um, it's a cul-de-sac. And um, there's been an ongoing issue. I've been here for almost seven years, but um, there's been an ongoing issue on our street in terms of parking. Um, and basically what's happening is that there, um, that's one snapshot, but um, right there. So that's me and my car. That's why the picture's like that. So there's just basically a bunch of unauthorized service vehicles, cars. Um, it's been increasing the last two years. It's just a hodgepodge, but the main thing, this is the kind of thing that you're, we're seeing on a daily basis overnight, on the weekends. Um, it's my understanding, I can't confirm it, but a lot of these people actually live in the Turner Road condominiums that you see behind that van right there. And they just kind of come to and from and instead of returning their commercial vehicles overnight, this is what they do, but now we have cars here. Um, so in between that space right there, there, it was consistent. And then when I walked my dog the next morning, some started to leave. So it's just like, it's really the whole block. So um, the problem has been a safety concern because there are, you know, there's five homes. The house across the street from me, in addition to the five homes, is a private nursing home. Um, in all these five homes on our street, there's thirteen children and seven dogs. Um, the bus stop, we have to walk by here. And essentially what has happened is this has become a one-way street. Um, we have no sidewalks. Behind this white van here is a back entrance to the condos. So people come flying down to turn, to leave, to enter and to exit the condos. So we have that going on, plus we have all of this. And, and the winter, the plows can't get through. Um, so it's been a real problem. The private nursing home across the street from me has dialysis vans going there daily, RNs. And then we were given the wonderful news that there's a proposal that's in effect now, as all of you are aware, of the Jeffrey Park Project, which is building twenty-four single-family units. And they have decided that the only way to have this, these people exit and enter is through our street. So I've been very active on all of those meetings and it's shocking to me that during a pandemic, this thing has been fast-tracked beyond belief. Um, I'm not against people building here, but I just want there to be a plan for safety for the residents that live here now. So I've been very active and vocal, trying to say, can you guys get signs going? Can you do things? And then I'm like, why am I going to wait for this project to get some signs put up here of a no parking or children live here or sidewalks or something? Um, because it's, it's been such a problem and the police have been very nice to me by saying, as soon as there's something posted there, I'll help you enforce it. But we can't put a sign there and we just can't go and find out what they're doing and why they're doing it. So now we're faced with the issue of twenty-four units. I mean, you do the math of how much more cars in traffic that's going to present on the street. So I'm just here asking for help of like, again, this project has been fast-tracked. And then I'm standing here and my, my fellow neighbors have submitted their concerns as well. We're all completely frustrated. But I do feel like my minutes have been heard through this whole Jeffrey Park Project of God forbid if there is an accident or something unsafe happens. I have been as loud as I possibly can be. I'm annoying everyone, but my goal here is to get some help. And why on earth there's just one way to enter this project and enter this project and it's so large, I have no idea. That's for another day. But I just want some kind of plan in place for our residents right now. And again, the children, the pets. And the condo wants nothing to do with anything, cause quite honestly, we're helping them by having all the parking here. So they're of no help. So I'm here to say, like, how can you help me? What do you need me to do? The only solution I see is getting up a no parking sign implemented here to get rid of all of these people. But again, what's going to happen when this, another flux of traffic comes in, when all of these units are put up and no one cares about what happens here? And I reiterate again, there are no sidewalks.
Um, Mr. Sparrow?
And I'm sorry for my tone. I'm just really just frustrated. It's been like two years and I'm making.
Oh, no.
So I apologize.
Don't worry. Nope. No tone taken. We're, we're here to do some business. So if you'd allow us, we may have some questions for you, okay?
Okay.
Sparrow? Um, this probably isn't, this isn't a question really for Tracy. It's actually probably for Travis. It's like, what, like, what, what, I guess, what can we do? What, you know, what are our options here? I mean, this sounds like it, I think we have accepted this as a public, I don't remember. Voted. We voted. Town meeting approved the acceptance of it as, as a public way.
Yep.
Um, and so at this point, we are pursuing how that's going to happen. The, the way that the article was written gives us sort of multiple ways to go about that, including taking.
Yep.
Um, all of them take time and at this point, I don't think that that's necessarily going to, it's generally not the first choice.
Okay.
Um, and so there is a cost component to this, which is the legal side. I think the town by approving the, the take, uh, excuse me, approving the road acceptance has sort of accepted that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I have initiated Jay Talman to that effect and at this point, that, that's where my hands are tied until I sort of get some, um, until I get an update on some progress of that. When, when we, when the process concludes and we've accepted the road and we've gone through everything we need to, then we absolutely can put up the signs. It's pretty much the discretion of this board. But until we get to the end of that process, we just don't have that, it's not our road. Um, and that's, that's what I was leading off with. Um.
Gotcha. Okay.
The town meeting has done its thing. Um, and at this point, it, it is in the hands.
Kind of a waiting game.
In the hands of council.
Okay.
Tina?
Uh, so I hear you Tracy, loud and clear. Uh, I read your emails. You're looking for no parking. You're looking for signage that alerts drivers to children in the area. You're looking for sidewalks and you're looking for speed limits to be posted. I believe those were some of the concerns that are requests that you brought forward. So my question would be back to town council is, I understand that we're waiting for the, the steps that need to be taken um, to move forward, to have the authority to implement traffic control on that road. But is there something, number one, can we get a timeline so that Tracy has an understanding of, of when she might expect this board to act? Um, to put in some of the controls or measures, uh, or rules and regulations? And then second, are there temporary measures that we could take in the interim? So is there anything that this board could authorize temporarily to offer some relief? Um, those would be two questions for town council. And then, um, in terms of the sidewalk issue, uh, I think that this communication back to the zoning board, and I'm the liaison for the zoning board, so I'm happy to, to have this conversation with them and, and encourage them to look at uh any requests to waiver the need, to waive rather the need for sidewalks. I think that's something the zoning board should, should be looking at very, very carefully, given the concerns that you're raising.
I know that there was some discussion um with the builders in one of our meetings and, you know, they don't want to pay for it. They said that they would make a donation. Um, nobody on the street, it was all done by different builders. There was a big crisis about who was going to pay for it way back when. So I know that was something raised by the zoning board. I think that they requested like, what's going on with sidewalks? And the builder was very clear that that's not part of their project. But again, my question would be, well then why are we the only way to get in and out if no one's willing to do sidewalks? So that's the limited information. I know about that, but it was briefly raised.
Okay, if that's helpful, thank you.
The only eye question I have, uh, Tracy, and this is actually for you Tina, is has this request gone through the TAC?
No, no, it has not, but I, I, I don't know where it would go if it's not something that our board has the ability to, to vote on.
If there's a certain, well, let me, let me pose this to you uh through Travis. If there's a certain um imminent outcome here and once the lawyers and Travis conclude the process.
Right.
Authorized by town meeting, um, it would be appropriate to go through the Traffic Advisory Council.
In anticipation of?
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, so Tracy, what we're talking about, you probably are familiar with it, it's a group the town's involved in. On behalf of the board, they receive traffic concerns from neighbors and they evaluate with police chief, highway department and others, whether or not signage is beneficial and if so, what, where and so forth. Those are details that the board then votes on. Um, so there's a couple of sequences here and I'd ask you to keep in close contact with our town administrator to find out when the process is finally approved that was voted upon, and I would think that that's in the next several weeks, hopefully not too many months. Uh, that you go through the Traffic Advisory Council, which is on our website, make your application for the signage and we'll turn around and approval pretty quickly. Uh, unfortunately, you may have to wait some weeks or months for this to be achieved. I know you've been patient to date, but that seems like the logical process here. Uh, we simply can't vote on signs that, um, at this point have no force of law behind them. Okay?
Okay.
Uh, any questions on that?
So I, I'm waiting for the town administrator for what will be several weeks and then I go and fill out the Traffic Advisory Council form?
No, I think you could do that now Tracy. What, what John is saying is that it's inevitable that we will have action taken. We presume that it's inevitable we'll have action taken. That gives us the authority to post signs on, to, and uh, add rules and regulations to Indian South, Indian Ridge South, excuse me. So go ahead and start the process and I'm going to send you an email right now.
Oh, thank you, Scott.
With the link, okay?
Okay, perfect.
Alright. Any other follow-up questions Tracy, or is that good for, for now?
Um, that was really it. Um, yes, that, that really covered it. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to what was going on here and helping me.
Thanks for joining us this evening. We're going to move on to the next item of our.
Thank you, Tina.
agenda this evening, and, um, move on to Front Street. Um, I think this will come through the town administrator and Ms. Hines. You want to start off, Travis?
Sure. So at, at the request of the board, and, and with the good work, obviously, of Chris Mayo, who's been doing quite a bit of, um, ge- getting interaction through our website, um, which we'll hear about also on Five 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 later. But on Front Street, you had asked, uh, that a port will be set up to allow residents to provide feedback. Um, and I believe that, um, we, we're at a point where we can sort of begin to review some of that feedback. Um, and Chris, if you don't mind showing the, um, page that I'm talking about on the website where individuals can still continue to do this. I'd just, um, remind anybody who's not aware of this, um, or has not heard about it in a while, the board, um, voted through the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant um, to pursue changing Front Street, uh, to a one-way street. Um, and as that is within the authority of the Select Board, the, the decision was made at that time to do it on a pilot basis through April first. Um, and because of the pilot nature, the short-term nature, um, before a final decision is made, um, we did ask that people, if they have comments, or, um, if they like it, if they don't like it, if they have specific issues, to give us that feedback. Um, and at this point, I think I've, I've provided the feedback that we've received to date, and I think Ms. Hines can sort of summarize where we are and, and where she sees it.
Right, so we, we have fifteen comments that have landed on, on the, um, link, on the survey link up there. And I would strongly encourage residents who've been down to Front Street, who've spent some time down there, to use this survey to get us your feedback. Um, but what we're seeing is that residents, especially the abutters, have concerns about what's going to happen with permanent changes. There are some that assume that what's in place is permanent. Um, and there are others who are wanting to see things change when we move to permanent. And so what I would be looking for this board, for our board rather, to consider is a, to get a tentative date for a public hearing. Because I think that that is something that we can push out to people who are saying, hey, look, um, when are we going to be notified? How are we going to be notified of permanent changes? And I, I think it would be helpful, where we know we have a hard and fast end on April first, is to get a date on a calendar where we can say, this is when we will have a public hearing, to hear your concerns and suggestions, and, and consider any permanent changes as a result of the pilot. So that was what I was looking for out of this, Travis. And what I was also wanting to do is to reassure those who have submitted a, a comment that we see it, we're, um, we're aware of your concerns or your suggestions. Um, some of the comments have been positive, some have been negative, uh, and that this is a pilot or a temporary, um, program, and we will have public feedback before there is any permanent decision to be made. So looking for a date. I'm looking at March, thinking that the, you know, the month before the pilot ends, and hoping that we could. I, I think that would also give us enough time, Travis, if we were to pursue or needed to pursue a warrant article, um, we would possibly be able to do that. I don't want to jump the gun on that, but, um...
Absolutely. My only comment, I, I, I agree. Um, sorry if I interrupted you, John. But, um, what I, one thing I just want to keep in mind with this particular project is Blair Square.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because, um, how this is, um, how, how we consider it, I think, needs to, um, dovetail into, uh, the, the Blair, any Blair Square development, because we want to make sure that the two are compatible. So I just want to make sure that whatever the board decides, either we have a little bit of runway if we have to make adjustments to planning for Blair Square, or if we, just to make sure that, like, you know, I, I don't know when we're going to decide. I don't know how it's going to look or what we're going to do. But just to, just to make sure that we're considering that particular development as we, uh, look at this, this, uh, this one way.
But, uh, the, so the Friends of the Rail Trail, um, gave five thousand dollars to the Blair Square Committee,
Yes.
to move forward to a public forum for the committee itself.
Correct.
That I thought, with my last conversation with that committee chair, was going to happen sometime in December.
Yes, it's coming up very soon.
All right, so, so we should get, we should have a public forum on Blair Square, and what they're thinking about, the direction they're just thinking of heading in,
Yes.
what they've sort of looked at already before we would have this forum. So I, in terms of a dovetail, I see it there.
Yeah, and I, yeah, it probably would. I just, I want to make sure that, um, also, because there's other pieces, like, if it's going on with the CPC and things like that, and there, and there needs to be. Because one of the considerations was, where does Front Street end? Does there need to be an easement by the town if we want to do development on Blair Square? So we want to make sure that we're just considering these pieces, and that if we,
Okay.
if we decide too late, it might not give enough runway. There's, there's a lot of moving parts here, and I just want to make sure that I have enough time to get all the moving parts and interconnect them.
To your comment about a lot of moving parts, I think we do need the town planner to weigh in on those sort of boundaries that, that, um, Ben is talking about. Because I think it comes to play with parking and some other decisions that on either side, Front Street or Blair Square, are going to have to be understood.
Yes. And I want, I want them to be compatible. I want the solutions to be compatible and we're not, and with whatever comes up. So that way everybody knows where, where one ends and where one begins, so, the thought.
The only feedback, Tina, I would say is that any public hearing should probably be a little sooner than, uh, April. So
Yep.
The January, February I'm fine with. So I'd ask the town administrator to just put it on their calendar in that time for perhaps late January, uh, where we can accept some public feedback that can be practically used and adjusted. Sound good?
Thank you.
Late January, I will look at that. A nice balmy day in January.
Yeah. When there's not like five feet of snow blocking everything that we would otherwise want to be looking at at Front Street.
Is that adequate for the item, uh, on the agenda this evening, Mr. Hearn?
I believe that's what we wanted to cover.
Okay. All right. Oops. We're going to move on to the next item, which is the rail trail discussion on encroachments.
Yes, so I believe this is not a new conversation to you. Um, I believe it may be a new conversation to Mr. Sparrow.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I provided to you some information. I, I got to meet the rail trail committee on their call last week. Finally, I'm trying to get to every group. I think I've, I've, I've made, most meetings of, of boards and committees have been meeting. So I did get to, to introduce myself to them. One of the, their concerns is something that they brought forward to the Select Board in the past, um, which is, uh, encroachments on the rail trail. They've given you a list of, of those that they've been monitoring over time. And, um, there, there is a little bit of a difference that, that they were indicating to me, and that's why, you know, they'll, um, they notify whether it's residential or commercial because of some of the legal documents that give, um, right to the rail trail where, um, because of contaminants that were related to the rail in the past, um, it is, you know, we are not allowed to have residential use within the area. Um, and so it's, it's a little bit different between commercial and residential. So if you see that, that is the background on it. Um, in June of two thousand nineteen, letters from this board did go out to encroachers. Um, and I believe at this point, um, I would say that, that what the rail trail is looking for, and I don't want to speak for them if they're here, but, um, would be follow-up on that if there was no action taken by those encroachers, anything that has sort of come up since then to, to be looking at action. And in the event that, um, a letter was sent, and nobody, and, and there was no positive response, um, that the board look at options to essentially escalate, um, our, uh, from request to demand that individuals cease and desist in some instance.
So I've got a quick, uh, a question. First, Chris, if you could help us identify if anybody on Zoom, he is. Bob, if you could unmute and join us for a moment. We have a couple of questions about the encroachment matter.
Yes, certainly. I'm, I'm not muted.
How are you, Bob? Did I miss anything? Yeah. So if you could just help us identify, uh, the list that we have in front of us has forty-one different, um, addresses or locations. Some appear to have what's known as a license or a leave designation, and, um, others are removed, and others are just blank. Um, can you help us understand the collective sense of what's going on with these forty-one locations? Why some of them have a designation, others don't?
Yes, I could, uh, I guess, the way to start out on this is that there are uses that are being conducted in the right-of-way of the rail bid. Um, and then there are other things, such as dumping, um, and/or, and, and the third is probably more egregious is drainage discharges from, from a residential development there. But when you have uses, you have commercial uses, and then you have residential uses. Any of the commercial uses, if we so decide to allow them to continue to have those commercial uses on town property, basically, um, we could grant them a license. But because of our, uh, legal agreement with CSX, we're not allowed to permit the residential uses on the, on the, on the right-of-way. And so some of those are things like play equipment, um, you know, gardens and that sort of thing. But, um, you know, we've, we've, like you say, we've sent out letters to some of them. Some of them have stopped, uh, uses. Um, others have, new ones have been created, unfortunately. And so we have no mechanism to, to enforce that. Um, and then there's the dumping situation, and, and some of them are, are minimal. It's yard waste, some are, you know, more egregious, where it's, you know, major trees that have been thrown down in embankment with a tractor, and, you know, and it's, and then there's construction waste, you know, somebody has a project, they have a fence, they cut down their wooden fence, and then dump it on the town property. Most of the prior dumping that has gone on for the last hundred and some years, the Trails Committee has gone through, or volunteers have gone through and picked up. You know, there are a lot of tires and trail, and equipment, and that sort of thing. But most of that's been cleaned up, but yet there's still more, uh, new, new people mainly that, um, are dumping on the, on the right-of-way itself. And so when I have the list that's there together, you know, some of them, we've, the Trails Committee has talked about some of these, um, you know, like fences. If they're not impacting, and they're, you know, maintained, and they're not impacting the trail use and that sort of thing, we were saying, allow the fences to, to continue to operate. Um, some items, like buildings that have been constructed, especially a residential building within the right-of-way, that obviously needs to be removed. You know, that was done without a, the, um, building permit and whatnot. And so we, we have all these different forms of, of, uh, encroachments. And, you know, like I say, the, the uses of the, the right-of-way cannot be maintained if they're a residential nature. The others, we do have a program, uh, we've discussed in the past, to have licenses, license agreements with the commercial users.
Yeah, well, I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions. I'll start with, um, Ben. Anything, Ben?
Um, just trying to round my head around it. I probably got ten thousand questions, but I'm, I'm all right at the moment.
All right, Tina.
Yes, uh, so I'm just looking here at a, an email from Jay Tallerman, our Town Council. Give me one second, Robert. I'm just going to read it over real quick. I just found it. Um, so one letter's been sent out. Every, everybody on this list, Robert? Could you just confirm if every one of the forty-one here has received a letter? Or are you saying that there are some new additions to this list?
I believe, well, the commercial users were not some, sent letters. It was, the, the letters only went out to residential users. So it's only those that, in the list that are residential. Some of these that are residential that are on this list are new, new encroachers, call it.
Okay, so I mean, I think at a minimum, we're looking at sending out a letter to the residential uses, again, at a minimum. I am very curious about the license, uh, program that, or policy that, that was somewhat developed, um, and, and not fully, uh, implement, well, certainly not implemented, uh, taken any further. So I'd like to learn more about that. I saw a thumbs up from Travis here when, when you mentioned it, Robert. Um, you're comfortable, your committee is, is very comfortable. You've already voted on seeking a license agreement from commercial abutters. Is that correct? Do, do you need to take this back to your committee?
No, I don't think so. Any, any of the uses of public, public land, which this is, would be the Select Board making decisions on. And so we have, you know, sort of guided you as to what, um, users can be maintained with a license if they so desire to, to license it, and then, um, what should not be continued. And that's where I'm referring to residential uses. And so, yes, we have discussed with a number of the, um, the various, uh, commercial users, and a lot of them have said, yeah, we'd like to, you know, license our use of it. And some, we have not.
Okay. So I, I mean, I would like to see that explored further, um, what a license agreement would look like. Um, and also, I think, in that, we would also, we would need to look at how it will be enforced. So who is the enforcing person, uh?
We are.
Uh, knocking on the door. Like, who's going to go knocking on the door to, to?
Well, we could use Hallson PD if we need to.
Mm-hmm. And then the third would be the revenue generated from a license agreement. Where does that land? Where does that live? But I think on the, on the commercial side, those are three questions and three pieces that I would want to see developed and presented back to the board. Um, I, I think it's a great idea. I, I've had one conversation with one business about it, and they were open to the idea like Robert's saying. Uh, and so I, I'm feeling optimistic about that. In terms of the residents, uh, I, I think a second letter needs to go out. I haven't seen the language of the first, but if we need to strengthen that language a little bit, I'm open for that. Um, I think that the third, after that, the one letter, now two letters, for some, it will be there first. Uh, but then to move quickly to a cease and desist, um, this is work that your committee has to address all the time, Robert. And I, I just think that the trail is such an asset to our community. We, we need to take this, um, seriously and, and act somewhat quickly on it. So those are my thoughts, John.
I would concur. Um, we, when we first tackled this, Tina, I'm not sure you were on the board at the time, but I was new to the board, we understood that the need to do something was upon us. The license agreement was meaningful. I don't recall, Bob, you have all the information. I, I thought the licenses were up for annual renewal, and there was a clause that if the conditions of the arrangement, whether it's parking or structure, uh, with that particular business changed, the license would be dissolved, and the, the effect of the encroachment would have to be removed. Um, that's my recollection. We can certainly get back to that. But I have, I frankly see this as sort of an annual thing that the rail trail has to do. They have to monitor, air, air quote, the backyard of the rail trail, and give us an update on who needs to receive notices. Um, in each case, I agree with Tina, the residents, um, who are encroaching need to get a letter. Uh, they should be given a timeframe in which to accomplish or clear their encroachment. Um, and any, any feedback or, uh, follow-up should be conveyed to this board. Um, so I would encourage you also to work with our town administrator on the license part. If there's any reason to change, evolve, or monetize with licenses, we should be exploring that.
Actually, did, um, I do, I actually do have a question, um, here, and that is, um, are we, um, communicating to residents who are not on this list? Are we, are we like, do we have some sort of an outreach to just sort of talk about what are the role, what roles do we have? Or is the only correspondence people are seeing about this kind of, uh, uh, of the source to be, um, the letter thing, I think.
So, uh, Bob, you can answer that, but I'm going to guess that the individuals that are on this list have been notify, noticed to be encroaching. There seem to be associated photos.
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I, so what I'm saying is, is that, oh, like, are we talking to everybody who's a budding and saying, hey, this is the role? So I see what you're saying.
Is there something on our website about that, Bob?
Uh, there's nothing on the website, uh, describing that, other than on the fact sheet or flyer that we have for the, uh, trail itself. You know, it says, you know, it's a public park, basically. Please don't dispose of yard waste and construction waste on it, that sort of thing. But there, yeah, there's nothing on the website. Our website is pretty minimal, uh, from the Trails Committee standpoint. And so, uh, you know, there's not anything on that with respect to this.
I think it's an area we could probably expand on, um,
Yeah, especially in a person who wanted to have licenses, we should be able to allow people to apply for them that, that, when it's pertinent. So that way they have the opportunity to, to understand, you know, if they're in a butter, what, what can they, what they can and can't do, and who to communicate with if they have questions.
Please, go ahead.
Robert, is there any sense of urgency to, to this? Like, are you seeing, uh, conditions on any of these addresses for any of these, um, encroachments to be time-sensitive? Needs to be addressed ASAP?
Um, no, I don't think anything, you know, this has been an ongoing thing. As I said, a hundred and fifty years, people have been dumping on the rail bid, you know, because it was the backyard, and it was a dump, appropriate dumping ground to some people. And so, um, yeah, I don't see any of these that are, are time-sensitive.
All right. Bob, uh, do you have any other comments for us? We'll move on. Uh, I think you have some guidance from us on the letters. We support the idea, um, maybe an expanded comment on the website, and any new licenses for businesses, of course, uh, should be developed. Anything else?
That's, that sounds good to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is 555 Hopping Brook. A discussion including a traffic report plan proposed by the owner of a development, a proposed development in that area. Uh, joining us this evening is Mr. Mike Milonowski, did I get that right, Mike?
You got it perfect.
Welcome to Holliston, thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Well, thank you all for making time this evening on this important project and, uh, have a small presentation that we'd like to go over and answer any questions you have.
Great, just a couple of, um, things I need to get out of the way.
Sure.
All right, first, uh, joining us this evening are several participants right now numbering 71 on a Zoom call. As I said earlier in the meeting, I'm going to read some instructions for folks who might be interested in joining our conversation regarding public comment. The town will be asking those that want to speak during a specific agenda item to raise the, use the raise the hand feature. If you're using a tablet or smartphone and want to speak, touch the screen. And depending upon your device, either in the bottom or top right of the screen, there are three dots next to participants, press the three dots and press raise hand. If you're using a laptop or desktop computer and want to speak, click on participants at the bottom of the screen. This will open a participants window to the right. In the bottom right-hand corner of the participants window, click on raise hand. If you're dialing in by phone, you can press star nine to indicate you want to speak. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be asked to unmute. For those on a computer tablet phone, you will receive a message to unmute. If you're calling in by phone when you're announced by the Select Board, you will need to press star six to unmute by phone. If you are unable to find the raise the hand feature, you can send a chat notice to the Town of Holliston requesting to speak. Select Board will be notified. Uh, as you can see this evening, Mike, we have quite a few interested participants. I'm sure many of them want to hear about what's going on up at 555 Hopping Brook. It's been a topic that's consumed a fair amount of our time. Um, so first, if you could give introduction of yourself, your position, your role, and a little bit of what you're here to talk about tonight.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, again, thank you for allowing us to come speak tonight. Um, we did anticipate having a few people on the Zoom call, so if you bear with us, the slides have kind of a global overview of the project, just so that we can make sure everybody has the same information. Uh, so for myself is, I represent John Deli Pascoli. John Deli Pascoli has owned this property for well over 20 years. I run all of his businesses from Eta Ville Family Theme Park to the Grafton Upton Railroad to this property we have here in Holliston, as well as several other industrial sites that we're currently in the process of developing in other towns as well. Um, so I guess just for a little background, um, this project began in 2019 and we had gone through the process of meeting with Travis's predecessor, Mr. Ritter, and others in the town, and we're moving forward to the permitting process. Um, we've received unanimous support, uh, through the plans that we've submitted to the Conservation Commission, the Board of Health, the Planning Board for the site plan review, and also a zoning variance for height restrictions to the ZBA. Uh, we had hoped to actually have this project under construction and completed by the close of this year. That was our goal at the end of 2019. Obviously COVID hit and then through meetings and everything, that added about a three or four month process before we finally got approval from the Planning Board, uh, late this spring, early summer. Uh, from there, we were on track to actually open this property, or at least to have the property enclosed, winterized, by the end of this calendar year. And unfortunately, that has not happened to this particular point. Uh, but let me go through this slide presentation, because I believe this really gives a good overview as to everything that's happened. So out of the planning board process, one of the items that we had to do was to go back to Mass DOT with our traffic study for putting in a new traffic signal at the intersection of Route 16 and Hopkinbrook Park, as well as identifying the full build of the entire property. So this new transportation model that was, uh, that was submitted to Mass DOT last week is something that Mass DOT has to review and then they'll issue what's called a Section 61 finding, which allows for the movement, uh, going forward with putting in the traffic signal at that intersection. Uh, this will also take some concurrence with the Board of Selectmen in the future, once we get the final plans done. But this is the permit to go ahead and start to the design and the detailed analysis before we get into the 25, 75, 100% design. Um, so with that, that has been submitted to, to Mass DOT. First slide you have here is your existing Town of Holliston zoning map as part of your master plan for the last couple decades. Uh, this site, which is in the lower blue area in industrial zone that abuts Medway, has been designated by the Town of Holliston as your future economic driver for growth. Uh, what I will say is the land to the, to the southeast of the blue area Medway is land that John Deli once was an owner of as well, and he developed most of the houses that are over in Medway. But because Holliston zoning was different than Medway's, 20 plus years ago, he couldn't continue with housing. He had to stop at the border with the intention of always developing this as industrial land. Let me go to the next slide, please. So the next slide, uh, on the right is kind of an aerial that just shows where the site is located. It's behind where everybody's names are, for those that are watching in this room. Uh, and then to the, to the, to the left where the names and the people are, that's the existing Hopkinbrook, uh, project. Clearly, we're looking to put a new traffic signal at the end of Route 16. And then if we're looking at from a local standpoint, um, the map on the left just shows the travel route that has been agreed to by the end user to move the trucks from their development to Route 495. And I'll go over that a little bit later. Let me go to the next slide, please. So when Mr. Deli, uh, first bought this property, uh, he bought it in late, I think it was 1998. Prior to his purchasing of the property, it already has a MIPA permit for doing 3 million square feet of development. When that MIPA permit was done, it was to have about 36, 37 cars leaving the site, based upon more of a office type development at that time.
Thirty-six, 37,000.
Thirty-seven thousand.
Thank you.
Thirty-seven thousand. Uh, it was developed more as a, as an office park back in, in, uh, 1983. Now, again, what does that number mean? I would put comparisons up here so we can get perspective. Today, on Route 16, there's 16,000 cars in a 24-hour period going both ways. So that's what the original project was that John Deli purchased. From there, in 2003, a couple of years after he purchased it, he recognized that that was just not doable. And in collaborating with the town back at that point, he then developed the park into more of a mixed-use development. So we went from one use category of general office and turned it, you know, which was going to be multi-story buildings, into a mixed use, which was manufacturing warehouse, general office, and R and D. At that time in 2003, the average daily trips was reduced down from, again, to 36,000 down to 17,000. So that's what's been in the plan for the last 20, almost 20 years. Uh, there has been a lot of activity in, in the, in the park. Karen Sherman has been involved in every one of those projects. Uh, we had one of the large utilities in Massachusetts was going to build their New England headquarters there at one point, a multi-three-story building that, uh, but they decided to build it someplace else, so that didn't go through. And that would have had, at that point, 17,000 trips for that whole development at that time. Next slide, please. This right here just shows, and it's in the report that you have copies of, this is what the existing traffic is today that goes through the intersection of the site from Hopkinbrook, uh, onto Route 16. This just shows the number of cars in the AM and the PM, during the peak hours, that are taking a right, left, or going through. So that's what exists today.
Because I was just asking to pause very briefly. Travis, confirming for the folks that are watching, everything that Mr. Milonowski is speaking to is available on our website.
So the study is up, I can put this PowerPoint up tomorrow?
Okay, so the content of your PowerPoint includes study material, is that correct?
That is correct.
What we're seeing, what we're seeing should look familiar to the traffic study that's up.
That's correct. This slide is directly from that report and the numbers that are pulled out of here from that report as well.
Thank you, keep going.
Okay, so again, I just put this up here, just again, perspective, what's happening today? How many cars are going by, by there today? I told you what the average was on a daily basis, this is what it is on the peak AM and PM hour. Go to the next slide, please. Uh, this is what the parks looked like, um, earlier this spring. Um, and this is, actually, this might have been, I take that back, this was, um, this was this past fall. Uh, over on the right, Farmacan, uh, your first marijuana producing facility was under construction. And we were building the Hopkinbrook Road coming through the site. You can see some of the construction vehicles. In the bottom lower right is a stormwater detention basin that was designed for the entire park. This is a master planned park, unlike many other developments that we have primarily a single source of stormwater. So that when a developer comes in, they can just build a pipe to connect to the master planned stormwater, and it's all retained in that particular area. Um, obviously, sometimes a developer has to add some additional storage capacity, but this is, you know, going to handle 80-plus percent of the development into the park. Um, so again, the road was being built, we went through and cleared, um, I think it was about 10 acres up in the top left, and another 10 or 15 in the bottom area. And again, just trying to start to open the site up. Um, I want to, um, I'll come back to this slide later. Next slide, please. So this is just a higher aerial view, uh, that as you're looking down, you can see the existing buildings built in Hopkinbrook. Uh, you can see the roof lines of those. Um, the largest one is a little over 100,000 square feet, which is the one closest to higher new development area. And you can see over on the left side, that's where the town line is, and county line between Medway and Holliston, where you see some develop, some residential housing. But again, Mr. Deli was responsible for building most of those, uh, you know, two decades ago. Next slide, please. So, um, I'm going to go through the text on here, because I think it's important that when we look at what exists today in the Holliston Industrial Park, plus Farmacan, plus some projects that are currently being expanded, this for the existing buildings plus Farmacan, your 720,000 square feet of development of the, the 3 million that was authorized. So that's what's there today. Um, the assessed value is, is around $50 million. Um, and that is estimated to be well less than half of what we're going to do in Phase Two. So in Phase Two, we're anticipating that although we have $100 million down here, both buildings are going to far exceed $100 million investment. Uh, one building being 800,000 square feet, and the next one being somewhere north of 500,000 square feet. Um, and, and these are going to be straight warehouse facilities with some office attached to them, but it's probably barely warehouse facilities falling into the I D codes. Um, but what, you know, our original goal, as I said before, was to have this constructed by the end of this calendar year. That would have meant your tax revenue, when you went to do your tax certification in, in January for new growth, you would have picked up this building. Obviously, through COVID, that got pushed back, we were still hoping to get the shell out. You probably would have got half of that value. Obviously, we're not there right now. Uh, we are still hoping to move the land sale forward by the end of this calendar year. That will change your land tables for industrial zone, which will beef up your industrial value in the town, and then go to construction over the winter with the goal of getting this facility up and running late summer. Um, so with that, in Phase Two, uh, we have two projects. Uh, one is the 805,000 square feet, that again, has received the approvals that it has. And, uh, and we also have an agreement with the potential developer to build at least 550,000 square feet adjacent to the 800,000 square feet. I'll show you where that is in a minute. Um, as a result of doing this, the landowner has agreed, or is willing to, reduce down the traffic impact, reduce down the size of this whole site from the pre-authorized 3 billion square feet down to about 2.2 billion square feet in, in full development of the site. Um, so that would reduce that 37,000, uh, number, 30, 37,000 trips that were projected with, back in 1983, with this being more of an office development, down to a little under 6,000 trips when it's all said and done. Let me go to the next slide, please. Again, this slide is in the report. So this slide, um, you know, in the columns going across, if I can talk about those. The first column, and I'm just going to deal with the weekly daily. The first column is the existing park has about 3,000 trips. Now, again, that's a mix of uses. Those uses are more intensive from a vehicle trip going back and forth than we're proposing. So that has 3,000 trips under construction. It's estimated to be another 422 trips, so you're about 30, 300 and, uh, 3,450 trips will be completed, which is technically in Phase One, including Farmacan. The 800,000 square foot facility is estimated to have 1,300 trips. And the, uh, up to 700,000 square foot would have 1,100 trips to it per day. Uh, up to, again, there's the 5,900 trips that I had in the previous slide. Now, again, this is at Mass Highway. Mass Highway is reviewing all this data, they'll go through their analysis, we give them the justification for this. Vanessa Associates is one of the most reputable traffic engineers in the state, and Mass DOT will be working with them to finalize these numbers. So that's where you're going to get, if somebody's asking, well, who's going to peer review it? It's Mass DOT is peer reviewing this, because they have to approve it, so they have to accept the numbers that are in there. Again, that 5,900 trips is significantly less than when John bought the property back in 19, uh, back in 1998, uh, which had 36,000 trips. He reduced it down to 17,000 trips. And now with this end user, and I have to emphasize, with this user, we're able to do this. If I don't have this user, then we have to go back to whatever the market's going to bear. But right now, we have a tenant that wants to build here, spent a lot of money going through design, anticipated already being under construction, and is still hanging on right now. But provided he stays on, those are the numbers we're looking at. Next slide, please. So, um, just another little bit of history, as I've talked a little bit about the intersection improvements at Route 16 and the Hopkinbrook Park. Uh, back when Travis's predecessor here was here, Mr. Ritter, um, we had talked about, and he had proposed, uh, this was tied into the Economic Development Committee at one point, is moving forward with a, a grant from the state, a public works grant, um, for the Mass Works Grant, to come in and pay for the signal itself. Um, we missed that cycle. And, uh, obviously, when, when Jeff left and when Travis came in and you guys and COVID hit and everything, there's a lot of stuff going on. At that point, the developer that is looking to buy says, you know what? I can't wait, I'll pay for it myself. Because I have end users, a couple end users that want to develop this property, I'll pay for the traffic signal myself, that's part of my off-site mitigation, rather than that being what's normally done as a public-private partnership for these types of things, where municipalities and the state will kick in for off-site improvements. So he agreed to do that. I'm going to come back to that in a second, and, and not to take that off the table, but I want to give you some options from what I heard earlier about your rail trail and about some other sidewalks in town. Next slide, please. So, I'm sorry, before we go to the next slide, go back one, thank you. Uh, so what you have here is that, um, this would be a new traffic signal coming out. Uh, coming out of the park, there would be a designated left-hand turn lane and a designated right-hand turn lane. Uh, as you're heading east, um, the road would start to divide and you could go straight or take a right into the park. Um, over on the left side, you see a straight through and a right curve coming in there. And then heading west is that it would have three lanes. The center lane is for left-hand turns coming into the park. The right lane is for straight through, heading to Milford, heading to 495. And obviously, the bottom lane is for traffic that's heading east. So that would create that pause, because as we all know right now, even though that road's posted at 40 miles an hour, we've all seen it, many cars are going 50-plus on there too. This will actually help with some traffic calming along, along Route 16. Next slide, please. So you saw this slide earlier in the report, and, um, and, and I'll talk about the company at the end of the presentation, the developer that's buying this. But one of the things this developer agreed to do, um, as part of this project and how they manage their logistics fleets of, of trucks coming out, is that they agreed and wanted written into the site plan review. Um, and, and I, and I will say this, uh, I know it's been reported on the Economic Development Committee that the Planning Board didn't do a peer review. They did do a traffic peer review, they had the traffic consultant there at several meetings. I'm not sure if that was a meeting you were there or not, but they did have a traffic review committee there. And the Planning Board spent a lot of time discussing traffic. And what the developer agreed to do is just, listen, I am not going to use South Street. I'm going to restrict my trucks from using South Street. So for all the social media and for people that jumped on the last Economic Development Committee meeting, it says, this park is going to create more traffic on South Street? It's not going to happen, it's written into the decision, it's not going to happen. What you're going to have here is, is the trucks leave, whether the 800,000 or the smaller building, is the green is they're going to be heading west from the site, down Route 16, less than probably a mile on Holliston roads, and then either going, uh, north, um... going, um, north, um, you know, which is where the blue shows and coming out of Route Eight Five, or through the red and then coming out of Route Eighty-Nine. That's the traffic route that the trucks are going to take for this. And, and again, you know, the chairman of the planning board and they did a lot of work on this. So anyone that says they didn't, they did. That was included in that analysis. Next slide please. So, uh, the first three items that's in here, this is the additional traffic mitigation offered in this, again, you know, I understand, having been in Travis's role before, I understand what traffic is. That's what you guys get a lot of your calls about. So as part of the decision is that, you know, item number twenty, the traffic signals will be installed and completed prior to issuance of an occupancy permit. That was the commitment that the developer made, says, listen, I can't wait for a grant. We want to get this thing moving fast. I'm going to pay for it and I'm not going to open the facility until I get the traffic signal installed. Item number twenty-four is that we, the developer will put together a traffic management plan that excludes the uses of South Street. Not only is that written into the decision, the developer also offered to do additional traffic calming measures on South Street if that was something the Board of Selectment, or, and actually, he didn't use the Board of Selectment, if that's something the town wanted. What could those be? So one scenario is that when you have the rail trail going through South Street, you've probably seen this, not a speed hump, I mean, a speed bump, but a speed hump. Speed hump, you know, is about eight feet wide and it goes up, raised up about, you know, anywhere from four to six inches and then drops back down. It's fine if you're going under twenty miles an hour. You hit one of those going over twenty miles an hour, you're going to notice it real quick. It's going to wake you up and you're not going to do it again. He even offered that if, if it could be done, he would pay for it because this was such a big concern the planning board have, that he would even be willing to do some type of vertical, you know, banner or structure that could overhang there that would preclude trucks coming down there if it was legally permissible. He'd be willing to fund that as well again, showing the, the effort that they were putting in there because we heard during that process what the concern was with South Street. And we didn't want to be part of that because we weren't going to use it. Uh, item number twenty-six, um, you know, donating for rectangular rapid flash beacons for other pedestrian car, uh, crosswalks throughout the, uh, the rail trail. Again, agreed to fund those too because I guess the town was having some money coming up with funding those flashers and they said, I'll pay for it. You know, I want to be a good neighbor here with the project. And the last bullet is, comes out of the report that you have in front of you that came out last week, um, that went to Mass DOT and this is from Vanessa Associates. And, and, and I put this in here because it's important to recognize that, as you all know, is that on public roadways, you really can't restrict traffic as a governmental body unless you're able to get the vehicle weight exclusions and multiple towns agree to that and so on and so forth. But again, this developer has agreed to that as part of his special permit, which again, is written in item number twenty-four, uh, and is willing to do that for both buildings. And, uh, I just wanted to, to bring that to your attention again, that, you know, not only are we saying we're going to do these things, we're actually putting them in, making sure they're in the decision because we want to be held accountable for what we've agreed to do. Next slide please. So let's talk a little bit about the developer. It's CRG, Integrated Real Estate Solutions. They are a division of Clayco. So CRG is the private real estate firm that acquires and develops land, um, under the Clayco Company. They've developed more than eighty-five hundred acres, a hundred and ninety-seven million square feet, exceeding assets at twelve billion dollars. So that's just what the division is. That's who is buying the land and is going to develop it. Um, when we look at Clayco, Clayco is a parent company, is a privately held company. It's a full-service real estate architectural engineer, design, build firm in North America. In two thousand nineteen, they did three point two billion dollars worth of business revenue. They have twenty-four hundred employees around the country. And, you know, it says they're one of the largest privately owned real estate firms in the country. The, the last slide really talks about the fact that they specialize in doing these large-scale projects. They do not have a presence in Massachusetts. This is the first project, again, we were hoping to have this up and running this year. We currently are working with them on three other sites in the state that we have access to. One for a million square foot building, one for six hundred thousand square foot, another one for five hundred thousand square foot, uh, building. These, um, they have, they deal with the Fortune One Hundred, Fortune Five Hundred companies in all the other states and their, their clients are coming to them and says, listen, we've got to get into Massachusetts. We need places up here in New England. And their clients can go on the website. It ranges from Home Depot and Lowe's to Best Buy, to Target. Those are the types of companies that they have in their portfolio that again, you'll see if you go onto those links that are out there. And again, they're building this building on their own because that's how they do it is they build it and then once they're under construction, they know three or four of these companies, which are already chasing them down, will sign up. But that's just how their business model is, is they build and then they sign up. And, and they build them in a way that, you know, if one company decides that, um, they're, for whatever reason, they're not going to be in New England anymore, they know that they built the building in a way that the next company will step up and take over that space. And that's their business model, which again, in three point two billion in revenue in two thousand nineteen, they, they clearly, um, you know, have an idea of what they're doing. So, you know, I wanted to end with this slide is to kind of, you know, share with you where we're at at this particular point. And I know, you know, with Jeff leaving, with Travis coming in, with COVID, with the, you know, and everything going on, we haven't had the, the opportunity to have these conversations that normally you would have with a property that's going to generate a million dollars in tax revenue into the town. And, and I thank you for allowing me to come here tonight and present this and I'm here to answer any questions, Jeff.
Thank you. Maybe you can take a few seconds to grab your air and how that, how that goes. I think what we'll do is, uh, members of our committee have a couple of questions.
Yes.
And I'm sure some residents do as well. We'll try to keep the resident inquiries within, within a certain amount of time, efficient to allow the questions to come in and see if you can help bring some clarity and answers to those. Ben, if you would like to start off with some of the questions that I have.
Sure.
Relative to this project, then we'll go to Ms. Heinz.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, so a couple of questions. Um, so I just want to understand and pardon my name tag if that's what's happening here. Um, but I, the permitting from MIPA, did it, it sounded like, did I read it correctly to indicate that it permitted a certain number of cars or was just a permit sort of expected a certain number of cars?
So the MIPA permit, I have them all right here, going back to nineteen ninety-three. Um, the MIPA permit originally for the one for the thirty-seven thousand cars.
Yes.
Uh, that was designed more as just an office use. An office use is one of the most intensive uses for vehicle trips that are around there.
Right.
So it was designed for three million square feet with the number of sewage and, and water and parking space. I think it had nine thousand, six hundred parking spaces. So you were, we were, we are allowed, uh, up until we changed it in two thousand and three to build that. In two thousand and three, we changed it to build something smaller.
Right.
Which is what the two thousand ninety-three, uh, two thousand and three permit is. Now what we have done is we have gone to MIPA and requested to even do it smaller. MIPA normally said, hey, if you're doing something smaller, we don't care. But now they want us to come back and file a notice of project change, which is what we are doing right now. It has two components in it. It was in the MIPA letter that came out. One is this traffic report. So that's part one of it's done. The second has to do with, um, the water usage for the site. I think, um, the number was well over a hundred thousand gallons and now we're somewhere around fifteen thousand gallons. But once you exceed ten thousand gallons with one user, you have to then get a special beep, uh, special D E P permit. It's an engineering permit and that's what we're, um, putting as part of the notice of project change. What MIPA also said is that when we had the thirty-six thousand cars, it then went down to seventeen thousand cars, um, those were a lot of cars and it was predominantly more cars than trucks. But those cars would, you know, the gravity model, they'd come out and they'd go in every direction because everybody worked in every direction around here. So that traffic distribution model is different than what we have today. The two buildings that we're proposing to do, which are warehousing type buildings, have to get to four ninety-five. They're only taking a left. That's where they're going. These are not, and I want to make it clear here, this is not what you see down in Milford without mentioning that company by name with the little B. We are not doing that. That's not on the table. That's not what this is. That's, that's a different type of use than what this is. This is a regional facility that will serve the Northeast. This doesn't do local deliveries. What it is, is these projects come in, and then I'm going to use, they come in with a tractor trailer full of tie called twenty pallets. The twenty pallets come in, the twenty pallets get unloaded. There's twenty trucks sitting in the bays. One pallet goes in each one of those trucks. And then the next product that comes in, one pallet of that goes into those trucks. And then that truck will then go to its, I'm going to pick Best Buy. I don't have tie. I guess Best Buy does have a little bit of tie to that. And they'll take it to, you know, Nashville, New Hampshire, or wherever it may be, and no one's going to be doing that type of, of activity. We live in a consumer society today. We all see we're buying everything online and where it needs to be sent to. That's what this is going to end up being. Does that answer your question with MIPA?
Um, somewhat, yes. I mean, I was just basically trying to understand the nature of the MIPA permit that it actually has sort of based. It is, the, the, the numbers are, um, are specific to, to the permit.
That's right. You can't exceed the MIPA permit. So you can build up to the MIPA permit. We're doing a change to a smaller thing and they want us to do this re-analysis.
Okay.
Only those two items.
So, and then, um, a couple of other questions here. So what am I, like, so what am I biggest concerned about this, about this project is basically, it's sort of, sort of the unintended consequences.
Mm-hmm.
Is just making sure, you know, we're talking about, you know, truck traffic per se, but are we looking at, you know, um, cars see a traffic light and then start spilling into other parts of the community? And that's something that concerns me is just to try to understand sort of the, the deeper ramifications. But one of the things that you had said, um, and that sort of struck me too, is when you're talking about South Street is, is, you know, we've, we've certainly heard about some, some of the stuff that we heard about with Lowland Street when we had our forum a couple of months ago.
Yep.
Is that it's often a third party that was coming in and driving through. So it was much more difficult they were, that, that was being suggested to us to restrict.
Yes.
So, you know, part of it is, is we're talking about mitigation efforts to sort of, you know, is there physical barriers or something like that that we could put on South Street? But part of what I'm asking is that, is there, like, you know, is, is there anything in particular from the user's perspective that they can do to enforce anything or, or is it because particularly if a third party is coming through and is just basically using a GPS and ignoring, you know, any restrictions and just going down South Street, which is not necessarily built to handle the traffic?
Yep.
So I guess what I'm asking you is, a third party is going to be, you know, bringing in things and ignoring some of the potential mitigation efforts, um, that the, the user could be doing? Or is it something that basically the end user is kind of like controlling the entire supply chain here?
So Ben, the question you just asked is a question I asked a couple of years ago. It's a question the planning board asked. If I could go back, uh, two slides to the one with the red, yellow and the green? Okay. I hear you.
Yeah, man.
Okay. Um, so, um, I think it's slide, uh, oh, I'm sorry, go to slide fourteen real quick. Uh, it kind of shows, uh, the back up rate? Back rate. All right, let me stay right there for now. Okay. So this is what I was trying to get to right here. Is that, um, I used the tide example because that's the business they, they're in. Is that it's from manufacturer to Northeast Distribution Facility.
Sure.
Two stores.
That's it.
Is so that when, the logistics model is these guys can only, the truck drivers, and I know this from the rail business that I'm in too, is truck drivers only have so many hours per day they can drive a truck. That recently changed when they went to electronic, um, monitoring. So now each truck has a GPS unit that monitors the movement of the truck and you have your window to drive from. These truck drivers from the tie facility to here and back is a very regulated process. They have certain routes that they can use and it's monitored down to the second, not to the second, but to the minute. Because they have to not only drop their load off and get back, you know, in another state before their time clock ends, or they're pulling off the side of the road, waiting eight hours and then starting a whole other portion of a day because they can't do it. So it's very regulated when you're dealing with these sized facilities that's over five hundred thousand square feet, eight hundred thousand square feet. It's a regulate, it's like, it's a science. It's just like the ants are coming in, the ants are going out. I mean, it's, it's very controlled from that perspective. So yes, when they committed to this, they know they can control that. This isn't somebody that's just got a box truck and doing sixteen different deliveries and that's, that's not what this is. That's not the model.
Okay. Um, uh, two other questions. Um, so the, the, um, the signal development that you're talking about, um, would it include the roadway upgrades as well? Is that, is that the, the expectation, the plans to, to build those extra lanes and to sort of figure that out?
Yes.
Um, and there's going to be consideration as a cemetery there?
Yes.
So we're making sure that we're sensitive to thinking about considering that particular, and then there's also, you know, a body of water as well. So there's a lot of environmental and historical sensitivity that needs to take place for any development that's taking, that's happening.
Yes. So, uh, that was discussed with Mass DOT this past spring. Uh, we had plans, we had some preliminary layout. This was what we shared with the planning boards. They had alternative designs that were in there. You, not only do you have the cemetery, which has an historic component to it, is also just in front of the cemetery and they're kind of like leaning, but there's also a set of granite stairs that connect to it. So we're also incorporating the stairs as part of our no-touch area that we don't want to touch those either. So that additional lane is fitting in there in that, in the right of ways that currently exist, uh, on the east side of the intersection. To the west, where you start to go over the Charles River, is you also have wetlands impacts in there. Mass DOT's preference would be, let's blow it out to three lanes. However, because the wetlands are there, then they, then you actually go to them and they give you a waiver because of the, the environmental concern right there. And that's not a sensitive area. Coming east, you don't necessarily need the three lanes. You need the three lanes to take a left-hand turn into the park as you're heading west. So just west of, sorry, just east of the, um, the cemetery is where you need to fit that in and it can fit there. The other side can be a little bit narrow, but yes, that has all been looked at and to make sure we don't have any impacts to that. I'm, I'm glad you brought that up too because, um, now again, I don't, what I'm going to say right now, I don't know if the timing will work out, um, but if I was in Travis's shoes and your shoes, is that the state does give these Mass Work Grants out for doing intersection improvements like this to improve commerce and, and everything. Is that we're committed to funding that intersection improvement. But if you happen to get the grant for that, we would help fund other things in, in, you know, in the same value, so to speak. So where I heard some discussion early in the hallway about sidewalks or some additional stuff on rail trails or some additional speed pumps that need to be done, we're committed to making the investment we're doing for the traffic signal. If you through your government work can get something that's delivered on time and get the grant, which is possible because now the project's been delayed until next year, is that that's something that Travis and I should talk about after, you know, with your approval, to see if there's a way of, you know, in essence, freeing up our money for you to use on something else. We're already committing to X dollars. If that X dollars gets supplemented with state dollars, we're still going to put the same dollars into whatever you choose to, that's going to enhance traffic.
I'm good.
Thank you. Tina?
So, um, Mike or my call?
Either way.
Okay. So Mike, we're here primarily as select board to hear about the traffic impact. So I'm going to focus, I mean, there's, you said a lot, um, and so I, I do have a lot of questions in general. I know I can go to the planning board and the Z B A meetings and hearings to get information that way. So I'm going to set that aside and just focus on the traffic.
I'm more than happy to answer those too.
Sure, right. Uh, for the sake of time, uh, I'm going to speak to you, but also to the camera behind you because I know we have a lot of people listening. Um, so I'm just going to go through a set of about seven assumptions that are made in this study that I, I sort of take issue with. I spent a good deal of time going through them and I just want to run through them as quickly as I can. The traffic impact assessment is built on a promise, premise, excuse me, that eight hundred thousand and seven hundred thousand square feet is the final build out of Hockenbrook. and seven-hundred-thousand square feet is the final buildout of Hopping Brook Park. That's been approved by MIPA. Um, while they're less than approved in eight, in nineteen eighty-two, um, the project has not yet received final approval from MIPA. Do you have a, a change, a project notification change into MIPA?
The two thousand and three report is a final MIPA certificate. Now we're looking to reduce that down to a smaller number. So we do not have a final notice of project change submitted or approved, but that's part of the agreement that we're working towards, if we can get this project approved.
Okay. Have you made any submission at all? I know you're-
The traffic study was the first element of that. The traffic study is one of the two elements that go into the notice of project change. The second element was what I mentioned earlier about the ten thousand or fifteen-thousand gallons of water, because it's over ten thousand for one site.
Then I really want to drill down on the traffic impact, the transportation impact assessment, because again, I think there's some study assumptions that are, are, are not truly reflective of what I can, as concerns of for the board, and perhaps what the town has experienced. The study estimates one percent per year in future growth of traffic. Mass DOT data from a location ID just to the east, it's four zero two six, it's Washington in summer, actually shows over the past few years, um, an average growth of one point two seven five percent. So I think they're under, underestimating traffic growth in our region based on past couple of years of data from DOT. Um, the study considers future development within an area that did not include projects on the other side of Holliston's historic downtown. And my position on the select board, and let me just read to you real quickly, um, one of the master plan for nineteen ninety-eight's primary goals, and this is something that's going to decide decisions before me, is to manage residential, commercial, industrial, and recreational development in a way that carefully balances economic needs with the need to protect the small-town historic character of Holliston. And so, um, your study, your transportation impact assessment, did not consider development in other industrial parks that do have an impact. And we'll come back to what you had to say about, um, trucks turning right out of the development, um, in a minute. The study uses an ITE usage code of one fifty, which indicates that the project will be a warehouse base. You have not disclosed the end user. Are you able to do that tonight?
Well, as I said, the, the end, the, the developer has several end users, all would fall within that category, that if we're permitting it to the one fifty ITE code, that's what we're going to build, because that's what the permit allows for it to happen. It's got it. You can't do a bait and switch. You can't say, oh, I'm going to do this, and then all of a sudden you put office in there. No, if you're building, if you're, if your traffic analysis is built off of that code, then that code is the one that has to be built. Otherwise, you're going to come back and redo your traffic analysis again and go back to MIPA again. So there's a high level of confidence that the developer knows that that's the type of use that they're going to build, because they build them around the country and they have people that are waiting to get here. So they're very confident that's what it's going to be. And again, just for your protection, if I, I would be as the same thing if I was in your shoes, what if they don't? Go back to the drawing board. If it's not a one fifty IT, you go back to the drawing board, you have to redo it.
So I think the traffic study should include an IT code of one fifty-five, which is, uh-
But we're not doing that though. So why would we do a traffic study if we're not doing that?
Well, simply because we don't have from you disclose who the end user is.
But why would I develop, do a traffic study for something I'm never going to build? I'm, I'm doing a traffic study for what we're going to build.
Well, putting the, the interest of the town first, I, that's what I would ask, is that we, we look at an ITE code of one fifty-five, an e-commerce fulfillment center, um, as the, the end user for the site. That, I think, puts the town's best interests first. If it backs down to a one fifty, I suppose that's only for the better, but, um-
But as, as I did say, with, you know, all due respect, is we are not building that type of facility down that you see in Milford. We're not building a fulfillment center. We're not doing that. If I was doing that, we would, we would design that. But I can't build that if it's not in the permit. So then, so I mean, it, it's, it's a black and white issue. You're either building a one fifty-five, or you're not. We're saying we're not. We're permitting it for one fifty. That's what we're going to build, to have that type of, of code in there. And, and, and again, the developer's willing to invest with the two projects well north of a hundred billion dollars. They know what they're doing, and they wouldn't try to get a different type of code in there knowing what their users are. So I'm confident that that's what's going to be there, and, you know, that's where Mass DOT is going to review this, and when Mass DOT issues its section sixty-one permit, it will say it's for this code, not for sixteen others, it's for this one. So I hear you, but I'm also trying to describe what we're actually committed to.
So you're saying that the MIPA permit, once the notice of project change, assuming is the notice of project change is approved, will be limited to development of the site to an ITE code of one fifty?
What I'm saying, yes. What I'm saying is when the, and that'll come out of the section sixty-one finding, is the traffic report you have here is based upon one fifty. That's what, and that has that, uh, traffic analysis of the fourteen hundred cars, I believe it is, slides down. Um, that's for an eight-hundred-thousand-square-foot building. That's the max it can be.
You're saying the developer is limited?
The developer is limiting by doing this piece, that that's the code they're going to use, correct?
Okay. Um, the drawings for the proposed signal at Hopping Brook and Washington Street place the new paved roadway within ten feet of an existing, the existing historic south or Hopping River Cemetery. Uh, it's not identified on, on the plan, so what you've submitted to MIPA does not have the cemetery identified. If what we have from, but Vaness, is that the name of the, the company that did the, uh, impact assessments, did not identify on the drawings of the proposed intersection, the cemetery, is what I reviewed.
Yeah, that may be true, it's not on the drawn, but I will tell you, it was discussed in Mass DOT, they know it's a cemetery that's there, they know the historic nature of it. When this goes into the, this is conceptual, just by the way, this isn't the final plan. This is the lane layout, the conceptual, this is tied into survey. When it goes to twenty-five percent and then to fifty percent design, that's when all the abutting stuff and the trees get added to this, and that, um, that rock wall, the rock steps that are had in there, the granite steps, those will be added in there. So as this progresses, it'll have that level of detail you just mentioned.
But what's been submitted to MIPA does not.
Uh, this was submitted to Mass DOT. Mass DOT is aware of that, yes.
Uh, the average level of service of our downtown intersections is currently an E-grade, um, reflecting the overall high volume of vehicles on single-lane roads. Um, I'm going to still continue with the assumption that, that this is an e-commerce fulfillment center, which increases the amount of freight traffic. Uh, freight traffic is slowed to start at red lights, limits the numbers of vehicles that go through an intersection, so looking for the best interest of the town first. My concern is that freight traffic turning right out of the industrial park is only going to worsen the level of service at our downtown intersections. I see that from your study, from the assessment, that the level of service improves at Hopping Brook and Washington. Um, that assumption does not then look at, at the level of service for the downtown, um, lights, which again, is my feeling at this point in time, that they're going to worsen as more freight traffic, uh, is added to our streets. Um, the projections, your traffic projections show trucks only turning left out of the park. Um, I don't believe there's a way to guarantee that that will be a hundred percent the case. I don't believe that six months to a year, two years to three years, that that protection will be there for the town to, to really see that projection be the reality. Um, that's, that's my assumption, my belief going in, but it's certainly the assumption that your, um, impact assessment made.
And just for clarification, again, that's only on these two new buildings that are being built. We can't control what's in the park today.
Understood.
But we can control what the developer's building, because the developer's committed to that.
I want to just confirm, um, that the future end user of five-five-five Hopping Brook will not be able to occupy or operate out of the site without a single signal, excuse me, at Hopping Brook and Washington. Can you confirm that to be the case? You had it up on-
It's in the site plan review, I think it was item twenty-two or twenty-four.
Okay.
It's written in the decision.
Okay.
And that's on occupancy permit. So yes, it can occupy until that signal's been installed.
All right. So my, my last question was to ask again to have you disclose the end user for five-five-five Hopping Brook, and it, you clearly said, uh, have not done that. I'm going to ask why we, we are not getting that information.
Well, I just mentioned that before, is that CRG Integrated Real Estate Solutions is a billion-dollar company. They do business with all Fortune one hundred and five hundred companies. I gave examples from Lowe's to Home Depot to Best Buy to Target. These are the companies that they're looking to come in here, plus, you know, their, their sister companies, so to speak. CRG builds the building, they own, they occupy, and they rent out on long-term leases to these companies. CRG invests in owning the building. They go out and build them. Once they build them and they actually, uh, have them up and running, then they negotiate a lease deal. Think about this, is, as I mentioned, we were hoping to have this building completed by this November, um, but then COVID hit. You can't go to one of these Fortune five hundred companies and negotiate a deal, and then all of a sudden get delay after delay after delay. You have to know when are you breaking ground? Once they know when they're breaking ground, soon as they get all the permits in place, then that's when they go out and they start marketing, uh, and it's not even where they start marketing, it's just that they have a list of three, four, or five companies, names like I've mentioned, counterparts like I've mentioned, to come into the site. I will tell you this, because I've talked to the, to the developer, they have assured me that this is not going to be an Amazon facility. It'll be anything but an Amazon facility. They've made that clear when this whole project started, and that's why we can categorically say it will not be a fulfillment center, which is why we're not using the code one fifty-five. This isn't the appropriate place for a, a fulfillment center. Could be in one of those other properties in other towns that I've mentioned, but not here. This is a regional distribution facility that falls under code one fifty.
The last question, John. Walmart does e-commerce.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Walmart has e-commerce fulfillment centers.
Yes, they do.
If Walmart, as you've mentioned, one of the possible Fortune one hundred companies that may be interested in the site, were to be the end user, the tenant for the site, they would not operate it as a-
It's a good question, um, and I, I asked that one a while back too, and it falls into the logistic models. And a five hundred and eight hundred thousand square foot facility is not a, is not a, a fulfillment center size. It's too big. Fulfillment center buildings is where Amazon wants to put these one hundred thousand square foot facilities, you know, every fifteen, twenty, twenty-five miles, that they can then have the van zip out to. And that's where you have those, they're more spread out. The, the Walmart does their e-commerce from Walmart stores. I mean, that's where a lot of, just like Stop &amp; Shop. You know, Stop &amp; Shop for a long time was pulling up, out there fulfillment from Stop &amp; Shop, from Shaws. They would go out from their individual stores, because they've got all the supplies in there, and they're doing a, a grocery list of everybody, and they're pulling it from the grocery shelves. They're not going to a warehouse and looking at a big pallet of tie and pulling a gallon off of there, they're doing it at the local level. So I had asked the same question too, and that was the response that I had.
All right. John, one more?
You can add it as many as you want.
Your, uh, transportation impact assessment does not classify the size of the vehicle, of the truck. You mentioned, it mentions truck, but it does not give the, the classification, and so they go all the way up to, I think it's a fifteen on the Federal Highway Administration's truck classification, um, scale. There's no mention of the size of the truck. I, I speak for myself, but also for the residents who are on the call, this is a very critical point. Why was that omitted from the transportation?
I don't think it's omitted. I wouldn't look at it as omitting, is that when they advance their design to twenty-five, fifty, hundred percent, then they'll be going to be putting their turning radius in there for WB fifty-three, I think it is, which is the tractor-trailer with the, with the, you know, dual wheels on the back. Um, these are box trucks. These are, no, I'm sorry, wrong word. They're not backstrucks, they're tractor-trailers. The ones you see on the highways, the fifty-three-foot box trailer being followed by a cab, that's the truck. That's why it's there, that's what they're looking at. That's, it's, it's standard.
Okay.
It's there.
Thank you. I'm on that tone. Thanks.
Thanks. Um, Mike, you, uh, you've been around a while, doing this kind of work in different areas across the state, is that right?
Yes, I am.
Um, is this project going according to plan?
Again, as I said before, COVID kind of just threw this thing for a monkey wrench, uh, and, um, the reaction that, uh, we, we got from, um, Medway, and then some additional action that happened when we took this to the Economic Development Committee, and some of the comments that were made, on things that, like, people that were knowledgeable and had, had knowledge of this, uh, no, that has not gone to what the state regulations call for and the process. So no, there's been, there's been some bumps, I guess.
Um, early on, I understand your client wanted us to get a, a variance on the height of these buildings. Is that still in place?
The variance was granted by the ZBA, it was unanimously voted by the ZBA. Uh, the residents in Medway, I think there were twelve residents, have appealed that, that's tied up in the court process.
How does that affect the long-term plan of this project and your, and the sale, if you will, to the developer?
Um, it has an impact, um, and when that appeal was done the beginning of the summer, and I think this is important, um, for you all to understand, is that I personally went to, uh, try to contact every resident that abutted the property, there were twelve abutters that were there, and also went to the Medway, uh, planning board, uh, talked to their chairman, uh, and also talked to their planner and their economic development professional that's down there, and reached out to their town manager, trying to describe what this project was and what was happening. Um, the Medway staff was great, we had conversations, and, um, and they were also going to share my name with the twelve residents that are out there. Uh, it took, um, pretty much about three months before we finally heard back from the residents, and that's even after I walked around the neighborhood. So that's, it has an impact, uh, on the project absolutely.
There's a contingency.
Uh, we're hoping to, um, we're hoping that it can be resolved.
And it resolves only to the extent that it becomes sixty feet? Can the project go forward at forty feet?
Uh, the project cannot go forward at straight forty feet, and the reason for that is that when you have, as a ground, when you have your building, is that in Massachusetts we have snow and, and rain, and there has to be some type of a pitch. So, you know, if it's, and, and so what happens is, depending upon how the, the zoning regulation is written, is it from the peak, or is it from the sidewalk? And that's a, that's a piece that our attorneys have been working with, the town's attorney on, is to how that is. Uh, but we, we do, we don't need sixty feet, like most towns have, and I think our variance we requested was fifty-two, so that when you take down the height issue here, you drop that. And that's why, again, and I recognize there's been a lot of issues going on with COVID, and Travis coming on, and, and Jeff leaving his, and we went to the Economic Development Committee, what we actually asked them to do would be to sponsor a zoning article at town meeting to allow Holliston, in your industrial parks, to have the same height allowance as abutting towns or most towns in Massachusetts, to the sixty feet. If you granted that, not you, but if the, the town meeting approved that with the two-thirds vote, this variance that twelve people in, in Medway are holding up goes away, because it's allowed by right. But they're able to appeal it because we went for a variance to get something higher.
Um, you've answered the next question I had, which was, truck, the, the traffic analysis that we received didn't really disclose what type of vehicle it was, and I think that's a really meaningful omission, because a car envisioned in nineteen eighty-two, probably, you know, it's something coming or going from a business, and a TV is different than an eighteen-wheeler. The impact it has on the roadway, the infrastructure are dramatically different. Um, can you go back, you don't have to decide, but if you have recollection, Mike, how many of these trac, tractor-trailers are expected to be coming and going each day under the one point five million square foot buildouts?
So actually, in our report, we, we break it up between car and truck. And so, and, and again, a truck we're defining as a tractor-trailer you see on the highway. Uh, back in nineteen eighty-three, I, I can't tell you how-
John, sorry, but under your model-
Yes.
What's the one point five, the total, that's the both facilities, the eight hundred and the seven hundred square foot facility? How many new vehicles are added? And I'm going to presume they're all tractor-trailers?
No.
They're not?
They're not. No. Um, so in the report itself, and it is written in here, and I'm just trying to find, it identifies how many tractor trailers versus how many cars is written in each one of these tables. And it's in the turning movements that they have. So up here, um, for everybody to see, in the top left here, if it's in parentheses, it's a truck. If it's not in parentheses, it's a car. So what's the number-
How would I, how would I know that?
Oh, I don't know if that's-
Mike, you're looking at page six is where you want to be?
Uh, I can be page six, page-
Project Generation summary, summary vehicle trips, trucks, cars, broken out.
Yeah. So all these pages have in the legend, they break out the car and the truck.
So what you got, truck is a what?
A truck is a tractor trailer.
No, I'm sorry, in the legend.
Oh, uh, it's in parentheses.
Yeah.
And the car is without parentheses. So like when you look at here, uh, project-generated peak hour traffic volumes, uh, let's see, leaving the site in the morning at the peak hour was four trucks. Leaving the site at the end of the day in the PM was 17 trucks. So it's written right on there. And so if these numbers here in parentheses is the numbers that would be leaving at that point.
So that's it for the day?
No, that's-
No, no, the peak hour. So that's for the hour.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for the day, I'll split all my glasses here.
I got 362 for trucks, 948 for cars in a day.
That's probably right, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at the, uh, report right here.
Yeah. I mean, yeah. I mean, again, that's spread over 24 hours, and this is-
On the next slide.
Yeah. So this is the peak. So the, the largest hour of leaving the site is 17 trucks.
Will this facility-
Taking a left.
Will this facility be a 24/7 operation?
Um, everything in Holliston, in the Hopkin Brook Industrial Park is a 24/7 facility. Doesn't mean it's operating at 100% uh, occupancy at that point. It just means that when you have, and I'm going to go back to my Tide. If my Tide is made in, in Indiana and the truck's going to arrive here at 11 a, 11 PM, it's going to arrive at 11 PM. That's what's going to arrive. And then the guy's going to, you know, then take off. So yes, it is good. All develop, I'm sorry, all development in the site is a 24-hour seven, uh, into it, yes. Um, but it's, if I could just ruin that one thing, it's not at the same occupancy and same employee level as you do have in the daytime hours.
Right. I've got one more comment to make, and then we'll see if some folks on the Zoom want to join us. Um, I have to sit here as the chair and have to let you know, if you could let your, your boss know, not happy. Not happy that we had to go through a series of, um, legal adjustments a couple of weeks ago regarding the clearing of the trees of the 555 Hopkin Brook. Um, I, I understood Mr. Della Friscoli, he's been in town for quite a while. You certainly have a lot of experience. Our town administrator's trying to work with you and your attorneys. Didn't seem to work too well, and we ended up having to take legal action, two steps actually, and I think you know that, the cease and desist, and then the injunction, to get you to stop. Why did it take that amount of town effort, uh, to get your attention to come to us and work with us?
So, uh, it's a very good question, and, uh, again, we take full responsibility for any action that we did. Um, we have lawyers on staff, and our lawyers disagreed with town lawyers in the thing. And our lawyers told us that we had the right to take down the trees in the site. It had already been cleared through MIPA. There was, there was no disturbance that was done to the underground, um, configuration of the site. We weren't removing stops. We were just dropping trees down. Um, so again, it turned into a legal discussion, um, and, um, through that evolution, um, we did stop. Uh, we did pull all the equipment out of there, and we, you know, with your attorneys reached a settlement on there. But, you know, again, I, I, I understand your frustration. We've had a lot of frustration on this project, too, um, particularly when we had to pay residents in Medway through actions that members on the planning board required us to pay more money to them as cash payments, which never happens in the state. So we, there was a lot of tension that was going on, and, you know, Travis and I have had a good relationship, tried to work these things out. I think we're at a solid point right now where we want to, you know, mend fences and move ahead. And, um-
Here's my take.
Yep.
And I, I'm just going to call it straight as I see it. Uh, I don't agree. I think what you're doing is you're asking for forgiveness. And my only message to you, Mr. Della Friscoli, is as this project goes forward, play by the rules. The rules are pretty straightforward. You have to work with planning board. You have to work with the state. You have to work with us. You know that. He knows that. This is a huge project. Our community's never seen anything like this. We've got dozens of people who want more information tonight because they don't trust you. They don't trust the process and what's going on. That's meaningful. That's really important. These are people who have significant amounts tied up in their properties, their, their livelihoods, their commute, their quality of life. And it's not something, that's what we represent. You know that. You sat in this room.
That's right.
Um, and I, and I can't believe when all this was going down that, you know, you weren't trying to, uh, make it right. I, I, I hope you were because it pissed off a lot of us at Town Hall that we had to take that action, um, and incur, and incur some legal costs, which I believe you'll be getting a bill for. Um, so at this point, why don't we turn it over to some members? I can already see some hands up, Mike. So, uh, if you've got some more energy in you, I think we'll turn it over first to Graham Koblenzer, if you could. Graham, if you could give us your address for our records, we'll make that note with your question. I'd ask you to be brief and concise. Thank you. Go ahead.
Graham Koblenzer, 43 Art Street. Um, I appreciate, uh, Select the Woman, Tina Hines, questions about the traffic. Uh, are traffic management plans enforceable? And what is to stop drivers from ignoring such, uh, plans? I'm particularly concerned about traffic turning right out of, um, uh, Hopkin Brook. Thank you.
Well, so the extent that the traffic plan is enforceable, yes it is. It's on a state roadway. Holliston PD would have the right to enforce any kind of, uh, roadway hazard issues associated with the vehicle. If you're questioning whether or not there are any exclusions in place, or I'd ask you to clarify your question a little bit.
Yes, that's the question. So my understanding of the remarks by the representative of the developer was that there was a traffic management plan that would preclude or forbid, uh, trucks from turning right on Route 16, uh, to, uh, proceed, I guess that's, uh, east on 16 through the center of town. Um, I don't see that there's anything that would preclude trucks from doing so. I think they could just simply ignore them. Uh, it's a public road. It's a state road, and, uh, there's, uh, um, uh, tractor trailers could just proceed through town. So I don't understand what a traffic management plan is and what prevents the, um, uh, the additional traffic and the, uh, usage of the road, which I think, uh, I understood was raised by previous questions.
Okay. I think I understand your question. If I don't, forgive me, but use of the road is something that is, you know, dictated by state law. Um, we have an agreement, obviously, with Mastod that any changes to the traffic patterns will come through us. We'll mitigate that with the developer in this case. In the, in the matter involving Route 16 and traffic, trailer, tractor trailer traffic, um, I can't imagine there'd be too many impediments to that process. To the extent that it might get into South Street, yes, he's offered in this developer's proposal an exclusion of the vehicles associated with the use of that property. Uh, you should also know that we're working with Mastod, uh, towards the very same end. So there's a collective, uh, output. So I don't know if I've answered your question, uh, Graham, but basically that's my impression.
Well, if I could just remark on South Street, that again is a public road. There's nothing stopping, uh, so, so there's something called a traffic management plan, but there's nothing stopping a tractor trailer, uh, driver from ignoring that plan as far as I can tell.
No, you're exactly right. Until such exclusions are put in place, and we're working on that.
Exclusions by whom?
If I could just clarify-
One second. The exclusions would be a collaboration between Mastod and the Town of Holliston and the neighboring towns.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I, I would just say to the question, right, I think part of the frustration over years when it comes to planning boards work with, you know, not just this town, in any town, planning boards work with the developers. The developers put in place saying, we don't, we, we don't want our trucks traveling a certain route. But over time, that message gets lost, and, and the enforceability really isn't there for RPD to say, you had an agreement with the developer to not turn left, and now you are. Um, and it sort of is out of our hands. So it's, it's, it's on, you know, the developer to get the message out, right, to the, to their trucks. And I think that that's the, part of the, um, question that this caller, um, was raising, which is, you know, uh, we need to take steps above and beyond that-
Correct.
-when it comes to South.
I would consider, you know, with all due respect, Mike, the offer coming in this case is more of an administrative offer. What we're dealing with is more of a legal offer or legal enforcement through Mastod once any, any roads are designated as, uh, exclusions.
Yes, Chairman. And our, and our piece is just for the 800 and the other, the second building. Um, and even in that decision that's in the planning board's, uh, piece, it has to go back to the planning board for them to review the final document for that. The town council would be involved in.
Right.
So there is a checks and balance built into that, different than other things in the past. But it still needs to be followed up on.
Okay. Next question will be coming from Francis Hartwich. Francis, I'll need your address, please.
Yes, hello. My name is Francis Hartwich, and I'm at 239 Conker Street. And I'm sorry, um, Mike, uh, I don't quite let, um, feel comfortable with you waving dollar bills in front of us. Uh, I'm used to, um, I'm used to this very much in the, uh, the business I'm in, and, uh, I think some of it, uh, saying, well, okay, if, uh, we get a grant from the state for the traffic light, we'll have extra money that they promised by a developer. A developer's actually going to do very well in here. Uh, I have looked at the developer's, uh, properties. What you've developed for, uh, it does not exclude large companies like Amazon and Walmart distribution centers. Uh, we don't, uh, once, uh, the original tenant, let's say, moves on, we don't have control over a, a new tenant. And also I want to point out there's no statutory, um, limit on, uh, the right-hand turns. We, we can't enforce, uh, a, uh, a big on state property. We can't state, uh, roads. We can't, uh, enforce that. And we have had a history of large trucks coming in through Holliston anyway for, uh, the, uh, recycling center on the east side of town and the, uh, the car trailers from, um, up in Framingham. So the idea of, uh, putting a requirement on the, uh, the end user that their trucks only make lefts is unlikely to, uh, to persist in the future. Um, I'm interested also, sending all those trucks out towards Milford direction. There are Milford residents along 16. Uh, what's the impact for theirs, their, their properties? And, uh, I'd like your, your responses on that, please.
Well, I guess how I would respond to that is currently there's allowed to be 17,000 trips per day based upon the MIPA permit. If this site was built as the office facility that, and that mixed-use development that's currently approved by MIPA. Here you have the developer self-regulating, reducing the size of the development and the intensity of the use. In addition to that, um, as was previously mentioned, the agreement for not using South Street does have to go back to the planning board. It does have to get reviewed by town council. And in addition to that, for boots and suspenders, not even with our two projects, it appears the town is trying to work with the abutting town to limit all tra, all truck traffic on South Street anyway. Uh, but again, we are reducing down the size of what we're allowed to build to a lower intensive use, uh, with this project. In regards to the traffic, um, signal, again, we're committed to paying for that. I just gave the town an option that if they were able to get grant fund, we'll, we'll, we'll provide the money to them for something else. And, because I heard the selectmen talking about, uh, other sidewalks and other items with the rail trails that they wanted to enhance that in town, and we could help on that by moving money out of the signal into that if the signal money was replaced by a, a state grant in the same time fashion. But I have to emphasize, today, we are committed to build the traffic signal per the planning board requirements. If the selectmen come back to us and say, we'd like you to do it this way, we've put out the olive branch, but the only way we can change that is if the selectmen request us to, uh, supplement that money with a grant. We can't do that.
We may get a question in a minute, but in the event we don't, um, I just wanted to broach the issue of the, the site and if the developer plans to put in any kind of sound and site barrier between, uh, the business and the abutters immediately behind them in Medway. Right now, it's, I think it's just a natural barrier of trees, bushes, and so forth. Uh, is there any consideration of, uh, improving their quality of life for the types of trucks and constant access that this facility will bring to them?
Yes. Um, if I can go back to the slides, please, again, and get to the third from the end. The PowerPoint. Yes, sir. So while this is being pulled up, today in the existing zoning bylaws, uh, so go to slide, uh, 15, please. Um, slide 15, um, oops, you just had it. Yep, PowerPoint. Okay. Slide 15, uh, go back one more, two, just for a second. Okay. So the building on the bottom right, this is the building we're talking about, the 800 and 5,000 square feet. You see the residential neighborhood in Medway, and that's where the town boundary is. Next slide, please. Um, the current zoning, uh, in the town requires that there be a side or rear setback. Uh, let's assume that this is the rear, which I think is 30 feet. So technically, the building could be built 30 feet next to the property line for all those residents. We have, um, not only moved the building close to a football field away from the property boundary. If I can go to the next slide. Uh, this was a plan that was put in front of, uh, the planning board that they reviewed for the impact from each one of the 12 houses. And on the slide on the left, each one of those columns is 50 feet. Um, and then you can see where the house is, uh, where the arrows point to and what the elevation is. On the right side of that col, and then on the left side is where the building is. In between there, to the right side, we've left the natural vegetation that exists in the property. So on the bottom one there, that's about 150 feet of trees. Uh, the one in the second from the bottom is about 70 feet of trees. The one above that's about 80 feet of trees, and the one at the top is probably about 140 feet of trees. Then left of the trees is that we have built a, and, and this was an expense of several hundred thousand dollars to build an eight-foot wall. It would be a sound barrier behind the trees.
You use that as, you, you've already created this.
We've already created this. This is what exists on the plans today. So this is what's, um, and, and this came out of a planning board meeting. They were, as, to look at the buffers, we came back with this plan, added, again, several hundred thousand dollars of cost with building that wall, which is, you know, close to 2,000 feet long. Um, and then after that, then the planning board members decided that we should be paying each one of the residents $3,000 cash on top of that wall. So yes, we have, uh, moved forward with, um, putting in additional buffers for that. And when I met with the residents, um, or tried to meet with the residents, I have met with two of the 12, is that I did offer that if we weren't able to build a taller building and that the variance, uh, the appeal for the variance wasn't there, we would, uh, consider not only increasing the height of the wall, but also building the wall on a berm to make it even taller to further, um, protect. Now, again, none of that's required. We're almost a football fields away from the property line. By today's regulations, we only have to be 30 or 40 feet.
And that wall is 8 feet.
That wall is 8 feet, uh-
Great.
It's 8 feet, uh, for the wall, depending upon where it is in the site and cuts and fills. It's, it's 8 feet above whatever the cut and fill is.
Got it. Okay, sorry. We'll go back to the Zoom call. I, I didn't mean to interrupt the citizens in Fort. We'll take the next, uh, question. Ben Murphy, you should know Ben's a member of our finance committee as well. Ben, question for Mike Lenowski.
Hi, Mike. Mike, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good. I'm speaking more because I, I'm not an abutter or anything like that. However, I grew up, uh, in Foxborough, and literally behind my house was the Foxmoor Terminal. So I can feel for the residents tremendously in Medway because my parents bought the house, and there was a beautiful field behind their house. And the next thing they know, they had a bunch of warehouses put up. So you say, and I know it's not part of the discussion, but you brought it up, was the height of the fences 8 feet. 8 feet isn't very high when you consider sound and everything. And know that driving by down the Mass Pike in Newton, everything like that, a lot higher fences are up in sound barriers they put up. So, and I know you just mentioned something about putting up higher sound barriers. I just know, I got woken up every morning, and it was probably a good thing, but by sounds of trucks backing into the terminals of the warehouse behind me. So I can totally appreciate the concerns of the neighbors. And so I'm just wondering if your thoughts, you just mentioned you were going to think about maybe possibly, depending on you talking to the neighbors, about increasing the height of the sound barriers. I just, if I was living there, I would say, yes, that should be a non-factory. 2 feet is not really high at all. Uh, my other question is regarding, you said it was a 24-hour facility, which goes back to my concern about the sound. Um, it's 24 hours a day, the terminals luckily didn't have it. They had 6 o'clock starting time, and then it ended probably about 6 o'clock. So it's a 12-hour facility. But during that time, we heard banging from trucks and everything like that. So the plus is, you're going to have the trucks coming in as a processing on the road, which is what happens at some terminals. But my concern for the sake of the residents both there and also at Jackson Drive, I don't know how close your facility is going to be to Jackson Drive, but I'm, pulled up a Google map, and it's, it's relatively in the area. So I'm just wondering if that's in the foresight of looking at that. Jackson Drive is in Holliston versus Medway. So.
So I guess to answer your question, let me answer it a couple of ways. Uh, one is that- One is that this land was always designed as industrial land, it has been, it's an allowed use that we have in the site, and as I mentioned before, Mr. Deli Pascoli developed most of those houses in Medway, and everyone that we've spoken to in Medway, and they've said it on Zoom calls, knew this was going to be an industrial zone. They don't like the use, but they knew it was gonna be industrial zone. In regards to the height of the, the fence, again, I, I've been fortunate to, to really sit down and talk to two of the abutters, and, you know, I've made it perfectly clear that we would consider doing additional mitigation if they talked to us. But, that conversation that I mentioned with two of them took three months before I was able to have a conversation with them. So, we can't negotiate or come up with a mitigation strategy if the other side doesn't meet. And that's been part of the frustration with this whole thing, that, that led into us, with our legal advice saying we can cut down the trees, we cut them down, because I already said we could, and, and after the trees were cut down, two of the people did reach out to us. And it's not the way we would normally like to go, but that's, that's, that's the, the chronological piece of this. And, you know, again, we are, we are willing to, to work with doing additional mitigation that's down there. But let's not lose sight that this, this property is gonna be, you know, north of a hundred billion dollar investment, and north of, you know, an additional annual, million dollars to your tax rolls on an annual basis. And, and we are willing to, to contribute some additional mitigation, and, and we even, you know, provided, as the direction of the planning board, three thousand dollars cash to each one of those residents to spend however they saw was appropriate.
It was, it was an offer from the developer, it was not solicited by the planning board. So that's, that's multiple times you've mentioned that, so that needs to be corrected.
The meeting took place in here, but we can talk about that later. Also, again, we're also leaving off the, the existing trees that are somewhere between sixty and a hundred and forty feet wide, the existing grove is part of what the plan showed that were there too. So you have, the wall is beyond the trees, which acts as the first natural barrier.
No, I appreciate that, just, just experience, from my own experience, and we had a buffer of approximately twenty-five feet of trees and everything, trees really didn't cause a lot of buffer from my experience. Like I said, it was a beautiful field, I was told from my parents, but we grew up, and they had the warehouse, and we had lots of trucks coming through, so I can appreciate, I'm just wondering, if you have, you're gonna, I'm speaking to the neighbors, because they're not reaching out to you, so, but I would think, they would probably be amenable, or be agreeable if you actually suggested, well, our, we understand sound might be a problem too, in addition to the beautiful trees getting knocked down, but sound, if I was living there, would be a big problem. But, you know, I appreciate the money, I appreciate the tax base, I'm just thinking on both, wearing both hats, if I was in that neighborhood, I'd be upset, but I can appreciate it, so.
Thanks, Ben, we're gonna move on to the next question from Gary. I am gonna try rotatory, Heather, right?
Yes, that is correct, thank you for having me, I live at fourteen Old Surrey Lane, I'm in the Abutting neighborhood in Medway. I just wanted to state-
I'm sorry, your address again, Gary, your address once more, please.
Fourteen Old Surrey Lane.
Thank you, go.
All right, a couple things, I actually work for a company, we have large distribution centers, and we service very large distribution centers. And I can tell you, most of the product that we sent, sent into distribution centers like Walmarts, or Home Depot, or Lowe's, for example, these are independent drivers, we cannot, we have no control over them, we tell them where to go, we tell them when we want them to be there, they show up a day late, two days late, they come and go, they take whatever route they want. So, any typical distribution center, you know, I think it's very unrealistic for this gentleman to tell you that they're gonna have total control over these independent drivers. We, we pay the trucking companies, the trucking firms, and we have almost zero control over where they go, how they go, if they go left or right, there's, there's really no control over. You know, four ninety-five, the traffic has been increasing every year, of course, when four ninety-five is shut down because of traffic, where are they gonna go? They're heading towards Framingham, Natick, they're gonna cut right through downtown Holliston. Again, I don't see how this gentleman can tell you that, it's our own drivers, very few companies have their own fleet of trucks, they use, they're supplied by independent trucking companies, some of them do have their own dedicated trucks, but it's pretty unrealistic to, to say this is what's gonna happen. As far as the, what I heard in one of the, I think it was maybe the planning board meeting a, a number of weeks ago, I, it was a little iffy on how many trucking loading docks there, but it sounded like there were over a hundred. I heard it stated that there was gonna be a thousand trucks per day in a twenty-four-seven operation, not three hundred or whatever the, the numbers being kicked around today, so I'm not sure how that number changed from over a thousand. And if you have over a hundred trucking bays and a facility, I don't really think the builder, or the, the owner is going to want to utilize them once or twice a day. I mean, that's not the, the routine, the trucks come in, they wanna be unloaded, if they're getting a return of freight, they wanna be loaded, they wanna get in and out of there within an hour or two at the most. I mean, that's the way the trucking business is. Distribution centers in general, they're located off of a highway, they don't go through towns. If you look at the, whether it's the Whole Foods, or, or where Walmart's located, Home Depot, you know, the right off four ninety-five, you go a couple hundred yards down the street, and you're in those facilities, that's where a distribution center belongs. It, it's not coincidental that this area hasn't seen distribution centers, many of them in the state of Massachusetts, they need to be placed in the right area. This is probably not the right place to put a distribution center. The noise is my main concern, we're talking about traffic, I know, but backing up, coupling, uncoupling trucks, they're planning on storing hundreds of trucks on-site as well, forklifts beeping non-stop, I mean, we can hear from this neighborhood, we can hear the music at Fanaa Shrine many, many nights when they're playing the music, and that's about a mile away. So to say a couple hundred feet away, we're not gonna hear this constant beeping of trucks backing and forklifts, that's also unrealistic. So, I wanted to make sure that I stated my main concern, which is traffic. I do think when, when four ninety-five shut down, what does everybody do, what's, what's the shortcut, they're gonna be going right through downtown Holliston. I just don't think that this gentleman has been straight with, with us on the numbers, you know, it, you know, he cannot tell me, I'm in this business, he cannot tell me that this company is gonna have total control over these drivers, they will dictate where these drivers take a left or a right, that doesn't happen, but it doesn't happen with any company.
Thank you, Gary.
And, and one last thing, when we moved into this neighborhood, we were the second owners, the, the, the original owners were only here for about a year, the real estate, the Realtor, when we asked them what was up with all the woods around the neighborhood, they told us it was conservation land. And this was, yeah, just so you know.
John Deli told us it was conservation-
John Deli told us it was conservation land, because we met with him as well. So, again, you know, when somebody's saying something that I know is not true, it makes a lot of the other things that person is saying as suspect, as to whether how valid it is or not. Thank you.
Mike, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to correct a statement that was made, at no point did any presentation include a thousand tractor-trailers coming from this project. Second, existing in the existing Hollis Industrial Park is a warehouse facility, it's over a hundred thousand square feet, it currently operates, around the clock, I don't know to what level it does, but it is there. And, and the third is that I appreciate the distribution companies that you work in, but this is a different product that is being introduced here in the Holliston, and an eight hundred thousand square foot facility has a different logistical model than the typical smaller ones you may be familiar with. But again, we are, the numbers are in the report, those are the numbers that are projected to, to come from the project, and that's what the developer stands by.
Well, I, I do deal with these companies you talked about, Walmart, Lowe's, Home Depot, I deal with their massive distribution centers, so, you know, again, I'm not saying a hundred thousand square foot distribution center, I deal with all these big ones, so that's not correct either.
Thank you, Gary, we're gonna move to the next comment from Steve, if you could identify yourself, Steve, in your address.
Hi, Steve McElhany, Twelfth Carriage House Way in Medway. So, a, a direct, a direct abutter to, to, to the project, and I know we wanted to talk about traffic, and, but since everybody kind of had dived into the building a little bit, I, I want to touch base a, a little bit in the building, where Mr. Malinowski said he could build that building, you know, right up against the backyards, thirty, thirty feet away, I don't know where he'd put all his parking, man, if he put the building there, he's got a road looping around the building, he's got all these trailer dollies parked behind the building, he's got spaces for four hundred and twenty-three trailer spaces, a hundred and seventy dock doors, so, don't know how he'd be able to get that in, if he put the building closer. It sounded very altruistic, though, I'll give him that, I just don't know how altru, how altruistic that really is. And, and then, before I move on a little bit to the, to the traffic, I, I know you got it brought up cutting down the trees, you could've started cutting down those trees anywhere, but you chose to cut those trees down directly behind the houses in Medway. You could've started further away, but you didn't, you went right down the Medway line, and that's where you cut them. And there's not as big of a buffer in trees as you're saying there is, geez, my, I mean, where my backyard ends, there's not a lot of trees left, and it's very sparse, and I welcome the board to come up and kind of walk through this neighborhood in Medway, and see how many trees are, are gone, and what this tree buffer is today. It's not what is being spoken in terms of a tree buffer today. But in terms of just the, the information given for the traffic impact assessment, I mean, I looked at page five, and this isn't my level of expertise, and so I'm gonna read it, what it says off of page five, and it says, "This is based on information provided by the client, the potential tenants for the site are proposing a building consistent with the standard warehouse use, and not other warehouse uses such as a high cube transload, high cube fulfillment center, sort and non-sort, and high cube parcel hub. Some of these are directly related to freight delivery facilities, while others require a high degree of automation not anticipated to be constructed with the project. For this reason, LUC one fifty was chosen to estimate trips for the project." Based on proposed building half, having this large trailer parking area surrounding the facility, having dock doors on two sides, having a dock door basically for every forty-eight hundred square feet of warehouse space, and the way that it was described by Mr. Malinowski earlier, it seems more like a high cube transload facility to me, than just a standard warehouse facility. The way he described is a tractor-trailer comes in with twenty pallets, they unload that one, and they take, put one pallet on each of twenty trucks and ship it out. That's not transload, I don't know what transload is, but again, I'm not, this is not my, my business model, it just seems from what I was reading this afternoon, that it's, to me, it looks like it's transload. But I was wondering if they were willing to disclose the assumptions that were given to the company to do the transportation impact assessment, so we would at least all be aware of what was going on.
So I guess that's the question in your direction, Mike, if you want to tackle Steve's, or Mr. McElhany's question.
Again, I stand by the document, it was written, the consultant received the information from the developer, the developer builds these around the country, and has, and uses the, the ITE codes for their properties. We're, we're building a one fifty, an ITE code one fifty, that's what's being proposed to be built here.
So I guess that we're not willing to share the, the assumptions that were given to the company for the traffic impact assessment, is the answer then?
No, I believe I just answered the question, we're building a, a, a facility that's consistent with the ITE code one fifty.
But my question was, are you willing to disclose the assumptions?
Well, again, this is an engineering analysis, that's the code that's used for this, MassDOT will be reviewing this document, they are reviewing this document right now.
I'm just asking if we can see the assumptions, that's all.
Again, the assumption is, this is gonna be a one fifty facility. It's not a one fifty-five, it's a one fifty facility, it's a facility that falls into one fifty.
So when, and just for, for me to understand, so when you're giving the, the company the traffic, the tra, transportation impact assessment, you're just saying this is gonna be a one fifty, and there's no further, you know, disclosures needed, they know what that means then?
It's a standard engineering code, out of the Transportation Engineering Land Use Code.
I guess, excuse me, if I may, Steve, if I can just chime in on your question, I'm wondering if what he's asking is, does this ITE code of one fifty, does it exist outside of this traffic and this transportation impact study? And what I mean by that is, does the developer then develop their design, their plans, their construction documents with an ITE code? Is that code then used outside of a transportation impact assessment?
That code is used nationwide for doing transportation assessments for this type of warehouse facility that's being done in, in all fifty states.
But does it determine and dictate design and build?
Yes, it does, because if it's a different type of structure, it would be a different type of code. The warehouse facility that I've described, at the large scale, falls into this code, that's what they're building. So there is a direct correlation, and in the transportation manual, you know, there's multiple pages written for each one of the codes. I'm not a transportation engineer, but I do know that there's, you know, section for each one of these codes, multiple pages.
In ten years, if Clayco decides to sell to Smith Incorporated, and Smith Incorporated wants to make it a fulfillment center, that would change the use, and they'd have to go for a whole new MIPA design, and they'd probably have to modify the building also.
That is correct. It may not be MIPA, it may be another thing that has to do with MassDOT, but it, it would definitely require some modification.
Steve, you all set, can we move on to our next call here?
Ah, yes, I'm all set for now, thank you. I appreciate the board's time and effort on this, though, I really do, you guys are doing a, a great job.
Thanks, Steve. Suzanne Edelman, hi Suzanne, good evening, you're on South Street, I know that-
Oh, one moment, can you hear me?
We can, good evening.
Good evening, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can.
Good evening, and I, and you know, first, I want to thank Tina, and I want to thank John, and Travis, for, and everyone for being so responsive to us here on South Street. We, as a group, have been working very, very hard, really watching what's going on on our street. We are incredibly concerned about the five fifty-five project, and how it's going to impact the street. Mr. Malinowski, you're telling us that we're gonna have this stoplight at the end of the street there, that one of the big concerns, of course, is the cemetery, but for us here on South Street, we'd like to see a very clear, no left-hand turn. When you come out of, when you come out of Hopping Brook, at the light, you take a left onto sixteen, we'd also like it made very clear that we want a, no left-hand turn coming back down South Street. Okay, so we would really appreciate that built into your plan. Another situation here is the noise. We can hear, from where I am, I can hear Washington Street, and I can hear Hopping Brook all the way up to the top to your facility, and I'm wondering what kind of south, sound protection you can offer us here on South Street. You know, we're talking about these eight-foot walls, is there something else that you can put in as a sound barrier between Washington Street and South, and Hopping Brook and, and South?
So Suzanne, to answer both questions you have, is that the additional signage, and even potentially geometric improvements to the end of South Street that would, you know, prohibit or make it extremely challenging for a tractor-trailer to turn down South Street, that, you know, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, that is something that was offered in our meetings before. And, and just to close out South Street, is that the plan for that does still have to be approved by the planning board, which will allow for town council to take another review at that if it's done. So, I'm very confident that this development, and when I say this development, the two new buildings we're proposing will not impact South Street, and, and I believe we can deliver on that. In regards to the sound piece, I don't have the planning board brings in front of me, but I, I might actually have it, there is a stipulation in one of the tables that talks about decibels, sixty-five decibels from the property line. So there is a, in the current zoning, there is a sound component tied into that, I'm not a decibel expert, I just know that's what it says, and, and, but there is something in there that, you know, can be looked at in more detail. Yes.
So, I'm sorry, who, who was just speaking just now? Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, that was Michael Malinowski.
Who was just speaking, was that Mr. Malinowski? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, the way you folks have your video set up, it's, it's really sort of difficult to see- it's really sort of difficult to see who's speaking. Well, I have a lot of questions, but you've done a pretty good job of taking care of it. I will just sit back and wait for more. Thank you very much.
Thanks Suzanne, Mr. Melonowski's got a follow-up.
Suzanne, and to you and to anybody else of the 62 participants that are still on the Zoom call, I'm more than willing to meet with anyone, you know, over coffee or a phone call if you have any particular questions. And if I can't answer them, I'll find out somebody who can. So feel free to ask direct questions. I think our big challenge we have, as I mentioned earlier, when we tried to have this conversation with the Economic Development Committee is that, you know, sometimes social media doesn't, you know, cite proper documents. And we're trying to do that and make sure everybody understands what we're specifically proposing. So feel free to reach out to me at any time and I'm sure Travis, he can get my information as well.
All right, we're going to move on to Mr. McElhenney.
I appreciate that and I hope that, I hope that other people who have, who have been, come involved with this, download your site plans and really get a grasp on the size of this facility and how it impacts the folks that are up in Medway and also how it's affecting South Street and Washington Street. I just don't see how we can handle this traffic. So we are concerned and yeah, we'll be, we'll be in touch. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Suzanne, we have currently about 10 people waiting to speak. So I'll ask you to be concise and direct with your comments and questions. Kevin O'Connor, you are up next. Kevin, you might have unmuted yourself.
Yep, thanks very much. So I live at 15 Stable Way in Medway. I'm also an attorney and I represent some of the neighbors here in the Medway area, including the McElhenneys. Couple of questions. First, when this meeting started off, Mr. Melonowski, I think that's, I've got that right, I hope I pronounced your name correctly. You indicated that the developer was revising his site plan to include two buildings? Totalling, bringing the project to a total of 2.2 million square feet instead of 300,000 or 3 million square feet? Is that correct?
What I stated in the beginning was the total project approved by MIPA was 3 million square feet. And the owner is looking to reduce the project from 3 million square feet with the 17,000 vehicle trips down to 2.2 million square feet with 6,000 vehicle trips total.
So is that different than the site plan you got approved back in March?
It is not different. What was approved in March is one of the two buildings that are proposed.
Well, there are three buildings, I think, on the site plan in March, is that right?
There was one building on the site plan in March for 805,000 square feet.
And there was one for 600,000 square feet, right?
Yes.
And there was one for 90,000 square feet, right?
Right now, we're looking at somewhere north of 550 for the second building.
I'm just asking, is that different than what, are you now saying you're going to build something different than what was approved on the site plan back in March?
No, what was approved in March is the 805,000 square feet building. That has not changed. We are now looking at building an adjacent building next to that, north of 550,000 square feet, but less than 700,000 square feet. And that has not been designed or submitted for permits. We need to get through this first one first.
Okay, thanks.
But the traffic analysis that was presented last week includes the impact from both of those buildings that will yield 2.2 million square feet.
Yeah, that's a separate question though, so thanks very much though. So the traffic plans that we've been talking about tonight were just filed with the, or appeared on the Town of Holliston website in the last couple of days. I believe that's correct. Has the developer yet submitted to the state MIPA unit its notice of project change?
That will come after this is submitted to Mass DOT. This was submitted to Mass DOT last week. The notice of project change will be forthcoming, it hasn't been submitted yet.
So, and that'll include both the groundwater discharge portion of it and the traffic plan?
Yes, sir.
So when do you anticipate filing those things?
As soon as possible, I don't have an exact date, sitting here tonight.
Well, the MIPA letter that the MIPA unit issued at the end of July indicated that those were to be submitted by the end of the summer. Is there a reason why that didn't happen?
Yes, sir, we're all working through COVID issues with production from engineers, et cetera.
Anything else, Mr. O'Connor?
Yeah, just a couple of things. The... So you indicated earlier in the meeting today that you can't go forward with a 40-foot height on the building as proposed?
I want to respectfully ask you to go back and look at what I stated before. You have filed litigation against us and, you know, I think getting into some of these detailed questions, you're better off talking to our attorney.
I haven't filed any litigation.
The record will stand for what I stated earlier.
I haven't filed any litigation against anybody.
You said you're representing Mr. McInerney.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not their attorney in the variance litigation. Well, I'm just going back to what you said earlier is that the developer was not able to go forward at a 40-foot height for some various reason. Can I ask why then you submitted a site plan that included a 40-foot height?
What I stated was that we did receive approval from the ZBA for the 40-foot. I explained what the dimensions are for building a building with the roof pitch for runoff. And it's something that we greatly want to hopefully get relief to move forward with a taller building.
Yeah, but if you knew at the time that you couldn't do the building you wanted to build at 40 feet, why did you submit a site plan for a 40-foot building?
I did not say that. You said that.
Mr. Chairman, I do think that he's trying to, he said he is representing one of the butters there and I don't want to turn this into a, I'm not a lawyer, so. I understand your boundaries. Mr. O'Connor, if you could kindly respect in the event you're collecting information for legal purposes, Mr. Melonowski is here today this evening to discuss the parameters of the plan. He does not have counsel with him. If you have counsel, excuse me, questions relative to the overall project and the traffic, we'd like you to supply those this evening.
Sure, all right, so let's just stick to the traffic issues. So... I just would like some clarity from the developer as to when they're going to... I mean, the traffic issue, from a regulatory perspective, is a MIPA issue. And, you know, the folks who are on this call discussing the traffic report that was put up on the website the other day, it's a little bit unfair to ask people to comment on it now. So my main question really is, you know, what's the schedule for that to go to the MIPA unit at the state? So that there's a public hearing and a public notice process, which is what's required by MIPA, which is what's required by the notice of project change procedure. When is that going to happen? And what is the Town of Holliston going to do in terms of putting this project on hold while that MIPA traffic review process goes forward?
So, Mr. O'Connor, as you know, MIPA does publicize any projects they receive. It'll be in the environmental monitor. I'm sure that when that's released to the town, the town is working on a website to have information available, that it will be submitted at that point. I think what is important to recognize too is that the MIPA process that we're working on right now, you know, follows the 800,000 square foot for the rest of the site. So I would suggest you go back and reread the MIPA letter that was received as it relates to the 805,000 square feet.
Yeah, I did read the letter that was received as the 805,000 square feet. And what you guys tried to do was to convince the MIPA unit that you didn't have to do any more environmental review, you didn't have to do any more traffic review because of the prior work that was done. And the MIPA folks said, no, that's not correct. But for some reason, they said you can go forward with your 800,000 square foot building, which makes no sense to me.
As I stated earlier in the presentation, in the presentation, I stated this earlier. As I stated earlier in the presentation, then I addressed that issue. If you go back and review the tape.
I don't think you did address that earlier in the presentation, but...
Anything else, Mr. O'Connor?
That's it. I'd like to know from the developer, from the town, what, you know, are you going to put this project on hold while the MIPA review process goes forward?
We have nothing to put on hold, Mr. O'Connor. We're waiting for answers from MassDOT before we take any action, sir.
Okay.
Next on the call, I'm afraid I don't have the full name, D. Kilduff, I believe it is. Name and address, please.
Yes, this is Dory Kilduff, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go right ahead, your address, Dory.
Sure, I'm the Director Butter, I live at 10 Carriage House Way. A couple of things, Mr. Melonowski stated earlier that he has tried to reach out to all of us. And have, what he has purported here was that we basically rejected his reach outs. And I wanted to be on record that I have been extremely active and I think this board knows I've been very active on all of these meetings. And he has yet to reach out to me, not in an email, not in a phone call, not in a text, not even a knock on my door. So I don't trust anything that he has to say. And I think it has been pointed out by many people here tonight that what he is saying has, cannot be trusted. What has been stated, you know, on these planning boards, I have attended a lot of these, is actually direct quotes on that MIPA letter. So when I was on the economic planning board, what I had quoted directly was what the MIPA, what was actually the Mass DOT said, which was their traffic study was grossly underestimated by five times. So I did not misquote, I don't think anybody misquoted things that were said. And I just, I don't trust what's being done here. And I don't appreciate that he said he has reached out to all of us because it's not correct, it's factually incorrect, thank you.
Mike, any comment there?
Again, I tried to reach out to everybody that I had contact information on. I reached out to the town economic development folks. And I've reached out to your neighbors. Your neighbors said you were having community meetings and they were going to discuss what I had brought to their attention. I'm available to meet with anybody. And if you personally were not reached out because they didn't have your contact information, it was not due to lack of effort.
That, so I think you could actually Google my name and you could find my email. I'm very easily traceable, so I do not think that you even tried, Mr. Melonowski. So I don't, that's just not correct.
We agree or disagree.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else, Dory?
I'm all set, thank you. And thank you, planning board, I appreciate everything you've been doing, appreciate it.
Great, we're going to move on to Elizabeth Dembitzer, do I have that right, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, could we have your address, please?
Yes, hi, sorry, Liz Dembitzer, I'm at 45 Franklin Street. And I'll be just very quick, because this is the fourth or fifth time this issue, I'm bringing it up again because I, there just hasn't been a satisfactory answer. I'd like to know the specific legally enforceable mechanism that is available to us to enforce trucks using only certain routes to or from the facility? I just heard, well, you have to talk here or have to talk there. What is it? What's going to enforce for the future that a truck can only go on certain roads in certain directions, you know, in perpetuity?
I'll do my best, I'll answer any clarifications from other experts at the table. But it's essentially this, if a road is designated to have a commercial vehicle exclusion, it's because the host community in which that street resides has collaborated with MassDOT to find an alternative truck route for that vehicle to travel. Communities cannot designate the road to be exclusionary unless those tasks have been agreed to with MassDOT in the abutting town.
Can I just clarify that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So you're saying that you would seek and we could get a commercial vehicle exclusion for Route 16 east of this area, right? Because that's the question, what's going to stop them from going right? That doesn't seem like a real solution.
No, I should have been more clear, this does not apply to state-numbered routes, Elizabeth.
So you're only talking about South Street, that one street where trucks, you maybe can designate it, but there's no enforceable mechanism to prevent trucks from going anywhere else except for South Street?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's it.
Okay. The next is Fowler MJ, we will need your name and address, please.
Yeah, Mike Fowler, 124 South Street.
Good evening, Mike, what's your question?
I'll try to keep this quick. Basically, a lot of the numbers reported tonight from the developer's own numbers are essentially doubling the traffic coming out of the Hopping Brook facility in the end game of all this. So a lot of that is truck traffic. And I know a lot of people probably are familiar with the commute, you know, heading west on Route 16 and how bad the traffic is already. So I just wanted to point out that, you know, this is a proposed doubling of that traffic, if I understand correctly. And also, you know, this is truck traffic we're talking about. I think, you know, the average truck is probably three times the length of your typical commuter vehicle. So I just wanted to point that out. And then a couple of questions in terms of, you know, we're talking about truck exclusions from leaving Hopping Brook, but I assume there's going to be additional car trips leaving from there as well, which could potentially go down South Street. As well as, you know, if you increase the truck traffic on 16, that's going to induce more drivers of, you know, their personal vehicles to cut down through South Street. And so that traffic is also going to have an impact on our street. And I think that's something that really hasn't been discussed. And further, just, and this, this is my final comment, is just basically, you know, the developer says that they, you know, intend to enforce this, but it just seems like there's nothing legally binding here. You know, it's essentially what amounts to a gentleman's agreement. And, you know, coming from someone who required, you know, not only a cease and desist, but an injunction to stop doing certain activities at the site, I don't, you know, take that word as being very valuable, so that's...
Okay, thank you, Mike. I don't hear a question there unless you want to make a comment to his remarks.
Just what I will say is that any agreement that is required to have that, but I think it was item number 24 in the site plan review for how we're going to restrict truck traffic from South Street, has to be reviewed and approved by the planning board. So they have the final say in doing that. That will be reviewed by town council as it goes forward. I think what is also important, if I could just to get this out, is that, you know, today, the developer, the owner of the property is allowed to develop up to 17,904 traffic trips that's in there. That's what the state permit allows to happen on the site today. Before that, it was 36,000. What the developer's doing, and whether you trust us or not trust us, you must recognize that we're looking to move that 17,000 number down to 6,000 vehicle trips. That's a significant reduction from what we're allowed to do. So of course, no one wants more traffic, but we're allowed to put in 17,904 cars on the road, of what some of them already exist, about more than 3,000 in the park today. But again, that's not what we're looking to do, we're looking to reduce that number down. And that's what the permit allows for.
Thank you, we're going to move on to the caller named Joe. We'll need your last name and your address, Joe.
Yeah, hi, my name's Joe Cooper, I'm at 89...
I'm at 89 Rockland Street in Holliston. Can you hear me?
Yeah, perfectly. Thanks. Go ahead.
Great, thanks. I have a question, but I just want to quickly respond to something that, sorry, I'm blanking on your name. Mike, is it?
Yes, Michael, yes.
Yeah. Michael, sorry. That Michael just said, so when you say that you're allowed 17,000 car trips, that would have to still go through the same permitting and approval processes that you're going through right now, correct?
No, that process has already been completed. We could build office facilities, or the mixed use that I had in earlier slides, and that, that process is already approved. It's because we're reducing the number of vehicle trips, which is having a lower impact, and that may change the circulation pattern because of the mix of vehicles are going to be different than MIPA wanted us to do a notice of project change. So again, it, you know, I have to point out that today we're allowed to do the 17,000 trips with those four categories that were in the earlier presentation. What the owner's doing is willing to go to a smaller development site with these two large end users, which have a lower traffic impact than the previous uses that were there.
Okay. Thank you. So my, the question that I initially wanted to ask was, I live on Rockland, which is one street away. I'm horrible at directions, and it's late, so I won't say, I won't give a direction of it. Okay, one, okay, one street west of South Street. And I, you know, I, I know people who live on South Street, and I totally agree with the concerns about traffic, both truck traffic and personal vehicle traffic on South Street. Another consideration to think about is, is, as traffic has migrated away from South Street, which it should be, is, are the intersections off of 16 where people are entering and exiting 16? Rockland is a pretty blind intersection, especially if you're driving toward Hopping Brook from the west. Has any consideration been given to those intersections, specifically Rockland, but others? And if not, is there still time to do that? What are your thoughts on that?
So I have some preference. I'm not the transportation engineer, and I don't know specifically if they've looked at Rockland. I will ask them to do that. What I will say, though, is by putting a traffic signal at Hopping Brook, which currently has, you know, traffic going by between 40, 50 miles an hour on a daily basis, now there are going to be, you know, regular pauses in that traffic because of the new signal when that's installed. So one would hope, and again, I'll leave this to the traffic engineers to describe this, that this would, you know, allow, you know, some of these near abutting side streets to have breaks, where they, you know, can get in and out better than they can today, even if there's more traffic because you're going to have brakes otherwise didn't exist. But I will, I will ask them, Joe, to look at Rockland Street. I know roughly where it is. I do not, I cannot visualize the blind spots that you're talking about, but I will, I'm writing that down right now for them to look at.
Yeah, and just one other thing that I'll point out is, responding to something you said, I think by the time they got to Rockland, they'd already be sped up to probably 30, 40 miles an hour, I'm guessing, I don't know. And it's also, I think, coming from the west is when, where it's most blind, but even coming from the east, it's not quite as blind. But you can't really, I don't even think, see the Hopping Brook intersection from the Rockland intersection. And the other thing is, and I'm not sure if the town is familiar with this, but, you know, living on Rockland and, you know, being an avid runner and biker myself, I see a lot of people running and biking on Rockland up to Adams, to the conservation land up there. And so there's a heavy amount of pedestrian traffic that crosses 16 from Rockland to Adams. And so I think that, you know, as someone with young kids also, and thinking about them in the future, making their way over to the conservation land by foot or by bike, it just, it kind of scares me to death, thinking about the amount of traffic at that intersection. So I, yeah, definitely would appreciate more thought being given to that.
Joe, if I could, I'm going to just bring up, I think it's slide four, because you brought up one other thing that I failed to mention, that the owner is looking to do, and mentioned this to the planning board, is with Hopping Brook is that there actually is a lot of walkers that use Hopping Brook Road, and they walk to the end and they turn around. What we're looking to do, when the slide comes back up, is to actually create a loop that'll bring you back to where Griffin Electric is, right back at, you know, right near the rail trail. And by doing that, yeah, there we go, perfect. So you see in the bottom right, that's the detention area. The horizontal roadways going across, that's Hopping Brook, and it's going to end over on the left into a cul-de-sac. But what we have proposed to do, and this needs to be worked out with the rail trail and other conservation groups, is to donate some land that would take you along that bottom roadway south of the detention pond, and then bring you over to Griffin Electric, so that you can then do a big loop through there, and that'll actually go through, you know, green space in there versus being on the roadways that are there, too. So, you know, we're trying to figure out how we can enhance the town from that perspective as well. Thank you, Joe. We're going to move on. We have four people waiting to be heard, so I'm going to cut it off at Erin Hoy. I'm sorry, Kate, we're going to have to hold you back, but we're going to move on to Bidek. If you have a question, please give us your name and address.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, yes. Your name, please?
Yes, this is Chris Bidek. I'm at 30 Jarbrook Road, actually over in the east end of town. I wasn't necessarily intending to sit in on this entire meeting, but I did notice, I guess, just one aspect of the project proponents' presentation that I took a little issue with. I'm a noise control consultant, and I've been in the business for 30 years, and I think I'd just like to point out that the wall that was presented in the cross sections of one of the PowerPoint slides, and I forget which one, to me is mischaracterized as a sound barrier wall and looks to be more of a retaining wall. The main concept in noise control is a source path receiver model. And in order for a sound barrier wall to be effective, it's got to break the line of sight between the source and the receiver in order to be effective. And just looking at the, the, the cross sections, you know, on my laptop in the PowerPoint slide, they seem largely inadequate, and I don't think you could characterize that wall as a sound barrier. And I would just recommend that the applicant or the project proponent conduct a sound study, so that, you know, communities on the south side and Medway, direct abutters, you know, could, could feel confident that at least noise would not be an issue for them. And I've done, you know, a few of these studies myself, working for both developers and for towns as a peer review, and I certainly wouldn't recommend my own services, but I could, you know, certainly recommend, you know, contact information from, for some colleagues in the business that could undertake such a study.
Thanks, Chris. Any comments on that, Mike? I guess the two comments I have is that the planning board does have a 65 decibel ratings for the property line. And Chris, I don't know if you were there for part of the presentation, but, you know, in some of the limited conversations that I've had with some of the abutters in Medway, is that we were willing to provide additional mitigation, should all of the abutters, you know, come meet with us, that we could work out something. So it's not that that, what you see there is the end all, but that's what was in the permit that was approved, plus $3,000 for each homeowner to put towards whatever additional mitigation they want. And that's, that's all I'd say.
Okay. Well, I mean, well, again, if I could just follow up, and this is Chris again, just one, one additional comment. I mean, where this does also go before NEAPER has gone in the past, you know, I would imagine that the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection noise policy would also be applicable to sound from this facility. When I've done work for similar facilities in the state, I've applied, you know, that, that policy to the noise emissions from said facilities. So, you know, that has a requirement that, you know, sound above ambient sound, noise has to be limited above ambient sound levels, and that might be of concern, especially during nighttime hours, if you're talking 24, 24-hour operation.
Very good. Thank you, Chris. We're going to move on to Timothy Shan. Timothy, address, please. Timothy, are you muted?
Hi, I'm sorry. This is actually Janet Shan. I'm an abutter at 5 Old Surrey Lane in Medway. And I wanted to thank the members of the board for hearing our concerns, and also thanks to the gentleman before and the previous one who spoke to the noise. The, being right behind us, I believe the decibel sound for the backup trucks is between 90 and 110 decibels, which can be heard a half mile away. And the reason is, it's to alert people that the truck is backing up. So I don't know how many bays will be facing us, half of 170, I guess, 24/7, with multiple beeping noises backing up at about 100 decibels that we will hear. And I just wanted to say that John Deli built a beautiful neighborhood for us. He, in fact, we have the old flyer that one of the neighbors saved, that the abutters actually had to pay an extra $15,000 per lot to be backed up to these wood. So it's just ironic that we're the ones that are now being punished by the same owner of the land. And I find it funny, too, that I also heard that the land he originally wanted, this is 20 years ago, but wanted to make it into a golf course, but it never perked. So I'm wondering how the land changed in that time that now all of a sudden it perked. And it's just of interest to me that, I know there are multiple wetlands back there, and that was a whole other meeting and another issue. But I know we're here to talk about traffic. And I just wanted to ask about the traffic study, is, what size building? I know that the traffic study for the 800,000 square feet and possibly the others, but at what height? So if you're doing, because at 40 feet, if you're raising that to 52, that's about one-third more storage, one-third more product that's going to be moved in and out of those buildings. So if you do, in fact, get this height variance to 60 and build to 52, do you have to do a new traffic study to account for one-third more possible traffic moving product in and out of this facility?
The, the traffic study is based upon the size of the building from a four-square footage, and also from the number of truck bays. The number of truck bays are not going to change. The big issue with the height is the, the depth of the trusses. The 40 feet is not the issue. The issue is the height of the roof in order to stand and making sure that you have proper pitch for water to run off.
So it has nothing to do with the amount of product being stored?
That, no, it does not.
Okay.
You all set, Janet?
All set. Thank you very much.
Have a great night. The next will be somebody called Wireless Zones iPhone. I'm hoping there's a name behind that and an address.
Yeah, this is Steve Proya. We're on 30 Stable Way, also part of our land in Medway, I'm sorry, and part of our land is also in Holliston as well, so we are taxpayers of Holliston as well.
Your last name, please?
It's Proya.
P-R-O-Y-A?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead. What's your question?
Yeah, of course. So a couple of things. First of all, we were never offered part of the $3,000 that we're talking about, and quite honestly, it's very comical considering the amount of decrease in value of homes that are going to be on that street there. So I think that is unfair for them to even offer that. More importantly, we keep talking about the traffic of the two buildings, right? So nobody's ever mentioned Phase 3. Phase 3 also is 90,000 or 100,000 square foot building. Is that correct, Michael?
Right now, we're looking at the 805,000 square feet in somewhere north of 550 and south of 700,000 square feet is the final build out. The configuration of how that last building works in 1, 2 is yet to be determined.
Okay. And that's all taken into consideration with your, your traffic studies?
Yes, the traffic study included the 800 plus the 700 for a total of 1,500,000 new square footage in the traffic study.
Okay. Because when I look at the plan, we see a Phase 3 is directly by, behind my house, and it's within 50 feet of our wood line, and it shows a 90,000 square foot building. I haven't heard any mention of that whatsoever. I went to the town and spoke to them about it, and they say you guys haven't even requested a permit for that yet, or to move forward on that yet. My question is, is, is that going to happen? And if so, when?
So to answer that question is there, there have been, over the years, 20-some years, many different conceptual studies that were done and analysis, and many, many projects that went to purchase and sale agreements. There was looking at a 90,000 square foot building there. I can't tell you that that's going to happen right now, but yes, was there a plan that had that at one point? Yes, it was. It was a separate lot. Will it be built? I have no idea.
So to be clear.
If it is built, if I could just finish that, if it is built, it would still be within that 700,000 square feet. And the traffic was taken care of in the traffic report.
Okay. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Erin Hoy, next caller. Name and, your address, Erin?
It's, yeah, this is Erin Hoy at 6 Carriage House Way in Medway.
Yes.
And just a question. You mentioned several times that MIPA approved, I think around 36,000 cars, and that the developer is now willing to reduce this to a much smaller scale project. However, it sounds that this project has, is involving large fleet trucks rather than cars. So I'm wondering how this affects the travel impact study, and also, is it, does MIPA now consider this a bigger project because it's involving bigger trucks rather than cars?
So if I could go over the numbers again, the original project was 36,900 vehicle trips. Mr. Deli, after he bought the property, reduced it down to 17,904 trips. He's now proposing to reduce that down to 5,918 trips.
Yes. However, you said cars. You were using the term cars.
No, I believe I would have used the word trips. It's our vehicle trips, and those vehicles could be a mix of trucks and cars. In the study that was released, it does specify, in this study, how many cars and trucks are part of the new development that would occur. So we do have that listed out. What you do have is that trucks would all go to 495 directly, and the cars, yes, would distribute as they normally would throughout wherever people come to work. One of the things with workers is workers generally work a nine to five, you know, plus an hour or two, in either direction. So you have peak hours for, for workers. The trucks are generally spread out a little bit evener throughout the day.
Okay. Because the first proposal included more office space as well, rather than warehouse?
Yes, the 36,900 included all office spaces, my understanding.
Okay.
When it was reduced down to 17,904, it was office, R&amp;D, warehousing, and what other use? I forget what it is.
High technology manufacturing.
There we go. Manufacturing, yep, that's what it was.
Okay. So they're aware that the, the MIPA traffic study is aware that this, this is now larger fleet trucks? I'm just thinking about, you know, Tresca trucks on Route 109. I mean, that is significant. If you get behind a Tresca truck, your commute is significantly longer than it would be. That, that causes a lot of backup on Route 109, and I was just thinking, you know, is that considered in this project?
So let's also be clear that MIPA doesn't necessarily review traffic. MassDOT is the traffic expert for the state. MassDOT will make their recommendation to MIPA. MIPA will incorporate their recommendation into the notice of project change. MassDOT is aware of the use changes that we have here. It is going to be less of an impact. What they wanted to study was the different circulation pattern that this would have because it has a slightly different circulation pattern, which overall is still going to be less than what it was before.
Anything else, Erin's?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you. We were gonna cut it off at our end. Two people came on. I will welcome them as long as they keep it brief and concise. The next would be Kate, uh, Fenery, if I have that name correct. Kate, I'll just need your address and if you could be brief. Thank you.
Um, yeah, actually, this is Don Fenery. Um, I'm at one Summit Road in Medway, Massachusetts. I am in a Butter. Um, and a couple of things. I'd like to echo, um, regarding traffic, um, Mr. Fowler's statement about, um, the residual effects of having all of these extra tractor-trailer trucks on the road. I commute through Holliston every day and if anybody drives through Holliston during rush hour, or actually, for that matter, any time of day, it's miserable. And there is no way to limit trucks, um, avoiding Holliston if there's a backup on four ninety-five. It's just impossible. Um, and so what's gonna happen is it's gonna be a residual effect on your neighborhoods like there is now when you go to Lowland. Uh, 'cause a lot of people cut through there and cut through those neighborhoods to avoid the sixteen traffic. I do it myself. So the same thing is gonna happen in other parts of Holliston. And you're, with tractor-trailer trucks being on the road, and that's what's gonna be at this facility. It'll be a limited number of cars, all tractor-trailer trucks. Um, so I wanna get that point out, number one. Secondly, um, I think when you're working with a developer, I mean, the actions kind of speak louder than words. They wanted a sixty-foot building. They knew they couldn't, they knew that the, that the zoning laws didn't allow it. So they went for a forty-foot and then tried to sneak a sixty through, okay? That's number one.
Here's Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject. No one tried to sneak anything through. We have acknowledged throughout the whole permitting process, some of the additional permits that were gonna be needed at different boards and committees. So there was nobody snuck anything through. Everything is in public meetings, publicly discussed, posted meetings, et cetera.
Well, m- m- Mr. Milonaski, and I, I don't wanna belabor the point, but if you needed a fifty-two foot building or a sixty-foot building off the bat, then that's probably what you should have tried to go for, but that's not what happened. But secondly, um, regarding, um, working with the neighborhood, um, the only reason that you came out to the neighborhood was because we filed a lawsuit against the variance you were trying to get. So that was the only thing that got you out to the neighborhood to talk to anybody. Otherwise, you wouldn't have cared. But, and thirdly, uh-
So before we go to third, I, I do wanna interject there is that I tried reaching out to some of the neighbors in the other towns before the lawsuit was filed, after I heard some of the concerns that Medway residents addressed at a site plan, I'm sorry, the special permit hearing with the planning board. And I did agree with some of the comments. I specifically recall going out to Mark Reagan's house, I believe it is, because I noticed on his plan, he was probably gonna be the most impacted. And I walked to that cul-de-sac and he came out wondering who I was and we had a nice talk. We walked through the area and that was done prior to litigation being filed because you addressed an important point and I wanted to try to head that off. The third point?
Right. Y- yeah, and you dropped an eight-hundred thousand square foot building sixty feet away from Mark Reagan's window for crying out loud. I mean, uh, that would, I mean, you wouldn't do that to any neighborhood in Holliston. I'm surprised the board actually approved, uh, your plan in the first place. But I'll get to my third point. Um, as the town of Holliston learned with dealing with you, you only stopped clearing chee- uh, clearing the trees with a cease and desist order. They had to go to court to stop you. So that's the only thing that gets your attention. So you're willing to push the envelope until somebody makes you stop. And this is the type of, of developer you're dealing with here. I'd like to say that to the board members. I, I don't, uh, you were, l- somebody else came on earlier and said, "Well, I just don't trust what he says." And I mean, how can you when this is how things have been proceeding? I, I don't, it's disappointing. Um, I think it's gonna turn Route sixteen into Milford, Milford on steroids with the traffic. And I think the folks in Holliston, um, and, you know, to a lesser degree, my commute is gonna get significantly worse. The Holliston downtown is gonna be, um, totally encumbered with new traffic of people trying to avoid the traffic from the tractor-trailer trucks. And you can't control a tractor-trailer truck, as we discussed earlier. Um, so I appreciate-
Don, Don, I'm gonna cut it short here. Thanks so much for your comments. We, yep, thank you very much. Uh, the last one will come from, uh, somebody named Cabot. I don't have her first name there. If you could identify yourself and your street, please?
Hi, this is Philip Cabot. I live at thirteen ninety-five Washington Street and I wanna address-
Philip, you're gonna be our, I'm sorry, fifteen what?
Thirteen ninety-five Washington.
And you'll be our last caller this evening. Please go ahead.
I just wanna address this as much to the select board as, uh, to the developers with the additional traffic that you guys are talking about, the additional truck traffic. I don't know if any of you people are familiar with the term Jake brake or engine brake specifically used, um, in tractor-trailer trucks? Do you guys, do you all know what a Jake brake is? Great.
We do.
Yeah.
So you're talking, I think the number that was quoted earlier was some, something on the order of another three hundred trucks a day going in and out of this facility? Well, if you live on Washington Street or anywhere near Washington Street, starting at pretty much six in the morning, on any given morning, trucks will barrel down Washington Street well in excess of the speed limit and then pop their Jake brakes. Do you guys know what Jake brakes were designed for? They were designed, uh, to keep, uh, trucks from overheating brakes when going down large mountain roads, such as in the Rocky Mountains. They, I doubt that anybody who developed them thought that they would be used barreling through small towns. So I just wanna point out that if you're gonna be allowing this amount more traffic to go through, that I think that the select board is long overdue in addressing the issue of Drake brake, Jake brake use in the town of Holliston, and I think it should be banned across the board, everywhere.
Phil, excuse me, this is Tina Heintz from the Select Board. I don't know if you heard, but we have an article for town meeting in December. Uh, and one of the, it's for traffic engineering studies and we are, we are very much looking to do s- sound studies, uh, on our local roads and also on our state numbered routes. That's something that we're, we're considering. So we, we hear your concern loud and clear. Um, we've heard it from many residents throughout towns. Uh, thank you for expressing that.
Yep, fantastic. If you wanna do a study, just sit outside my door at six o'clock tomorrow morning.
There it is.
Well, thank, thank you, Philip. We're gonna conclude the public contribution to, uh, this portion of our agenda this evening. It's getting late, obviously. Uh, Mike, you've heard from, uh, sixteen Butters or interested parties this evening, probably felt more than that, but, uh, we appreciate your patience, your contribution to their answers. Uh, I guess my personal takeaway is I think your, your, uh, your firm has some work to do on the credibility side to build up some trust, not just with the community, but the Butters. Uh, this project has a meaningful scope in front of it and we wanna work towards, uh, a process that's very public and obviously productive for both ends. Please, as I said, play by the rules, make sure you're above board, communicate with our town administrator. Uh, do you have any final comments, questions, or anything like that before we move on our agenda?
Uh, I just wanna, again, just hit a couple of highlights, um, that the, the owner is looking to significantly reduce down what he's allowed to do today with a different use from seventeen thousand nine hundred and four trips down to the fifty-nine hundred trips. Um, again, it'll be for different use. Um, and, um, the end developer has agreed to, um, work with the planning board to make sure there is a legally binding agreement that trucks will not use South Street. Uh, certainly if the town is successful with living in a truck exclusion, that makes it even easier. Uh, but if that fails for whatever reason, um, the developer's committed to doing that, um, as well as supporting some additional mitigation off-site. In regards to, to the neighbors of the, uh, how many was it?
Sixteen.
You know, clearly we heard probably ten of them were from Medway. Um, you know, we'd like to, uh, work out a solution with the residents of Medway. Um, we've offered to do some additional mitigation. Um, and we will do that. In regards to, uh, following the rules, um, you know, that's something that is, again, I said, two of our lawyers thought it felt and and that's why I think there was a settlement that we could cut the trees down, so we didn't go blindly into it. We had legal advice, we could do it. The town had different legal advice. Um, we have stopped that. There was the agreement that was done. Yes, there was a court order to do that, uh, but it did not go to court. Um, it was settled before it went to, to court for the final piece. And, um, you know, as this thing goes forward, this is a big expensive project for everybody and, you know, we definitely will follow the rules and, and expect that the planning board and others will do the same as well. And I thank you for your attention. I know there's been a late night. Um, there's a lot of information here. There's still more work to be done. There's still more analysis to be done. Mass DOT is gonna be reviewing this. They're gonna come back with any adjustments they need to do. So, you know, this is our living document. It was sent to Mass DOT. They're gonna modify it, probably, 'cause that's what they do. And, uh, when this gets, gets done, then we'll be coming back to the board and talking about the intersection when we get to twenty-five percent design and run that through you as to how that's happening, uh, dealing with the cemetery and, um, trying to make those improvements. I think as we all know today, there should be a traffic signal there anyway. And whether or not this project was coming, it, it's long overdue, uh, to put something there and, and that's why we agreed to step up to the plate even before a grant was done, or just to get it done. So I thank you for your time. Uh, Travis has been great to work with and, um-
We, uh, a gentleman asked earlier tonight what's the schedule ahead. We don't know yet, but we do know that when we hear something about developments associated with this project, it'll be put on our website promptly so that all interested parties can understand what's in front of us, whether it's in this board, planning board, or any other committee or board in our, in our community. Uh, so we thank you again for coming in tonight, sharing your time and, uh, uh, information. Stay in touch, please.
Thank you. And again, so when the week with any neighborhood group as needed, just to continue to talk through issues.
Thanks very much.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Uh, the next part of our agenda, uh, deals with board business. We have board meeting minutes from September fourteenth, twenty twenty, and September twenty-first, twenty twenty. Sparrow, uh, would you like to make a motion to approve said minute?
Sure, I will make a motion to approve the minutes, select board minutes from September fourteenth, twenty twenty, and September twenty-first, twenty twenty.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have a donation, uh, to the Senior Center Nutrition Fund, um, a hundred and sixty dollars. Those in the file, I think I-
For meals received. Move to accept the a hundred and sixty dollar donation from William and Sylvia Dickney. Thank you very much for the nutrition fund at the Senior Center.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries. We have an event permit scheduled for October thirty-first, twenty twenty, from three PM to ten PM. It's a block party. I'd like more information on it.
I'd like the chief, uh, I'd like the chief capacity to-
Could join us briefly, uh, rejoin us?
But it's only eleven forty-two. Come on. I can't promise that I'll be brief.
You roll straight, we'll talk straight. We'll get this done.
We'll, we'll get this done. We got this.
I, uh, I reached out to the, uh, petitioner and, uh, had not heard back by the time that I left the office, uh, this evening. So I don't have any additional details beyond what is on the permit application that was forwarded by the police department.
Do we have said permit?
Yes.
Uh, it's in our packet.
It is in the packet. Um, it's all the way up the bar.
It was a supposedly distant pizza party and trick-or-treating event for neighborhood children.
Block party.
For which they were requesting the road be shut off, closed off. Uh, and the police chief was quite clear, as he is with all of these types of, uh, requests or temporary road closures for our, for our neighborhood event, that it would still need to be accessible to emergency vehicles. In my, uh, voicemail that I left for the petitioner, I did explain that we need a little bit more information with regards to how many they were expecting, how they were going to ensure the physical distancing, how they were going to ensure the, uh, properties are face covering this, uh, because obviously we're concerned that, uh, this could be a, a spreading event.
What is the, uh, current outdoor, um, gathering, um, uh, excuse me?
Five zero.
Five zero. But we don't know from the application what that number is, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to deny the permit for parade, procession, or similar event, uh, at seven Summit Point Drive scheduled for October thirty-first, twenty twenty.
I will make that motion with the, the comment that there was an opportunity to provide the numbers of each specifically walkers, horses, vehicles, floats, marching bands, et cetera. That information was not provided and an attempt was made by the emergency management director to contact the event organizer and, um, we are where we are tonight. So I will make that motion.
Do a second.
I will second.
Any further comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Last item on our agenda is public comment. Mr. Sparrow?
Uh, just a couple of quick things, um, just to reiterate that, uh, fall curbside beef pickup from Yale Harvey will be taking place the week of November thirtieth, twenty twenty. Um, any further information is on the website if you need to look at it. I just, this is the third time that I've mentioned that. It's important. It's important, but I don't need to read the whole thing.
Nope.
No.
And the second thing is starting November first, there is no on-street parking between one AM and five AM until March thirty-first. And the last thing I would like to say is I wanna give a shout-out to Chris Mayo and Justin and the, uh, the, the hard work that they just put in to try to manage this entire process and they've been, they've been doing this behind the scenes and they're making us, uh, making us look good. So I just wanna say thank you to them for all the hard work and the, and hours to, uh, for this. So that's all I have.
Thanks, then. Tina?
My public comment is a question for Chris Mayo. What was the total count?
Total seventy-three.
Thank you. I have no other comment.
I have no further comment. I will introduce a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We include it at eleven forty-five. Holliston, good night. We will catch you next week. Thank you.